Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmeth. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmeth. We'll call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one, so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone, so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. For the taller people in the room, that might require you leaning in a little bit to the microphone, but please do that, so the people in the back of the room will be able to hear you. Our meetings are recorded, as I said, and these recordings are available on our website at wilmeth.com. So our village board meetings are also televised, and if you look up in the corners of the room, you can actually see the cameras. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the village board, see the types of matter that come before us, the questions that we ask, and the policies we create. I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmeth who regularly tune in to Channel 6 and pay attention to the workings of their village government. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmeth.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 659 pages. We've had an opportunity to review all the information in the agenda packet, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, most important points that you want us to focus on. And finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cellphones and other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. Item two is public comment. We have a very heavy agenda tonight. We started early to accommodate that agenda, and I'm going to defer item two, public comment, to the end of the meeting, since it relates only to items which are not on the agenda tonight. So we'll move on to item three, which is the consent agenda, and as described on the printed agenda, items that are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the consent agenda. Tonight, I'm sorry, all items beginning with the number three are on the consent agenda, and tonight, that means, starting on page one with item 3.1, item 3.1 and 3.2, all the items on page two, and the first three items on page three, ending with item 3.14. Items on the consent agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item is not removed by a member of the audience, and is not removed by one of the trustees, it will be approved and it will not be discussed. So let me begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on, I'll ask if there's any trustee that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the consent agenda has been adopted. If you were here for an item on the consent agenda, it's been approved, and I'll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with a three have been approved, and that includes land use item 3.4 and land use item 3.5. So if you're here for that, one of those two items, it's been, they've been approved. Let me know further discussion of those items or any other items on the consent agenda, so you are free to leave. Of course, you're more than welcome to stay for the meeting. I don't see anybody leaving, so I won't tell them to stop by one of our restaurants before they head home. Next on the agenda is item four, which is report of officers. We'll start with our report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. President.
Item five is the report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. So move on to item six, which is standing committee reports. We'll start with the land use committees, as we always do, and Trustee Pierce.
I move that case number 2017Z63 be removed from the table. Is that needed, that motion?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's been removed from the table.
Okay, so now I move that we grant, do we need another motion to, yeah, okay.
Yes, we have a motion to approve.
All right, that we grant a request for 587.21 square foot total floor area variation, variation to exceed the first floor height limit, a 1.05 foot side yard setback variation, and a 2.99 combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home in accordance with the plans submitted for the home at 238 Kilpatrick Avenue.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. This item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. Mr. Adler, would you please approach the podium? So would you outline for us the zoning issue for this case?
As Trustee Pierce just explained, that this is a request. It's a floor area request. It's a minimum side yard setback request, a combined side yard request, all to permit the construction of a substantial addition that is classified as a new home. As you know, with variations, you know, the question is, if it's granted, what happens? Well, if it's granted, the applicant gets to build the plans as proposed in the packet. If it's denied, the applicant would have to revise their plans to conform with the zoning code. They could do that if they found a way to make the addition smaller. They could demolish the home, build a new home. They could choose to sell the property and go look for another property. But if it's denied, they will not be able to build what's proposed here. If it's denied, and they make revision, that revision would have to be deemed substantial for them to come back within a year of the denial.
And removing the variations would be considered, well, removing the variations, it wouldn't have to come back to us, but, you know, what typically would be considered substantial? You are the judge of that, right?
Sure. I think in this case, where you have a floor area variation and setback variations, my guess would be is if the floor, if at tonight's meeting, the village board doesn't believe that the variation should be granted, if the applicant came back with a much reduced or no variation on floor area, but still was seeking a setback variation, I would permit that to go back through the process with less than a year, years' time's passed.
Thank you.
The variation standards, I'm not going to go through these, but we could throw them up when you're deliberating. You've seen them a lot. This is what's necessary for variation to be granted. This last thing I'm going to go over is, I took the elevation to show the various first floor heights and what that actually means. I've received a lot of questions in the last couple of days on, well, why does the basement count as floor area in this particular case? And in this particular case, what's happening is the two-story portion of a split level house is being left and a two-story additions being built. The remaining portion, and that's the red line there, where it says existing first floor, has an existing first floor that's approximately five feet seven, five feet eight, five feet nine inches above grade. When you're looking at new construction, which again, this is because the addition's so significant and the changes are significant, this is being considered, that blue line is the maximum height of the first floor for the structure to be conforming. So if you would imagine those windows not there, but the floor lowered to that blue line there, that would, that would be an approximately conforming structure if the first floor level was at that level. The existing floor is, as I, is, the other number I have up there is a distance of five feet, which would be non-conforming in this case, because this is, has been deemed a new home. If this was an addition, considered addition and not new home, the first floor height could be at five feet and not count against this, against this home. Now, this is a house that has a first floor height that's actually above that five feet. But I just present this because there was a lot of questions about, when is the basement space counting? And when would it not count towards floor area? And I don't know if there's any questions in regards to that.
Questions for Mr. Adler?
Just a comment I wanted to make, that I think kind of highlights the challenge, and that is, if the applicant was denied and a new home was built conforming, from the street, the bulk would look the same. Is that fair? In other words, they'd build a deeper basement.
That's correct. I took a look at, the important elevation is the measurement from that blue line up, to see if we would count more floor area, because that's such a, from that to the bottom of the roof rafters, and actually, they most likely would be able to construct that if the basement was lower and the first floor height was lower. And I'll point this out, because the variation is slightly less than what is counting against in the basement. I think the basement is 718 square feet. The variation is for 587 square feet. So technically, if they were to lower that, they would have another 130 square feet of floor area they could build on the first or second floor, because they're no longer having any of that basement space, much less, you know, they're not having the 718 square feet in the basement counting against them.
Other questions for Mr. Adler?
Yeah, just to clarify. And so, this part of the house with the non-conforming, with the first floor height, that is not part of any construction. That's being left as is.
Correct. I do believe, and the applicant will have to answer this, I do believe the roof line was being changed to match the existing home. That didn't add the floor area, but I believe the new roof line's more like, if you take it from grade, around 16 feet, and that's more like 18 to 19 feet. So, but it's my understanding, the first and second floor, removing the roof line is not being amended or changed.
Trustee Kersman?
Where will the downspouts be located, and about what percentage of water would go to each location?
That might be a better question for the applicant, don't you think? We'll wait for him to come up. So, because I think Mr. Adler is, what's the law? So. Would you happen to know?
I do not know. Yeah, and if, if this is approved, or if it's not approved, and they would come in with a new home, they'll have to come in with the whole grading and drainage plan, which the engineering department will be responsible for reviewing and okaying, and then ultimately verifying both what's being proposed here and what a total removal of the structure and building of a new house would require a topographical before construction, and then one after, to make sure that the way it's being graded is in conformance with what was approved.
A curiosity question for follow-up. If, would it help you evaluate a proposal such as this if these renderings included downspouts? I find them conspicuously absent from things that come before the village.
Sure. I guess I would defer that question to the village engineer. I, and this is, I'm not an engineer, but this, you know, particular piece of property where this house is located, my guess is they're going to, you know, ask them to be directed to the rear and to the front. There's not much distance to direct them to the north or to the south. I don't think if one attempted to do that, those downspouts would be conforming. Whether it makes more sense in this particular case, because of this neighborhood, to direct downspouts that would typically go to the front, to have it go to the rear, or instead of going to the rear, have them somehow discharge the front, I don't know. I, again, I apologize, I would, we would rely on their engineer and the village engineer to take a look at that.
Thank you.
The only code is, you can't put your downspout, so it directs the water onto your neighbor.
Correct. That is, that is the current code.
And you still have to go through our grading process.
Right.
Okay. Further questions for Mr. Adler? All right, I'm going to call the applicant up. Would the applicant please approach?
Would you like, sorry, are the standards back up, or are you on, do you think that's okay?
I actually think this one's more interesting.
Okay.
So would the applicant please approach?
Welcome. I have an introductory comment to make here, just, so the members of the village board have reviewed the report from the zoning board, and so they're familiar with the project. In your presentation, please feel free to take a few minutes to describe the project, but please focus your comments on addressing the concerns that were raised by the zoning board. So in making its negative recommendation, the zoning board found that your proposal did not meet all the standards of review, and Mr. Adler had those standards up a minute ago. So for each zoning case, they actually, in their report, they have a finding of fact, and I'm going to read the findings of fact, just so it can focus your comments and the board's attention to the actual findings of fact. So the findings of fact, in this case, first off, it's interesting, it was a split, it was a 3-3 split. So three members of the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the request meets the variation standards of section 5.4.1 of the zoning ordinance. The physical conditions of the property, the sighting of the house and the lot, and the design of the house is a split level impose upon the owner a practical difficulty. The plight of the owner was not created by the owner, and is due to the unique circumstances of the house and lot. The applicant has worked to reduce the floor area variation, which is now less than the floor area attributed to the basement. The difficulty is peculiar to the property in question. The difficulty prevents the owner from making reasonable use of the property with the second story addition, story addition, and attached garage addition. The proposed variations will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property. Attaching the garage will reduce impervious coverage on the lot, improving the condition in the area of flooding. The variations, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Usually, you just get one of those paragraphs. In your case, because of the split, you get two. Three members of the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the request does not meet the variation standards of section 5.4.1 of the zoning ordinance. There are no particular conditions of the property that are creating a practical difficulty or particular hardship. The basement area that contributes to floor area was designed as living space and should not be considered area to be credited for floor area elsewhere. The lot is standard size and dimensions. The owners are creating their own plight with the proposed scope and design of the improvements. The proposed floor area is excessive for the current size of the house and the lot. The variations, if granted, will alter the essential character of the neighborhood with a house that is oversized for the neighborhood. So, in reading that, I think the key sentence in the second paragraph is, "The basement area that contributes to floor area was designed as living space and should not be considered area to be credited for floor area elsewhere." And again, three members of the board found that to be the case, and three members did not find it to be the case. So in your comments to us, please address that, because I believe that is sort of the critical issue here on how you view the basement. So let us know, now the floor is yours, be sure to let us know how you think we should view the basement.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to talk. My name is Esmail Haddadiyan. I'm the owner of the 238 Kilpatrick Avenue. This is an old house, about 60 years old. We have been going through the redesigning and coming with different plans to make sure that we can conform as much as possible with the ordinance. I've been living in Wilmeth for about 10 years. I really enjoy the community, and my family has grown the past couple of years, and we need more space. So, and then, one option would be to totally demolish the house, and then we can actually fit everything. We don't need any variance. However, the hardship for me and my family is the economy. It is much more expensive. And then, this basement, pretty much, we had a floor plan that we requested 11 percent, and then we revised that, and now we are requesting less than the basement, and basically, it is a basement. I mean, this is an old house. I totally understand the new code says that it should be the floor area, as Mr. Adler correctly mentioned, but this is, I'm not changing anything. This is the way it is. This is the way the house is, and basically, by keeping a portion of the house, it allows me to build the extra part. And it is a basement. I mean, we, my, the only use that we have the basement, I think Ms. Roberts asked for pictures, we provided the picture.
And we appreciate that you sent them.
This is a, this is a playing area for my daughters, and this is the only usage we have, plus a mechanical room, and that's the way it's going to stay. This house, the way if it goes forward, will not have any extra basement. The rest of the house underneath would not be anything. And basically, the main reason that, I mean, a lot of people have told me that it's not going to be a good plan, because you're adding addition to something existing, you cannot sell it. But for me, after doing all numbers, this is the best option. I mean, if I, if I trust, I mean, I tell you, am I honest, if I had money, I would demolish the house and build a new house. No question, I would not be here. The problem is that it's too expensive. So this is, this would allow me to enjoy the neighborhood and stay in Wilmeth. If that does not happen, we need to move out. This would be, because we need a larger space, and the house is very old. With this addition, we are hoping to keep it and then stay. Otherwise, I mean, my request is that this is a basement. Please consider it as a basement, and do not consider it as floor area, as you do it for a new house.
Questions for the applicant?
And I have one more comment also for the flooding. I totally understand that our street have a lot of flooding. When it rains, the backyard of our house is a pool. And I will do whatever possible, what engineering possible, I will, I mean, if it's approved, I provide plans that is approvable by the village engineering to make sure that there is, to minimize the flooding. And as listed by three of the zoning board members, bringing the, actually, the garage, garage is in the back part, that creates, that allows more water to stay there. But bringing the garage to the front, actually, I would remove, just by doing that, we will remove the amount of the water in back of the house, and also the neighbors to our right and left. So whatever the, I mean, we will do the best to my possibility to provide a plan that minimizes the flooding. And that should be also approved by the village, village engineering.
Right, yeah. The engineering department will require you to do that, so.
Yes.
Your offer to do it is wonderful, but you would be required.
Yes, no, no, no. I'm just saying that I have no, I mean, this design have no plan to add the flooding or anything.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Trustee Sullivan, you look like you have one?
Going off the standards, but what really, I mean, I get the hardship, and it seems like the hardship is, this is a cheaper way to go for you than building it.
Well, but the zoning, the zoning board said the hardship is the design of the house, right?
Is it, I mean, I guess where I'm coming out is, this is a 4,600, you're going to build a 4,600 square foot home, or have a 4,600 square foot home. That's a big house.
Yeah, but then you're considering the basement. That's the thing I'm saying, that please do not consider the basement as basement. If I built a new house, I can have it totally under, I have, I can have a 2,000 square feet basement. And the problem is that it's a basement. Please consider it as a basement. This is all designed, built 60 years ago, and what am I saying? That this is a basement. And the usage for it is also as a basement. We don't have any, any other usage of it. And I'm not proposing to build a new house with this conformation. No, I'm just saying that we are going to keep it the way it is, but please consider it as a basement.
Trustee Pierce, would you?
Well, my, I know you've modified your plans and been to the zoning board a couple of times, and, you know, you're very sincere. And my concern is that our decision not only applies to you, but there's a lot of split levels.
Yes, then, yes.
And so what we're deciding is, if we say this is not a basement, we're not saying that just to you, we're saying that to many split levels in Wilmeth. My question is, is there other things you could be doing to minimize the addition, so that you really wouldn't be here, or the, you know, the size would be even smaller?
I mean, trust me, we tried. My architect is here, he can explain also. It's been going on for a year.
No, I know.
And, and we tried, we tried. And first, it was over 11 percent. After a couple of back and forth, now we are requesting a variance, which is less than the size of the basement. I mean, I'm doing, this is a big project. If I'm doing this, I mean, this should be something that we feel comfortable as a family, and we are a large family, and then we can use it. If I'm going to use, to build something that is not usable, there is not really point. And we tried, I mean, we tried to resize it as much as possible. And now we are asking for less than the basement.
Okay.
And then also to your comment, there are a lot of houses like this, I agree, in our street, there are a lot of split levels. This would open the door to, for a lot of other people to modify their houses, and then, I mean, the house would look very different. If you look at the house, the pictures, it's like, I would say, it's not a really good-looking house. But then, by doing these changes, then the whole neighborhood can change, because people then can afford to do this. If, otherwise, it would be much, a lot more expensive.
Okay, thank you. What's, what's, oh, go ahead, Trustee Dodd.
I have actually one question for you. If you, just, there was a couple comments in the zoning board's write-up, and I just want to make sure I understand. The original, the split level, you're not modifying the foundation or anything there. You're not adding additional foundations, so all the foundation that you're creating is only around the new structure?
Well, yes, yes, yes.
Existing foundations, yes.
Yeah, existing foundation stays, and then basically, that's the way we are planning to save cost. So we are not going to change the foundation, yes.
But how big is the, how big is the addition?
It's about 3,900 square feet.
So I guess that's, that's, that's part of the challenge as well, that when you, I mean, I understand you may have a big family, but part of the challenge as well is coming and saying, I can't minimize this, because I need 3,900 square feet. 3,200 square feet would erase the variation, right?
The addition, new addition is about 127 feet less than the code required, I mean, zoning required, allowed to build addition. The only question, as the owner says, is the adumni, split level in Village of Wilmeth, but unfortunately, all of them meet requirement is lower than the height, you know, extending from the ground level, except this one.
Right, except, except the floor area that is in this, in this basement that is part of the split level, where, again, I mean, I'm sure Trustee Pierce is concerned that, you know, because it's not just what you can do to your house, it's the size of your house relative to your lot. And what we're in essence saying is that you can basically have 700, 800 extra square feet on the same lot, because I suspect a lot of these split levels have, you know, when you drove down the street, they looked about the same size, so their basement, maybe it's 500, maybe it's 600, whatever. But it's, you're basically saying that everybody can have that. Maybe if you had, if you were adding 1,000 feet, and you said, oh, hey, you know, I'm 300 over because of this, but adding 4,000 square feet is hard to swallow, or more than 3,000 square feet is hard to swallow, that there's hardship there.
Please keep in mind the lower level, you're not going to put a master bedroom on lower level, because the moisture, the, not much, you know, windows, of course, there is windows, but not enough to have a bedroom down. They're only using it for the kids' playground, and they're coming back from school, and so on. They've been using it. That's what he likes to maintain.
So how much, how much of the basement is actually below grade? How many feet?
About 48 inches.
So four feet's below grade, and, and then you've got five or six feet above?
It should be four feet above the grade, which is right now is about 60.
And then, and then again, I like to be honest and tell you that also, when I'm doing this, I'm spending a couple of hundred thousand dollars on this. This would be an investment. I consider that also. I mean, if I remove that 7, 500, then it would be a small house. I mean, I'm also thinking in future, like, someday, I'm going to sell this house. This would be a split level house with existing foundation, small. Nobody's going, I mean, it would be hard to sell it also. So this is, of course, I understand it's a difficult thing, but I'm working on this for over a year, and this is the way I, this is the best way we could put everything together. This is optimum way. It's not, I mean, nobody will buy this, even the village call it as a, as a new construction. It's not, the buyers will not consider it as a new construction. They would say.
Right, the new construction is based on the zoning code, based on how much work you're doing. That's why the standard is over this.
Yes, yes, but then I'm also considering what's going to happen, like 20, 30 years from now. So it's, it's a big decision for me. It's not, it's not a small decision. And trust me, again, if I could demolish, if I had the money to demolish, I would do it tomorrow. I don't.
Any more questions for the applicants? I'm going to call Mr. Adler up. I had a couple of questions.
I just want to clarify the square feet. So are we accurate to say that the addition is there?
So are we accurate to say that the addition is 3,900, 3,900 square feet?
Page six, I don't know if you have a drawing.
Well, yeah, I do, but, so I understood that the final house, including the 700 and some square foot basement, is 4,600 square feet?
Yes.
Okay. So the addition is not 3,900 square feet? I mean, you've got a bunch, you've got existing house.
Addition excluding just the page six, excluding the existing lower level, is 3,974, 2,090.
Oh, that's the total, that's the total house. That's not the addition. Right, right, right. Mr. Adler, would you come up for a sec, because I'm looking at page four here.
Yeah, 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 it's not.
There are the lot coverage and floor area worksheets in here, they're towards the end of the report.
3,900 including the existing.
Right. According to the worksheets, the proposed first floor is about 1,000 square feet, 993 square feet. And the proposed second floor is 1,569 square feet. So right around 25, 60 square feet.
So about a 2,500 foot.
And then you've got an additional square footage in the basement, in the first floor.
What?
And that's the existing basement area.
So I think, I think you're, I think you're on page 263, maybe, of the PDF, which shows the basement at 746 and the basement at 746, so that's the same. The next page shows 680 going to 1727, so that's an additional 1,000 feet or so.
Right.
And then the next one is going from 740 to 2,400 and change, so you're talking about like 17, 1800 square feet of addition.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Plunkett, for noticing that, the math there.
Just make sure I now follow, because we're gonna, the request is to approve something that will be in total 4,656 square feet. The basement, if you net that out, taking out 750 or 746, we're at 3,00906, which is, would be conforming.
Yes.
I'm asking Mr. Adler.
Yes, yep.
So, just 'cause I try, I know him, he knows how to lingo.
Yeah. The maximum permitted floor area is just over 1,000 square feet.
We allow this, or, to your point, we could tear this down, build a new construction home that basement can go down as deep as whatever our code, and
That would be correct.
We could put 4,000 above grade, 4,000 square feet above grade.
Correct.
So, but, and what's the difference, remind us, you just told it to us, but what's the difference between the green line and the red line and the blue line again?
The green line's a little bit confusing, and I apologize by putting that up there, but the, the, the green line in this particular case, because this is a new home, is still not conforming, but let's just imagine that this addition did not go past the point of being just an addition. You could have an existing home that, as long as the home was built prior to 1990, your first floor could be as high as five feet without it counting its basement space. So that's just one of the
So, so what you're saying is if they did an addition that was small enough, such that it wasn't considered a new home, they're still too high.
Exactly.
But they're not as off as they would be.
A lot of times when we show that line, it's actually higher than
Right.
But in this case, you're right, they're about eight inches too high instead of two feet, eight inches, which is, when you have a new home, you're limited to that three foot in height before, and that's the floor you're standing on, before it starts counting the basement against you.
So, let me ask Trustee Sullivan a question. You were on the, when we rewrote the zoning code, I mean, we just rewrote everything within the last few years. Was this talked about at all? Did we talk about split levels much?
Sorry, you can also The one thing we did talk about, we, we did talk about whether it made sense to count basements 100 percent, 100 percent of the basement against the floor area, because, I mean, if you look at the difference between that blue line and that red line, and let's just imagine they had to remove that to be conforming, arguably, it's not 718 square feet of 10-foot wall, it's, it's, it's really a section of the home being removed.
Right, right.
The house being dropped, and it being conforming. I think one of the reasons we, you know, the, this ordinance, at least in part, the reason we look at limiting the height of the first floor is, if you have a first floor too high in a neighborhood where you've got grade level entryways, your first floor looms over the, your neighbor's home. You might have a, if you're five feet up and your neighbor's house is entering at grade, it, you know, it does change the character. So a big part of that was dealing with, you know, the appearance of the, how the house fits into the neighborhood. And obviously, when you, when, the more of the basement that goes above grade, it does add bulk. But I don't think we felt we had a really good way of just taking a percentage. And I don't think it was necessary split levels, I think it was more just the Yeah. The basement above grade. And we have these, one or two a year come up, where this is an issue with the older homes. In general, no matter the style. As we know, some of them are easier, because you've got six-foot clearance in the basement, and you got piped, and you just can't use the space for living space. So those are a little bit more, I think, easier to argue a hardship or a practical difficulty.
And, you know, in my thinking, you know, we were talking about, okay, what if we were to open the door for this being, this sort of variance being applicable to other split levels? I think that really changes the nature of the look of the neighborhood, because the neighborhood was built in the 60s as split levels. They had a certain look, a certain height, and if you start changing some of those, it's not the same. And I see the, one of the purposes of the zoning ordinance is to preserve the look and the feel of the neighborhoods.
John, I have another question. John, I have a question for you. So do you know roughly how many homes we have that are split level?
I don't. It's in the Hollywood addition to Wilmette, that area, there's, there's a lot that are split level or tri-level.
And then, when these split levels were built, was this, whatever you wanna call basement or first floor, I'm confused, was it intended to be living space?
Yes.
So they were, so those are intended to be living spaces? In some homes, there are, I don't know, dining room, I don't, you know, what kind of living space would be in those homes?
I think in most of them, you're gonna probably find a alternative living space, something that uses family room, but there are some where you'll find bedrooms in the lower level, split level.
It was a family room for us.
It was, okay.
Yeah, but to Trustee Dodd's point, it was designed to be living space. This isn't, this isn't the mistake of the basement where, hey, we just built the house in 1905, and we decided to elevate the first floor more than what code provided. This was, this is by design. This is not a mistake.
At a time that people were being cost-conscious, it was a relatively inexpensive way of providing more living space. You didn't have to dig down, you didn't have to put a big foundation, you didn't, you were gonna be putting in a, most likely, a crawl space or some sort of area under the house, and it just made, I believe, you know, when most of these were built after World War II, financial sense to do that and give more living area to families.
I have one more question for you, John. So I just wanna clarify, when you say first floor, are you talking about the basement? If it's a certain height, and if it's not a certain height, then it would be considered the first floor?
When I'm talking about the first floor, I mean, I'm actually, in this case, talking those blue, green, and red lines, that's what I'm talking about. That's, that's what we look at.
So in some homes, the first floor is considered the basement?
No, no. No, you know, but, yeah, I think when you get over, I mean, arguably, you're right. In this case, one could argue that the first floor is this level here. For, for the purpose of our discussion, because the zoning ordinance talks about the maximum, the first floor could be out of grade, that's, that's above grade, that's why I'm talking about the blue line, the green line, and red line as first floor. But, I mean, technically, if you're now counting that space underneath as floor area, I think one could say, okay, we're counting that as floor one, and floor two is above it.
Okay, I think you answered this for me a while. That's the lowest level of the first floor? Okay.
Yeah.
I answered my own question.
Okay, so any other questions? Yeah.
So, this area, looking at the photo of the existing house, you enter at grade, and you go downstairs to this basement. And what is the height of this basement again?
It's about, if I raise my hand, I touch the ceiling. So it's not really, I mean, if I do this, I touch the ceiling.
Six, okay, so this, six foot, 10 inches.
From the lower level, okay, to the ceiling.
To the ceiling, okay.
And then, and then first floor is up here, just a few feet lower.
If you could end up.
Okay, Mr. Adler, we confirm that, six?
Yeah, I, I'm not certain.
Okay.
I just
And we have pictures of the basement, I mean, I gave them to Ms. Roberts, you can see that.
You have them, thank you.
Yes. I mean, the floor is not really high, I mean, I can touch it. And then also, I'd like to add that, again, if I have the money, if I can demolish the house, and then it would be a new house, which again, I
I know, but, but
No, no, no.
What's important is economic hardship, is not hardship.
No, 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 no.
It's the sighting of the house.
No, 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 no. If I can, if I may finish. As far as changing the look of the neighborhood, if I demolish the house and put in new house, then again, it would be a change. So you cannot, at that point, I don't need to be here, I don't need to request anything. I can just build 4,000 square feet. Actually, we have a plan to, I can show you, and it would be very similar, or actually, the existing would be even higher, and it would conform, we checked, and it totally conform, it would be a different look, and it will change the look of the street, and I don't need to be here. There is no, I mean, I can build it without any question.
Right. I missed this when you introduced, but How long have you lived in the house?
About 10 years.
And have you done any work on this house? Have you required a permit or come to court?
Yes, I mean, not, not any major construction, we changed the, it was a very old house, so when we moved in, it was one-layer windows, we changed the windows, we changed the roof. Interestingly, there was no fire alarm in the house, so we added the fire alarm, we added, we remodeled totally the basements, the basement, sorry, the restrooms, the bathrooms, they were very bad shape. So pretty much everything, we did a good amount of work in the split level, in the one that you see.
Yeah, but everything was inside, you didn't
No, no, I did not do anything outside. Like, the garage, because of the flooding, the garage concrete is broken, so it's like this. And the garage has to come forward, otherwise, there is no point.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant or for Mr. Adler?
A question for John. The, John, the existing first floor height, the red line, is that what you typically find for a split level, that height?
My guess would be it'd be between the green and red line for a split level.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, so I'm gonna ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak, anyone in the audience. Advocate, you can have a seat. Thank you, Mr. Adler. So is there anyone in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay, hearing none. It's been moved in second discussion. Anyone? Trustee Pierce?
Well, I have concerns with the application. I think the applicant is very sincere, and is doing everything he can to preserve as opposed to build a new house, which may have the same amount of bulk when we look at it, but in terms of the way our code is and our standards of review, I don't think it meets it. I also think, while he may feel it would be good, right now, one of our standards is changing the character of the neighborhood, and I think we're basically saying to anyone with a split level, you can do this, and you'll get an FAR variation, and we're, that's not what our code provides. So I have a concern about this.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I certainly understand the need to have more house as your family is growing, and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to go back to the drawing board. I still think it would, this would change the essential neighborhood character, and that is what the zoning laws are intended to not have happen. And for that reason, I would also have hesitation to support this.
Trustee Plunkett?
I think that although in this case, this design is different than a split level, I think that in principle, this ruling would not change the character of the neighborhood, because I think more people would feel that they could keep their split level, put on an addition, keep, keep the existing split level, keep the character of the neighborhood, and know that their shortened basement is not counting against their FAR. And I think that would be more of an incentive not to tear it down, not to do remodels, if you could work with the existing house. And, I mean, let's face it, new basements, no one builds a basement these days with a six-foot, 10-inch ceiling, and no one builds a basement these days that is not used for extra living space. I mean, this is only 700 and some square foot of a basement with a short ceiling and, you know, concrete floors. This is nothing compared to what a new construction would be.
Trustee Sullivan? I agree with Trustee Plunkett. I think, you know, and this is a hard one, because it's 4,600 square feet, it's, it looks big when you look at just the numbers, but I put this as, this is a way to preserve a house that's, you know, built in 1960, and, you know, when you net out the basement that is counting against them, they're, they're still under what they could build above grade, and if they did tear it down, we're changing the neighborhood or the character, so, or the character of the neighborhood. And I think, you know, I don't like the FAR variations to begin with, but I think in this case, this is a, the right accommodation for the neighborhood, where it won't be such a disturbance on that street, and I could support this.
Trustee Dodd or Trustee Kersman?
Thank you. I do have concerns about the proposal. I have been in those circumstances, living in the same size home, and considered building upon it, ultimately, to see that the economics didn't make sense, and we relocated to a new home. The economic questions are real, but I do not consider it hardship, to your point, Mr. President. I also noticed that whereas my former property is sometimes listed as a comparable on some of these that come before the board, it was not here, which makes me think our architect did not even consider to go this way. We certainly considered it livable space. I mean, that's why I fought so hard to protect it, along with those of my neighbors. I also have spent times in the homes near to where this is, and I know what the potential impact would be on them, having been in the homes. And so I do have ongoing concerns.
Trustee Dodd?
I'm not sure. I mean, I agree with both perspectives here. I mean, on one hand, feeling like the better solution is for them to tear their home down and build something that is not in character with, with that particular streets is hard. But I think the biggest issue, the biggest thing for me is that this is considered livable space, that's why the split levels were initially designed. They were designed as such as an option to create a specific look in the, in this particular part of the community, and I don't feel I really see the hardship, so I guess I'd, I think that's where I am.
Yeah, and I, I also hear both sides of this argument, but, you know, it's a much larger proposition to buy a home of this size to tear it down. And so I don't think a lot of people will be thinking about buying the split level to tear it down. I think that this does give a path to turning the entire block, because there's five or six, I think, on the block, into a much, much larger, much, much larger home. So I'm, I'm also not inclined to, to support the, the request. So again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It will need five votes tonight to overturn that recommendation. Clarification, an affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the zoning board of appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Nay.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Plunkett?
Yes.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
President Blinsky?
No. So motion fails, the zoning board of appeals recommendation stands. Back to
Lanius.
Trustee Pierce.
That completes the Lanius report.
So Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan?
Yep, we have three items before us this evening. The first is item 6.21, which is the presentation of our fiscal year 2017 comprehensive annual report, also known as the CAFR. Turn it over to Director of Finance, Ms. Malloy.
Welcome, Ms. Malloy.
Good evening.
Good evening. Lauterbach and Ammon, which is the village's auditor, has completed their review of our financial statements for 2017, and I'm pleased to report that we have once again received a clean audit opinion. Because of strong revenue performance, mainly in permanent activity, and prudent expenditure management, the general fund balance grew by 1.8 million to 16.2 million at year-end. Our water and sewer funds also saw increases to their total fund balance, and this is the third year in implementing the requirements of GASP 68. We have talked about that several times here, and that's where the liabilities that are associated with our pension funds are brought forward in the financial statements, they have always been a part of our financial statements, but the impact has been to the tune of roughly 46 million that you see impacting governmental funds in 2017. I would like to introduce Ron Ammon, he is a partner with Lauterbach and Ammon, and he is here to answer any other questions you might have about the CAFR.
Welcome, Mr. Ammon, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Any questions, or do you have, you have any remarks for us at this point in time?
I'll just make two comments. In the, the audit document itself, there is a page in there in the introductory section that talks about the certificate of achievement. I always want to make sure that the board understands that your December of 16 audit was submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association, received that very distinguished award, and then, as Melinda pointed out, by state statute, all units of government are required to have an auditor's opinion, and once again, the Willmett opinion is clean or unmodified.
Which is as good as it can be, right?
It's as good as it can be, and it's the only opinion you want.
Right. Are there any questions for Mr. Ammon? My understanding is that the Finance Committee will actually be sitting down with you and sort of going through it in a more detailed fashion, but I believe it's state statute that says that we have to receive this by June 30th, or July 1st?
Yes.
Right, so this is the board meeting where we receive the CAFR, and the Finance Committee is due in July to review it in more detail with you.
That's correct.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Back to Trustee Sullivan.
Two more items, a motion, item 6.22, which is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2018-045, repealing ordinance number 2017-036, identifying home rule conflicts with a certain county ordinance regarding minimum hourly wage.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Well, announce the other one, item 6.23, which is a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-046, repealing ordinance 2017-040, identifying home rule conflicts with a certain county ordinance regarding paid sick leave.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So to begin this item, I'm gonna walk through just a handful of PowerPoint slides, which will review the process we've undertaken, and the way tonight's meeting's gonna go. I think this is, is this what I've got?
It's rotated.
Oh, okay, I had it backwards, all right. All right, so we showed this, we've shown this slide a number of times now, but I will, for the sake of people who are here for the first time, review this. Last June, on June 27th, the board adopted ordinances that opted out of the county's ordinances on minimum wage and paid sick leave. The Finance Committee of the board was tasked to study these ordinances, that was part of what we decided at that June meeting, and in December of 2017, a working group of residents and business owners was appointed. Former village president John Jacoby served as chair of that working group. The group held seven public meetings in the spring, and, well, I guess January through April, and on the 15th of May, the working group presented us with a 436-page report. At our very last board meeting, we introduced the ordinances that are, will, are, that are designed to repeal the village's opt-out, and then tonight, we will actually vote on those ordinances. That's our normal process, where we introduce an ordinance at the meeting prior to taking a vote. So tonight's meeting, as I said, we're gonna vote on the repealing the opt-out ordinances. We will take public comment until 11 o'clock, it's below, before 8:00 PM right now, so that will be approximately three hours of public comment, and then we'll take a 10-minute recess, we will then deliberate, and then there will be a vote. I'll just note that there must be a majority vote of the village board to extend one of our meetings past 11:30 PM, that's actually in the village code.
But it's, it's okay if public comment ends before 11?
It is, yes, it is okay. I, I've got a lot more to say about public comment. All right, so the, the village rules call for a minimum of 30 minutes of public comment, but in order to permit the board to have time to discuss and debate the ordinances, we're gonna suspend public comment at 11 o'clock this evening. And we started the meeting early tonight to maximize the amount of time available for public comment tonight. Now, this is, as the second bullet says, this is the 14th public meeting on this topic, we've had five village board meetings, seven working group meetings, and two finance committees, and in each of those meetings, there was the opportunity for public comment. We did commit to the community that we were gonna revisit our June 2017 vote before July 1st of 2018, and so this is the board's last opportunity to take action before the 1st, and we will vote on these ordinances tonight. We've done our best to maximize the amount of time available for public comment this evening, but in order to permit us adequate time to discuss and debate, and eventually vote on the ordinances, we will be suspending public comment at 11. Now, we're gonna do our very best to accommodate as many people as possible before 11, but we must move forward at that time. I think it's the opinion of everybody on the board, that the community is not well-served when our decisions go into the wee hours of the morning, and even with our suspending public comment at 11, we are likely to go quite late tonight. So now, as the third bullet point says, if you commented at the May 15th meeting, or the June 12th meeting, or if you sent us an email, your comments are on the record, you're welcome to speak again, but you're not required to do so to have registered your opinion. I am going to ask that if you commented at the May 15th meeting, or the June 12th meeting, that you wait and let people who have not had an opportunity to address the board, you wait to let them speak first. Now, as I have at each meeting this year on the topic, before I begin public comment, I will allow people to register their support for, or opposition to opting out of the county's ordinance, without having to take the time to address the board. I'm gonna ask people to raise their hands to show their support or opposition, we'll count each group, and include in the record, and of course, participation in this exercise is optional. Now, I have heard concerns about this hand-raising process, this concern is not knowing who's actually registering their opinion, because during public comment, people identify themselves, but people who raise their hands do not. In response, I'll say first off, that the village board is aware of this fact. Second, I'll note that the process is intended to make the meeting move efficiently, by allowing people to express their opinion without taking the time to address the board. There are those in the room who may not be comfortable addressing the board from the podium. There are also those who are content with registering their opinion in that way, without actually having to address the board, so this process accommodates both of those groups. And finally, you know, the board has reviewed and considered an enormous amount of information on this topic, and the number of people in attendance here tonight is just one more piece of information, which will be weighted appropriately by each member. Okay, let me take a break here. So, people can register their support for, or opposition to opting out of the county's ordinance by raising their hands when asked. Please listen carefully, because using the word "opt-out" makes it a little confusing. So, if you'd like to express your support for the village opting out of the county's ordinances, that is, not having them take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. Okay, so 27. Okay.
Is it just doing that standing, or is it doing this?
Yeah. Okay. You're gonna do standing? Okay. Wait a second. Well, I haven't counted the standing yet. On your side? Yeah. Yeah, I know. So, what did you say, you had 54? I had 53.
22.
You had 22 standing?
Finished here.
Okay. 90, right? No, 80, yeah. Okay, you can put your hands down, we counted between the three of us, 80 or 81 people that raised their hands. Okay, so now, if you'd like to express your opposition to the village opting out of the county's ordinances, that is, you would like them to take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. So then, four and nil. Okay, and then, 41 total? Without the three there? Okay, I'm gonna count, just 'cause I'm, since I've been doing it every meeting. Mike, what did you have?
41.
I had 44. Okay, so we had, our count was between 82 and 85. So, it's not a precise science, it's just, all right. Right, 82 to 85, so that's, that's what we'll put in the record. All right, now may I see a show of hands of people who'd like to address the board this evening? Yeah, we have to count again, sorry. We are counting again, yes.
Oh, which one?
No, we're, we're counting people who'd like to address the board tonight. Okay, so if you'd like to address us, please hold your hand up.
People who have spoken.
No ma'am, that's not what I said. People who would like to address the board tonight, thank you. Okay. I had 23 on the side.
I had 28 on the side.
You had 28, so that's 51?
Yeah, I keep, I keep coming up.
So what did you say?
30, I said.
Yeah. So that's 53. Okay, thank you, now you can put your hands down. So let me remind everyone of the village's rules for public comment during a village board meeting. In order to give every person a fair and equal opportunity to address the board, each person will be allotted three minutes to speak, and individuals will be allowed to address the board only once tonight. If everyone who's indicated they wish to speak, and no one else, we always have a little creep there in these meetings, if everyone takes the entire three minutes allotted, it's gonna be about 160 minutes, which will actually put it inside of 11 o'clock. But, we are gonna suspend public comment at 11 o'clock, and, I'm just looking at my notes, I expected, expected more. So if you commented publicly, on May 15th, June 12th, again, you are on the record, and I'm gonna ask you to wait until others who did not speak have a chance. So, we're not gonna go section to section tonight, we're just gonna have people queue up, and so I, I will ask you one more time, I will ask people to wait, but I'll go on to other comments here. So as a matter of courtesy, for people waiting, and to make sure that everybody does get a chance to, to speak tonight, please be concise, try to avoid repetition in your comments, if another speaker's already said what you plan to say, you may just say you agree with that speaker, to save time. Please try to use less than three minutes allotted, that will make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to address the board tonight. Mr. Frenzer, to my right, will be responsible for watching the time for each speaker, he will raise a finger when you have one minute left, his hand when you have 30 seconds left, and will also let speakers know when their time is up. We are tight on our time tonight, and given those constraints, when Mr. Frenzer says time is up, I'm going to move into the microphone, thank the speaker, and ask the next person to come up. So please do try to be mindful of the time as he gives it to you. Also, I ask that all speakers tonight be considerate of each other, please be respectful of each other's opinions, refrain from commenting, unless it's your turn at the podium, please refrain from applauding, booing, or otherwise making comments or noise, and for the speakers at the podium, please address your comments to the members of the board, and not to other people in the room. Again, as I said, I'm not gonna be calling specific sections tonight to queue up, so people will be free to join the line at any point in time to address the board. And, one more time, if you talk to us on May 15th or June 12th, please remain in your seats for a while, I can't force you to wait, but we are a community of neighbors, so I ask that you be neighborly and wait before joining the line. So I now invite members of the audience to approach the podium, and queue up for public comment. It is 8, what, 8:08 or something like that? So, we will, we will suspend public comment at 11:00 PM, and if everybody, if we don't get extra hand raises, and if everybody holds to three minutes, which we'll be able to do from here, we will, everybody will get a chance to speak tonight, and that's great. Welcome, sir, you're first. Please tell us who you are and where you live, and, and then you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you, I wanna thank the board for the excellent job I think you've been doing. I'm a longtime resident of Willmett, it's coming on 39 years, on Highland Avenue.
Your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vaughn, V-A-U-G-H-N, Leath, L-E-A-T-H.
Thank you.
All right. I'm a longtime resident of Willmett, 39 years, and one thing I've noticed over those 39 years, is retail businesses come and go like the wind. It's a tough business, it's like, we're no different than any other place, it's hard to make a living in the retail sector. I remember when Eden's Plaza was virtually empty, and it was that way for, I believe, about 15 or 20 years, and then downtown was a disaster till about five years ago, when the restaurants finally took off, and Plaza del Lago's been so-so. The point is, it's a tough go, and I'd like to just briefly quote from an article in Forbes about Seattle's $15 minimum wage in their experience. The title is "Seattle's Minimum, $15 Minimum Wage Is Worse Than You Thought." And, I quote, "A University of Washington team studying the law's effect found that the law had boosted pay in low-wage jobs since it took effect in 2015, but that it also- but that it also caused a nine percent reduction in hours worked," the Seattle Times reported. "For an average low-wage Seattle worker, that's a loss of about a hundred and twenty-five dollars per month," the study said. And lastly, the finding really is that the rise in wages per hour leads to a reduction in total income for these very low-wage workers that the policy's aiming to help. It's probably not a good policy then. Note that this is about a rise to thirteen dollars. The planned fifteen-dollar-an-hour rise is going to make it worse. Will our experience be any different? I think not. I urge the board to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here and for starting early. My name's Greg Mayer. I live at eight thirty-two Park Avenue. I've been a Willmet resident for about twenty-two years. I'm actually gonna read something from some good friends of mine, Kim and Scott Holstein, who are also longtime Willmet residents.
Is that the email that they sent us?
Yeah, it's really quick, though.
Okay. Yeah, I, let me, I, I'll stop the clock for him, just, let's not punch him. If, if you've sent us an email, I just make a request. If you've sent us an email or a letter, we've received it and, and heard it, so if you do wanna read excerpts of it, please abbreviate your excerpts.
This is not the whole thing.
Okay. The clock is back on now.
To the Willmet Board of Trustees, as residents of Willmet and business owners for the past twenty-two-plus years, we wanted to voice our support and ask you to reconsider the decision not to follow the county's higher minimum wage and paid sick leave laws. We've had cha, we have a chance here to help alleviate poverty and income inequality in our own village, and we wanna support this important effort. Our company team members have experienced greater success in job satisfaction, along with a demonstration of a stronger commitment to their jobs and our companies when we support them to prosper and have a healthy life. This helps our companies to ultimately be more successful, and these laws are a critical component. Thank you for your reconsideration. Sincerely, Kim and Scott Holstein, residents of the great Village of Willmet, co-founders, Kim and Scott's Gourmet Pretzels, The Crave Bar, and Industry Juice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Tom Mead. I live in Willmet. I'm a professor at Northwestern. First of all, I'd like to just say thanks for having these meetings. And I gotta tell ya, it's great to be in the United States where we can actually do this kinda thing. No matter what anybody says, we get to voice our issues. I'm a little concerned about the fact that what you folks are about to decide will exclude government employees, the hundreds of teens, from getting this minimum wage increase. And what makes you think that you're above what you're about to do to us? It's wrong. It's flat wrong. If you're gonna do this, you do it all the way, not halfway. So the hundreds of teens that work for the Park District will not be getting this minimum wage increase. And they're your folks. That comes off whose budget? Why aren't they the same as any other worker? Yep, nope, I'm right, Jeff. You guys, your Park District employees, the kids that work in the summer, are not subject to this increase. They will not be getting the minimum wage law. I've been here for a lot of years. My son worked at the golf course. He has the dents in his head to prove it. But he's not gonna get that minimum wage increase. So... How can you exempt yourselves? I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. President, trustees. My name is Siobhan Nivuchle. I live at four twenty-seven Ninth Street in Willmet. I've lived there since two thousand and four. Prior to that, I was another address in Willmet. I just wanted to note that we keep hearing a lot about the impact on business if we were to opt into this issue. Many of you may remember, two thousand and two, two thousand and three, we were all in this room discussing the smoking ban, and we heard the same scare tactics from the Chamber of Commerce then, saying that business would fail, it would be a disaster, all the other towns would take over. What's actually happened since then is that Willmet was a leader. All of the surrounding towns adopted the smoking ban before it became the official county law, before it became the official state law, and businesses have thrived. Willmet has never been doing better than since we passed that ban. We can do the same thing here. We can actually opt in. We can make Willmet the pioneer, the one that leads the way for the North Shore. So please do it.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Well, my name is Kevin Feely. I'm a tax attorney, working with businesses across the Chicago area for the past twenty-five years. Opt in, opt out, I think we should know what we're opting into or opting out of. In addition to a higher minimum wage and a paid sick leave, we're also opting into this. These are the eighty-plus pages of regulations issued under the ordinances. Has anyone read these regulations? They detail the various requirements under the ordinances, a violation of any of which will subject the business to a fine of five hundred dollars per day per covered employ, employee. I say current count because these regulations leave much to be desired in terms of clarity and guidance. Thus, we can expect more pages of regulations to come. So, thus, an employer could be subject to a fine even if they pay more than the required minimum wage, and even if they provide more than five sick days. Thus, they could be subject to fines for various footfalls under the regulations. Thus, my questions for the board are twofold. First of all, do you really want to impose this additional level of complexity on small businesses? And second, do you want to expose small businesses that otherwise comply with the ordinances to the potential of a hefty fine for a footfall under these regulations? I would urge the board to say no to both of those and to continue to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Rob Ferro, Schiller Avenue, Willmet. First, I'd like to thank the trustees and the president for putting in your time. The folks of Willmet appreciate all you do, and you're not here because of the high salary and the perks, I'm sure of that. I encourage you to vote against the ordinance and to opt out for a couple of reasons. The results will never go away. Once it's in place, we're stuck with it for a long time. There are hidden costs, as the previous speaker just mentioned. Hidden costs within the bureaucracy of Willmet and for the businesses that it will affect. There's a political cost involved as well. You've just voted to spend a lot of money, close to fifty million dollars, on rainwater abatement, and you're now facing potentially a large cost in result of tax revenues and loss of businesses, depending which way you vote tonight, and I'm sure you're aware of that. So I encourage you to vote out of this ordinance, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Blair Cook. I own the Alchemy Coffee House at Fourth and Linden. Thank you, everybody, for all the work that you've done regarding this subject, and I wanna make a particular shout-out to to Joan LaSalle and Beth Feely for your community leadership on this. Thank you, ladies. I want you to know that when I started my shop fourteen years ago, I had a dream. And, I spent all of my savings to build this thing, and I borrowed a hundred thousand dollars to build it. And, when we opened the store, I had no money left for marketing, and I could be the only employee because we were flat broke. And all I can tell you is I am very grateful for the low wage at the beginning because if it wasn't for that, the Alchemy Coffee House would not exist today. I am telling you it would not exist, and I think it's a really cool part of Willmet life right now. Now, I personally don't have a vested interest in, in the outcome tonight. My employees now make way more than the county's mandate. But I, I want you to, to opt out because I want you to think about the future of Willmet, especially its stores. Stores are the character of the town. The character of the town is not people who run businesses out of their attic in their house. Nobody cares about that. There's lots of empty spaces. You know, take some of your energy and, and do what I did. Build a store. Create jobs. It's really hard at the beginning, but the good news is you can pay your employees a very good salary later on.
You have a minute, Mr. Cook.
So... The, the comic book store across the street is going out of business next week. The PlaySpace across the street from there is going out of business next week. No new tenants are scheduled. To the opt-in crowd, I would say, build a business. Open a store. Show us how it's done.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No applauding, please. This isn't a football game. We're certainly not watching a World Cup game, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Herb Brenner, and I'm reading a letter from a Willmet business owner tonight. Dear Willmet Trustees, my name is Nancy Zitlin, and I own Nancy Zitlin Integrative Holistic Health. I'm a small business owner and Willmet resident. I've been in business here in Willmet for eighteen years. I am writing today because I support the opt-in. I support raising minimum wage and giving paid sick leave. I am upset and disgusted that a few noisy business owners are making all business owners in our community look bad. The business owners I know in Willmet, including myself, support the opt-in. We are ready and willing to raise wages and offer paid sick leave. We support business and workers. I love being a Willmet business owner, and this embarrassing scene is disappointing. As a member of this community and business owner, I urge you to do what is right for business workers and public health by opting in. We must opt in. The Willmet Chamber is not the voice of most business owners in our community. Their voice is not my voice. Two-thirds of the community and almost all the business owners I know support the ordinance. As a longtime resident and business owner, I hope you join me in supporting our community. Thank you, Nancy Zitlin.
Thank you, sir.
Hello.
Welcome.
I have some antiquated handouts.
My name is Mike Boyer, a longtime resident of Willmet. Actually, I grew up here, and I'm going on my ninth year as a member of the zoning board of appeals. I consider Willmet my home, and if you know me, you know I care about Willmet. This minimum wage issue wasn't my issue. I, I admit that I'm one of those people that really wasn't paying attention, but a friend of mine told me about what was going on, so I started researching. On the surface, what the Willmet Justice Team was saying seemed reasonable, as their signs say, "Willmet voted for ten dollars," and the village board said no. I remember the advisory ballot question that was, that was asked, "Have you agreed if the state of Illinois should raise the minimum wage to ten dollars?" And I put those two things together, and I thought maybe the village board's got this thing wrong. After reading the Cook County ordinance a few times, I found the ordinance and the advisory question that the Willmet Justice Team refers to on their signs are totally different. The ordinance goes much farther than just the ten dollars, and that's misleading. Then one Saturday, we went to the farmer's market. We ran into a very nice person soliciting signatures for a petition to opt in. I listened to their pitch, and then I asked if they knew that the minimum wage would continue to increase based on CPI. The response was, "What's CPI?" So I responded, "The Consumer Price Index, that thing that measures changes in price of consumer goods and services." I told them that the minimum wage will be tied to CPI in perpetuity, and the surveyor didn't know. My point is this: if a person soliciting signatures for the Willmet Justice Team to opt in didn't even know how the ordinance works or what the index is, how can this be a valid petition? This is misleading to the public. Even the marketing materials that were handed out by the Willmet Justice Team are misleading, and you have a copy of those. So number one, the headline says, "Willmet voted for better pay for working families." The village board voted to eliminate the increase. That's not accurate. The advisory question asks about a ten-dollar state-level minimum wage, not the ordinance. Number two, Cook County passed new laws raising the minimum wage to ten dollars.
You have one minute, Mr. Boyer.
That's not accurate. The ordinance goes to thirteen dollars with annual increases based on CPI in perpetuity. This is a major omission of fact by the Willmet Justice Team. And number three, without explaining the ordinance, the language lets the reader infer that the village board voted against what Willmet supports. The Willmet Justice Team is misleading and vilifies the board here. Nearly four, and then number four, nearly three-quarters of Willmet voters supported the earned sick leave and ten-dollar minimum wage referendum. This is misleading. Willmet never voted on a referendum. It was an advisory question. The Willmet never voted on the Cook County ordinance, and that's a major omission of fact by the Willmet Justice Team. And finally, the phone survey never asked about the minimum wage ordinance being tied to CPI in perpetuity. So the Willmet Justice Team surveyor didn't understand the ordinance, couldn't accurately explain it, and, and the Willmet Justice Team marketing materials are misleading. I don't see how their surveys could be considered valid, or how this type of politics has a place in this village. The village board got a write in June, and you can be a for, you can be for minimum wage, but against the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Don't do it. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Eve Subrin Williams. I've lived in Willmet for more than twenty-one years. I served two terms on the Youth Commission when it existed, and I know all of you are making a huge time commitment. Thank you very much. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to opt into the Cook County minimum wage and sick leave ordinance. I'm a very strong supporter of Willmet businesses. I shop and eat local often and use Willmet service businesses whenever I can. Most of the Willmet merchants know me, and I'm very grateful for their contribution to our community. Before I had children, I practiced management labor and employment law so that I counseled employers. In college, my major was labor relations. These issues that arise tonight are important to me, and they're ones I've considered many times. What I've learned from my experience is that throughout history, employers have resisted increasing wages and benefits for employees. Throughout history, employees have had to fight for increases. Really, I can't remember any instance when employers volunteered to pay more or to offer more benefits. This makes sense to me, and it should be understandable. However, however, there are countervailing interests that must be balanced. It's the government and community's responsibility to see when things are out of whack and need to be adjusted. Businesses' interest in making money needs to be balanced against employees' interest in making a decent wage. Right now, the minimum wage is too low and needs to be increased. Seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty pre-tax dollars is not enough to live on, especially in the Chicagoland area. I made almost that much working at People's Drugstore when I was about sixteen years old. Employees need sick leave, paid sick leave, so that we don't get sick, so that they can stay home to care for a child, and so that they don't go to work and get sicker, which costs us all more through insurance. This is common sense to me.
You have one minute.
Throughout history, employers have, employers have opposed wage increases, and throughout history, employers have been successful even after increases in wages and benefits. As the working group report has shown, raising the minimum wage will not negatively impact our local business. I suggest we come together as a community to support the village opting in, and then work together to show gratitude for our Willmet businesses by shopping, eating, and using their services even more after the ordinance goes into effect. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lori Goldstein, and I live on Prairie Avenue in Willmet. And my neighbor who went before me, Eve Williams, pretty much said everything I was gonna say. So I'm just gonna share the last statement, which is just to make sure that our Willmet workers have the access to paid sick leave that many of our outstanding businesses already offer. It's the kind of thing a healthy and caring community does. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also make sure that the village board doesn't applaud when anyone is very concise in their remarks. The village board also is not allowed to applaud, but thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi. I wanted to thank you for your time. I know this issue has been drawn out, and you've all spent a lot of time on it. I appreciate it as a citizen. I'm a Willmet resident, and I live on Beachwood.
Your name, ma'am?
Julie Lipford.
Thank you.
Okay. First, I just wanna make a few points that these increases are overdue, and that's an issue that I don't think anybody- are overdue and that's an issue that I don't think anybody has touched on tonight. It's also not a living wage and your working report shows that data very clearly. I hear a lot of misconceptions that this isn't for people with children and people with families and people paying mortgages and paying for transportation and these wages do go toward those people and again, your working report shows that very clearly. And one of the misunderstandings I've also heard is the Consumer Price Index. There's a lot of fear about that index. I looked up the last twenty years of that index and it has ranged from negative point four percent, that's zero, zero point, or zero, zero four, or point zero, zero four, to three point eight percent, which again is point zero, three, eight. So we can all get our numbers. So we're a little bit afraid, but we're talking dimes and pennies and we're talking people living below poverty standards today with our businesses. And I really believe in our businesses. I believe that the benefits outweigh the costs of this ordinance. And one of the things about businesses is they're set up to really be profit-seeking, be competitive and have competitive behavior and create value. And they're really, we would all create our businesses to benefit society. And I think what we're kind of inching towards exploitative behaviors when we are not paying a minimum that is proposed. So I urge you all to opt-in.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, Senator Biss.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Daniel Biss. For these last eight years, I've had the honor of representing the people of Willmet in the Illinois General Assembly and I want to thank you for your partnership and our shared effort to support our shared constituents. I think this is a really beautiful process that we're hearing tonight. I think it's a critical piece of democracy and I think we can also acknowledge that most people speaking tonight probably would support a minimum wage increase in sick leave ordinance anytime or oppose it anytime. And maybe there are people on this board who also take that position, but I want to speak to people on this board who might be undecided, who might be on the fence, depending on the particulars of this ordinance in this situation. Because I think we find ourselves in a pretty unusual situation. The benefits of an ordinance like this are supposed to be to allow people the bottom of the income spectrum to have a little bit more money in their pockets. This is not a normal economic moment. This is a time when it is harder than ever for more and more full-time workers to participate in the middle-class life. That's why now is an unusually good time to pass ordinances like the ones before you this evening. On the flip side, the arguments against it, good faith arguments that we can all understand and respect, I think we need to think about how strong they appear in this moment. Because let's think about what the argument against this ordinance is. The arguments are, it might be an imposition on a business that might leave Willmet or otherwise not find success. And at the same time, the other side of that economic argument is, hey, you put more money in people's pockets, you enhance the image of the village and more people will come here and the economy will improve. In a time like this that so many people are struggling to get by, the economic benefits of ordinances like these are uniquely strong and that's exactly, exactly what the extremely comprehensive product of the working group demonstrates. Something that I found uniquely persuasive among the documents like it that I've read, period. It's showing that this is exactly the time when the benefits of such ordinances are uniquely strong and the drawbacks are uniquely weak. That's why this is a good moment to pass ordinances like these. And finally, I know there are people who say perhaps the county isn't the right place, perhaps the state is the right place. Yes, I support something like this in principle, but let somebody else do it. This is the one issue that I'm probably really qualified to speak about. If you want the state to do something like this, you have to vote yes tonight. The way to stop action like this in its tracks in Springfield is when a community like Willmet, a prosperous and affluent and relatively progressive community, opts out. Sending a signal to Springfield, hold on, even a place like Willmet doesn't want increases in the minimum wage and paid sick time. And so if you're here saying, listen, I'm just against this stuff, period, yeah, for sure, vote no. But if you're saying, I like the idea, but I'm not sure. This is the time, I'm not sure this is the place. Let me tell you as a state legislator, if you think the state is the place, then tonight is the night to vote yes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lena Bander. I'm a Willmet resident and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, who has a small pizza place here. And it's very hard for me to speak. I didn't want to school, I didn't go to school here because we came here, we escaped from Soviet Union twenty years ago and I worked two jobs. I babysat, I cleaned houses. I still work two jobs helping my husband and some of you might have seen me at your doorsteps with pizza because it's what we do, we work twenty-four seven. But we believe that when you come to this country, if you dream big and work hard, you can achieve anything. There is no limit. And that's why we came here. And I just, it's a very emotional issue for me, so forgive me. I have to read because I can't. So many people living here have no idea how hard it is to succeed in other countries where there is no, where entrepreneurship and free markets and freedom of speech are not even permitted. My husband and I know this firsthand, having lived in socialist Soviet Union. All minimum wages were set by the government for each trade. It made no difference how hard or smart you worked or barely did anything. All pay was equal and guaranteed. There was a documentary movie based on a true story about a miracle factory worker who tried to increase his productions by inventing small improvements for his workstation. His inventions cut production time and he was able to produce ten times more parts than his coworkers. It created a big issue.
You have one minute.
There were no extra money to pay him. So what to do? He was expelled from Communist Party and fired from his factory. We all know well how it ended up for Soviet Union, Eastern Europe, Venezuela, and what was the difference between East and Western Germany, South and North Korea? When there is no competition, no free markets, no incentive to do better, there is no way to grow.
You have half a minute.
And I think it's such a wrong idea and I want to say we have no interest because we do pay more than minimum wages, but it is the wrong idea to make someone to do whatever is not right for his business. Not, it's not, let's, small businesses regulate what they have to do, how to survive. Because I am afraid next idea would be go after landlords here in Willmet and decide they make too much money. They charge too much for square feet. Let's just put a cap on it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, I'm reading on behalf of Chris Trittitz tonight. I just wanted to thank the village trustees and village-
Can we get your name, though, still?
Courtney Lewis.
Okay.
I wanted to start by thanking the village trustees and village president for their tireless contributions to the public service for the benefit of Willmet and its residents. Your role is to be the protectors of this community against any and all who would be there to influence or harm the community. Many have worked so hard to maintain for decades and even generations Willmet, which is why it is so beloved. Everything, including all of the drama, the false ideology, the hatefulness, the politics, the emotion, the tricks, the lies are all distracting noise to confuse you from your only goal, to maintain and improve Willmet for the benefit of its current and future residents. The issue of vote in this debate is a bit of deja vu. It all started last year with Cook County creating two overreaching and abusive mandates. The outcome could only be described as punishment to small businesses who actually take the risk, create jobs and pay sales tax to benefit the community and residents they serve. The two ordinance were so unrealistic, on October 25th, 2016, Cook County State asked, or Cook County asked Illinois State Attorney their advice on the legality of both ordinance. Question, as home rule government, does Cook County have legal authority to create living minimum wage in the state of Illinois or enact paid sick leave mandate for private employers in the unincorporated and incorporated areas of Cook County? Answer, our legal conclusion is that Cook County lacks the home rule authority to enact minimum wage or a paid leave mandate for employees, whether county-wide or within unincorporated Cook County. While this decision sounds like a mere general guidance, it is more conclusive than that. In 1988, there is a case from Highland Park, Illinois that has some very similar fact patterns. The Illinois Supreme Court opinion established, opinionated, establishing minimum-
You have one minute.
...requirements to improve working conditions has traditionally been a manner of the state concern outside of local officials to contradict and it remains so today. The Illinois Supreme Court characterized the local legislation as an attempt to intervene in the workplace. So what does this all mean? The highest court in the land has ruled both ordinance are invalid. The state attorney has told Cook County both ordinance are invalid. Willmet attorney has similarly agreed that both these ordinance are invalid. Since they are invalid, they are enforceable.
You have thirty seconds.
The state has decided these issues, not Cook County and not Willmet. The Willmet Board had it correct last year to let the state decide the issue. Over eighty-two percent of the communities in Cook County are opting out of these overreaching and invalid ordinances. So why would we disadvantage and punish local businesses? The rule of law has spoken and confirmed they are invalid. The list goes on and on of why these two ordinance are illogical, reckless and damaging to our small business owners and ultimately our community. You can be for a living wage, but you can be against these two ordinances.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Julie Trittitz and I live at 6197th Street. I've lived in Willmet for about twelve years and I own two businesses, one in Kennelworth and one in Chicago. I feel the impact of minimum wage hikes and additional costs. As a result, I can't add additional employees. I'm an eye doctor, so part of my business is professional and some is retail, so I can speak on both perspectives. We heard on May 15th from a service provider that business owners should just figure it out. When you're a service provider and reimbursed by insurance company, you might think so, but if you're a retail operator, it's hard to just figure it out. It shows a lack of understanding of running a business. It's easy to figure out a service side, which in my case is eye exams, but it's difficult to figure out a retail side. That's how many, how much people will spend in your store by products. This is an ongoing challenge for small retailers and restaurants. Small retailers like me are also under pressures on online and large chains. I took a huge risk when I started my business. I didn't take a paycheck for five years and I worked twelve hours weekends and holidays. When I give a pay increase, I have to pay, I have to match my employees' taxes, budget for payroll and balance my business challenges. I've taken out loans to cover expenses, rents, goods, insurances, taxes and I'm the last to get paid if I get paid at all. I was fortunate to have a husband that could attend to the family's financial needs when I started my business and when it grew. I love offering entry-level jobs because I get to teach people job skills and responsibilities. I build relationships with my employees. I watch my employees develop into bigger part of businesses with bigger skills and therefore earning higher pay. Every small business owner would love to pay high wages to all their employees, but knowing basic economics, that's not plausible. Willmet is made up of many small businesses and most have thin margins. They can't afford to pay all of their, all of their workers high wages and sick leave right off the bat with future increases. This will result in less hiring and more firing of employees. Growth will slow, costs will increase and consumers will be lost. Residents with fixed incomes can't afford the increases-
You have one minute.
-and others with money, others' money could go to neighboring Glenview to Costco and Target. Even if they say they'll pay more, some might, but most won't. You can see that there's vacant stores in Willmet. If you reverse your decision, I fear more Willmet businesses may close their doors and new businesses will locate in business-friendly towns like Glenview. There's a reason that eighty percent of the local government has opted out. I feel like market rate, I feel like letting market rate dictate salaries and not making a mandate is a better solution for Willmet.
Thank you, ma'am. Just if you see, we've got a village worker here. We're trying to get the temperature down a little bit here, so apologize for that distraction, but welcome, sir.
Good evening, William Brewster. I'm feeling particularly hot right now. So anyway, I've been here for a year. Thank you for letting me in the community. You know, my heart obviously wants a living wage. I mean, that's like the emotional issue. It's, there's no, everyone should get paid more in theory, right? The problem that I see is Starbucks is going to be able to absorb these cost increases much easier than a local coffee shop will. And as a millennial that recently relocated, part of what we chose, you know, was a town that was walkable, that had local businesses, that had a feel. And, you know, I guess that there's one way to look at it, like, oh, these business arguments are just kind of, you know, corporations saying whatever. But if you think that there's merit in the argument, if we were to lose the small businesses of this town, I think the future migration of millennials could be significantly hurt and that's going to hurt property values. And I think we have an obvious geographic advantage. I love the culture here. I think, you know, I drink the Kool-Aid of Willmet, but I am fearful of what this may do to the local businesses. So thank you all for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
I'm John Belgian. We own a small business in the Village Center. We've been here for nine years, employ fifteen people, eleven of which are paid minimum wage. Before owning this small business, I worked in corporate America for twenty-five years within Fortune 500 companies. If I was still in corporate life, which by the way was much easier and less risky than what I'm doing now, I would, I would think that raising the minimum wage would be no big deal. Would have little impact on the businesses and would help low-wage earners. I'm here to tell you that's absolutely false. My business will be severely impacted and many other businesses I've spoken or listened to over this issue will be impacted negatively as well. There are twenty-eight other Willmet businesses that I'm aware of that want the board to rightly do what they did the first time around and opt-out. Our annual payroll for our employees that are paid a twenty-five an hour is three hundred thousand yearly. At eleven dollars per hour, that will add another hundred thousand dollars to my payroll. At thirteen dollars an hour, that would be a hundred and eighty thousand more in payroll per year than we're currently paying. Additionally, all our employees who make more than the current minimum wage will expect an increase to the increased amount. That's another nearly three dollars more per hour now and five dollars more per hour in 2020. Tip-based employees will expect the same. I think Willmet residents are sincere when they say they're willing to pay higher prices. In reality, when people are faced with significantly higher prices, the purchase frequencies go down and alternatives will come into play when they can get the service or product in nearby communities for less or can purchase it online. Minimum wages was not intended to be a living wage. It's an entry-level job wage. Yes, my business model will unfortunately need to be changed. Twenty-two percent prices right away just to cover the added payroll expense. We expect our sales volume to drop by at least thirty percent, maybe as high as fifty percent due to the higher prices. Higher prices will produce lower volume, so we won't need as many employees and will likely lay off at least four to six people. Beyond this, we will need to further explore automation solutions to cut more jobs, reduce the amount of full-time jobs to part-time jobs and eliminate overtime bonus pay for employees. This is not helping entry-level employees and business owners. Lastly, besides our Womack customers, we currently draw a considerable amount of customers from Evanston, Glenview, Kennelworth, Weneka, and Glencoe. These customers will often end up shopping and dining in Womack after visiting our place. Having less customers from these areas will have a negative ripple effect on other businesses in Womack. Please, please opt out. You had it right the first time, thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi.
You're definitely going to have to lean into the mic a little bit.
My name is Jim Lyman, I live at six thirty Eighth Street. It doesn't seem to me that the working group has set forth any compelling reasons why we should adopt these rules, nor does it seem to me that there is a local consensus to adopt them. Some agree, some don't, as evidenced by the, what's going on tonight. But even if one believes there is an expert consensus that these mandates are good and that there is a local consensus to adopt them, the question remains whether it is appropriate for the village board to do so. At their core, such mandates amount to a forced taking of property from businesses and their customers and redistribution of that property to others deemed to be more worthy. Such redistribution may sound good to some when discussed in a college economics class or when considering federal or state legislation, but to me, it's an unacceptable use of our village's power. The village already taxes and regulates us, to be sure, but providing for streets and law enforcement and building codes is very different from forced income redistribution. One must also ask whether it is appropriate to target a particular segment of our local community in this manner. Said another, said another way, can each of us look Womack business owners in the eye and say, I know some of you say you can't afford these benefits, but we know better and we're going to use the power of our local government to force you to provide them? Enacting such mandates isn't an abstract resist exercise. Those from whom we would take property are hardworking, valuable members of this community and in many cases are friends and neighbors, not faceless corporate executives. We are targeting them and personally, I am extremely uncomfortable doing that. There are all sorts of ostensibly compassionate reasons for these kinds of regulations.
You have one minute.
But let's all recognize that there is a dark side to them as well. This issue is about Womack residents recognizing the limits of our wisdom to pass judgment on each other and limiting the use of our government's power to exert authority over each other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening. My name is Eric Lundberg, I live at eight thirty-three Greenwood Avenue and I've lived in Womack for fourteen years and as a resident, I attended the last public hearing to learn more about this ordinance. During the hearing, I heard a lot of different points and wanted to get clarity, so I did my own research, including reading the official ordinance, social posts, independent websites, and discussing the topic amongst neighbors. And after all that, I was still confused, specifically the inconsistency of what seemed to be the ordinance and what was being marketed to Womack residents. A few examples, did seventy-four percent of Womack residents knowingly vote for this ordinance without giving any specific information? Or were they asked a simple question if they supported increasing minimum wage? Are the yard signs saying the village actually said no to ten dollars? Or did the village oppose thirteen dollars an hour plus up to two and a half percent increase every year forever regardless of the market conditions? Has a majority actually opted into the ordinance or did eighty-two percent of the Cook County villages opt out? I am sure I'm not the only one who's confused. So what I did, I tried to simplify the issue. I concluded one fundamental point, I am not qualified. What I mean by that is I have no experience running a business. So how can I tell any size business owner what they should or should not do? And even if I had the experience, say, for example, owning a gas station, I still have no idea what it's like to run a pizza parlor, a pet store, a clothing store, any kind of business. They're all different, they're unique. Should I really be telling someone how to run their business if I lack the expertise of what it takes to own a business? Simple, I shouldn't. It fundamentally wouldn't be fair and it wouldn't be right to these business owners. So I'm asking the board to opt out of this ordinance because I fundamentally believe we should let business owners run their business. And if they want or can increase their employee wages, let them do so on their own terms. After all, it is their business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Julie Yousum. I'm the director of the Womack Kennelworth Chamber of Commerce and I'm going to limp up here and add something to Mike because I don't know who to give it to. But I was concerned that with the change of order, that some of the business people that came tonight would not be able to stay for the whole thing. So I did make a list of people who are in attendance, so you'll know, because I know there's been some speculation in the past about the businesses not showing up and so they don't care, but these are people that did show up tonight. I know that many business owners have reached out to you by phone and email and a substantial number were also present at the June twelfth meeting, and I want to thank those trustees who made time to speak personally with the business owners. I am here to present information garnered from our members regarding the current business climate in Womack, how they would be impacted by the Cook County ordinances, and why a majority of them want the village to opt out. Our members believe that the village board's decision to opt out in 2017 represented the most reasonable and mainstream action to be taken in this situation. The chamber represents two hundred and eighty-four businesses, two hundred and forty-nine of which are in Womack. According to Womack's Community Development Department, there are four hundred and sixty-four registered businesses in Womack excluding schools, churches, and home-based businesses. That means that the chamber represents over fifty-three percent of Womack's registered business community. The majority of these Womack members have storefronts or offices and represent retail, restaurant, and service businesses. Additionally, numerous non-member businesses have reached out to the chamber to express their support for opting out of these ordinances. The chamber asks the trustees to remember that the businesses are the primary group that stands to be impacted by your decision and that a majority of Womack businesses oppose both ordinances by a wide margin. Our members report that Womack's small business owners are currently...
You have one minute.
Huh?
You have one minute.
Okay. Stretched to the limits of profitability even in this good economy, online and out-of-town like Old Orchard Shopping have reduced revenue significantly and they already have narrower margins. Your business survey shows that a large number, even a majority of Womack businesses are already very generous when it comes to compensating their full and part-time employees in both salary and paid time off. Businesses know the value of hard-working employees and our local businesses have demonstrated that they reward loyalty and hard work with better pay and benefits. Womack residents are like all consumers, they're not going to sustain vast price increases and continue their loyalty to Womack. It's also inaccurate to characterize any small business, even those in wealthy suburbs, as businesses with money to burn. In conclusion, when I read this in the office, it was under three minutes, but I ask you to remember that, that the businesses are the primary group that stands to be negatively affected by your decision and a majority of them oppose. Thank you. Please opt out.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Anne Stevens and I live in Womack. I want to thank the working group and the board for creating a study which I hope is a resource for other communities studying the potential impacts of the ordinance on suburban communities. Whichever way the vote goes tonight, I feel I better understand the issues facing small businesses and low-wage earners in Womack and I imagine many in the community share this experience. I do have a concern I'd like to address before this issue is concluded. I'd like to remind the board and the community about the president's letter written about this issue in the, in the October-January twenty-seven eighteen Village Communicator. I feel quite strongly that the president's issue a retraction or clarification for that letter for its strong political tone. I've lived in Womack for nine years and I actually read every communicator cover to cover, which makes me one of your biggest fans and a huge nerd. The president's letters are chock-full of details about issues facing the village and I'm used to a measured informational tone in that publication. In the letter I'm referencing, which you can read on the village website, the village president leads his letter with the minimum wage about the opt-out with a section titled, quote, "Boycott Businesses," close quote. And it says, I'm not going to read the whole thing because I won't have time, "I have to say that I'm truly saddened by the behavior of a small number of individuals who disagreed with the village board's decision." He goes on to suggest that there's retaliation, threats, and harassment to local businesses, and an attempt to chill free speech and harm local businesses, which is very disturbing in Womack. Now, as a regular reader, this paragraph left me with a lot of questions. First of all, when I read it, I had no idea what you were talking about and I was concerned because I wanted to continue advocating for a living wage. Why are you calling out a small number of individuals to your whole village audience? Are you calling me out? What do you mean retaliation? These claims seem strongly worded and lacked any background context. They also set a biased tone for the remainder of the letter, which is an explanation of how the village arrived at its opt-out decision. It made me deeply uncomfortable that you would use a village-wide publication to make this kind of strong interpretation of the discussions happening in the community following the opt-out without context. Regardless of how you feel about the minimum wage issue, editorializing like this to shame and confuse Womack citizens is an inappropriate use of this forum. Thanks to all of you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Well, Ashley Katz, Womack resident for, I don't even know, thirteen, fourteen years now. I'm sorry to follow that because I actually read the same piece and I'm outliving here now, but I remember reading it and thinking, wow, I'm glad I'm getting educated about this issue and I can take some action. Over fifteen years of professional experience as a retail analyst, here are the facts, not twisted or slanted facts as these hearings have been rife with. Consumers choose where to shop. This choice is informed by convenience and economics. For convenience sakes, store visits are grouped into shopping trips. Needs are commingled, so the retail destination that addresses more of their needs generally wins out. A commingled trip might include going to Lad and Lassie for bathing suits followed by lunch at Trendy Taco. If Lad and Lassie wasn't in downtown Womack, the same shopper would likely go to Dick's and eat at the Yard House and then before heading back to their west Womack home, stop at the Glenview Jewel to pick up a few staples. No need to drive all the way to Jewel on Green Bay Road after all. As you can see, if Lad and Lassie were forced to close, this would have a ripple effect on other stores in Womack, especially as Womack is already as far east on the grid as one can go. People also choose where to shop based on personal economics. Even families many here tonight say can afford to pay more, choose not to. I am happy not to still be driving to Lake County for soda. Yes, my family has two incomes which combined exceed the two hundred thousand dollar figure many here tonight deem as affluent. Able to pay more, I could have paid the soda tax but adamantly chose not to. Why? Because my income doesn't account for my expenditures, excessive and rising property taxes, retirement savings, and sending three kids to college. Retailers also have choices. Where to locate and if it makes, makes sense to risk running and investing in a small business. Fact, retail margins stink. A full-service restaurant may retain six percent of revenue, a small coffee shop may be two percent. Therefore, the uniformly applied ordinance you are choosing to either support or reject would not impact all retailers equally. Normally, labor costs are a variable expense. You staff to demand to a large extent. In this case, it is fixed. Each hour now costs more. For comparison, Lawrence Dean's may have twenty customers a day with an average check of six dollars and a two percent profit margin. Valley Lodge may be a hundred and twenty customers a day and an average check of eighty-five dollars and a six percent margin. But if you opt in, now both businesses will have additionally and roughly similar fixed costs to absorb and passing through that cost to consumers will be harder for the coffee shop. You see, a consumer may not care or notice an increase that is shared by a hundred and twenty customers and levy down an eighty-five dollar bill, but I sure will on a cup of coffee. How shoppers make, making rational choices and retailers differing ability to absorb an opt-in vote would combine is, in practice, is unpredictable. Therefore, the risk of opting in is too high. Can we risk the likely domino effect of stores falling at first, the small and eventually the ones strong? Ones certainly exist if you trust, as, one sentence, as you trust, if you as trustees choose to opt in, Glenview and Northbrook's decision to opt out will quickly be likened to those towns winning the lottery.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Tracy Kearney, member of Womack Kennelworth Chamber of Commerce. I was able to review the meeting notes, calendar previously on the screen, including the working group's report. Thank you for making those materials so accessible and easy to access. Upon review again, I found a major point of reference in this debate to be flawed evidence. As with the incorrect inferences made via the opt-in proponents to the strong support for the advisory questions placed on the two thousand fourteen and sixteen Illinois November ballots, asking if the minimum wage should be raised by ten dollars an hour statewide and if paid sick leave should be considered for all employees, in the context of qualifying support for the Cook County ordinances being considered today, I found the phone survey to fall short on transparency as well. Specifically, question three, as to how much news have you heard, read, or seen about a minimum wage ordinance that Cook County has adopted which raised the minimum wage so it will gradually go up to thirteen dollars per hour by the year 2020? What's missing from this question? And then by the rate of inflation, or two and a half percent year-over-year thereafter in perpetuity, in other words, increase typically a business's largest expense, employees, by fifty-eight percent in two years by 2018 and only in Womack and the minority eighteen percent of our other peer villages in Cook County? Question four, referenced four categories of employee exemptions to the minimum wage ordinance and then asked in general, do you think that the village of Womack should or should not follow the Cook County minimum wage ordinance? What's missing from this question? The mention that government bodies and collective bargaining units are exempt from the ordinance. Why provide several in such detail and leave out the obvious, government bodies and unions? Question number five, how much news and information have you heard, read, or seen about a new paid sick leave ordinance that Cook County has adopted which requires businesses provide most employees up to forty hours of paid sick leave each year? What's missing from this one? Including part-time employees who work as little as ninety hours per year.
You have one minute.
Question seven, you get the gist. I'll do question seven, too. Were you, were you aware that the Womack Village Board voted to exempt local businesses from Cook County's minimum wage and sick paid leave ordinances? And what's missing from this one? As did eighty-two percent of the other Cook, of our other peer villages throughout Cook County. In sum, five of the ten questions asked, fifty percent failed to present the full context or comprehensive detail to the interview, hence the identified flaw. The answers, take away the false statements, seventy percent and seventy-four percent in two thousand fourteen and sixteen respectively, of Womack residents voted for these ordinances as they did not, as they were never asked. Dismiss the proponents of opting in petition that headlines, "Sign our petition, ten an hour for working families," as best shot with these ordinances mandate. And reference the subjectivity, subjectivity of the survey and you're left without any new information since your vote a year ago. Furthermore, nothing in either of these ordinances aims to remedy the disease, poverty. At best, they shift the burden of cut...
Your time is expired, Ms. Kearney.
Anyway, I encourage you to opt out. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Rick Suter. I live at three ten Central Park.
Sir, you're going to have, yeah, you may want to pull that microphone up because I think, there you go.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, I live at three ten Central Park and I've been a Womack resident for twenty-five years or so. Last winter, I worked as a volunteer preparing tax returns for low-income individuals and families. And the thing that struck me about that work was how little so many of these people had and how much a little increase in what they were making would mean to them. For that reason, I really want to encourage the board to opt in to the ordinances again. Apart from that, I think Senator Biss said most of what I had to say, so I think I'll stop there.
Well, thank you, sir, for your conciseness. Welcome.
Hi, Tom Sparks, nine three one Westerfield. I'm a five-year resident of Womack and a twenty-six-year resident of Glencoe. I just want to thank you guys for all the time you're putting in. Eleven-thirty, I'm usually in about my third round of REM sleep by then, so I appreciate what you're doing. I'll just read this real quick, prepared statement. Anyone know a good tradesman? I actually do need a roofer, but I called an old friend and a neighbor, actually a former neighbor. He was forced out because he couldn't afford the North Shore anymore, mostly taxes, but also because everything is more expensive around here. For many wealthy residents, this isn't a problem. For the working class or the retired, it is. When I first moved to Womack five years ago, I met an older woman in line at the post office. She was very upset because after thirty years here, she and her husband were being forced out. They couldn't afford it anymore. She was in tears. There is no doubt that a higher minimum wage will mean higher prices for businesses that can and must pass along the costs and more marginal current residents will be forced out. There may be three, there may be fifty-three, and there may be a hundred and three, but you will force out more residents if you raise the minimum wage. The minimum wage is like drift net fishing. It catches a lot of what it's intended to catch, for better or worse, but it also snares and kills things it shouldn't, like our Womack neighbors who can just barely afford to live here. Contrary to stereotypes being thrown about, we're not all wealthy. Every added cost drives out some part of the bottom decile of our community. Our tradespersons, our elderly, we all see it. Those who allow their homes to fall into disrepair because they don't have the money to both keep it up and live here, open your eyes, drive around, you'll see it.
You have one minute.
They extract equity from their homes in this way so that they can continue to live here and when they die or are finally forced out, their modest homes are torn down and replaced by McMansions. Why would we want to make their lives even harder by raising their cost of living even more? Additionally, with the likely reforming of how Cook County, Cook County real estate taxes are apportioned after the Chicago Tribune series...
You have thirty seconds.
...we can expect a significant tax hike here on the North Shore as an even greater share of the tax burden is shifted here. I urge you to think of the residents who comprise the bottom decile of our community and continue to opt out, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
At the last meeting, I read a letter and I want to re, give my own statement.
Yeah, that's fine. No, 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 look, at this point in time, I thank everyone who has sort of hung back and waited. I saw very few people in the first fifteen or twenty people that had spoken before. So if you, if you have spoken before, you should feel free to get in line now. Don't, don't be shy. So welcome, but thank you for, for your honesty there and expressing that.
Good evening. My name is Peter Sung Oor. I am a resident of Womack on Ninth Street with my family. I'd like to first of all, thank the board members, my deep appreciation for all of your work. I also like to express my gratitude for allowing this type of... I also like to express my gratitude for allowing this type of forum for people to express their viewpoints. I sincerely appreciate everyone's viewpoint on this difficult matter. And I'm not going to say the same thing that other folks have said, because I do support opting in to both provisions. But I would like to say, though, just on a on a personal note, opting in to both provisions, it benefits the it benefits the workers, but more importantly, it benefits society. It's it's a benefit to the society that we live in, in the broader sense. And to highlight that, what I would like to talk about is my own personal experience. I grew up in the city of Chicago, in Albany Park. I came to the States when I was a young child with my family. I'm an immigrant to this country. My parents worked minimum wage jobs throughout my life. If you look at the minimum wage that they earned back then compared to the minimum wage in today's dollars, that buying power was significantly larger, greater than it is now with the minimum wage. That is why, even though growing up, we did not have much, we lived in a one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment, depending on what years in we were living in Chicago, we had the availability to have housing, to have food, clothing. We were not wealthy.
One minute, Mr. O.
Thank you. But my parents could provide. They provided for their children to be able to get a college education, be professionals, and we hope as adults, we have provided that in return to the society, to the community that we reap so much from. Every day, every day, there is not a day that goes by where I am not so appreciative of the fact that I get to live in Womack. And I hope I am able to provide that back to the community, and by raising other people's ability to provide to their family, they too can do that for their own members of the community, and we will all improve the value of our society. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Barry Bennett. I live on Brookside, 30-year resident. I understand that there are people, as Mr. Bis said, who, for one side or another, they've already got their minds made up for philosophical or ideological reasons or whatever else. For those who, and there's nothing wrong with that, I don't assert that that that's improper or immoral or anything like it, but for those who have an open mind on it, I suggest to you that you really, you really need to vote in favor of opting in. Look at the study that you performed, that you had performed on your behalf. About 1,350 workers in Womack living at poverty wage, working at poverty wage levels, 250 of them are Womack residents, 78% were estimated to be supporting families. Okay, these are not kids who are exempt anyway. These are people supporting families. The study said the increase, of course, is going to ameliorate some some of that poverty level. It also said it would do so with no discernible impact on availability of work and with a negligible impact on business. And it said that based on peer-reviewed review studies and observations of what happened in neighboring communities and throughout Cook County. It also said that 2/3 of the residents of Womack supported opting in. Now, this is not a matter of a choice, what color of flowers you want planted on the Parkway or something. This is a matter of values. This is a matter of your community saying, we have certain values we want to held. Let me give you two numbers, 2.94 in 63.91. 63.91 is the shoreline of Cook County on Lake Michigan. 2.94 is Womack's portion of that. That 63.91 miles, with the exception of Womack's 2.94, is all bounded by communities that have accepted this increase in the minimum wage.
You have one minute.
And have taken some steps against poverty wages. I know a big chunk of that is Chicago, Big Bad Chicago. They're different than us. They're human beings, too. Okay, they're citizens also. They're not just bad people. But then you've got Evanston, okay, Stokely, they're a landlocked, they don't really count for this, but they they opted in. Come the north down, you've got Glencoe, you've got Winnetka, and you've got Kennelworth. Kennelworth!
You have 30 seconds.
Kennelworth is in. And we're not, we're, this is our, these are our values. So I hope you come out with an open mind, and from that, I hope you'll opt in. But I also hope you'll come out this with an open heart. Have an open heart for these people to whom a couple of bucks an hour will change their lives and the lives of their families. A couple bucks an hour is going to buy some groceries, going to buy a pair of shoes, maybe, going to maybe give them the ability to work a couple few hours a week and come home at night and read the kids a book, or maybe buy a book for their kids.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Simon Lesser. I'm I live on Old Glenview Road in Womack. Been a resident for about 30 years. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for your leadership and service to the community. It's it says a lot in the the work of your predecessors in making Womack such a marvelous place to live, and I really feel that. It's a tremendous place. I overheard comments coming in. A lady was saying that she always tips very generously, and that's a thing to do. I commend that person for their generosity. However, not everyone, as we know, is as generous when they're tipping, as generous with their good thoughts for good service in the community. I was a busboy when I first came to America, many years ago, but I was not paid well. It was difficult to make a living, let's say. It's even harder now. I'd been unlucky lucky enough to get a good education and get a good job, but not everyone is. I would just like to say, I would like the trustees here to dig deep into their conscience, to do what's right for the community, and to continue to make Womack a tremendous place to live. I urge you to vote to opt in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Liz Bennett. I also live on Brookside Drive, like the other gentlemen. I listened very carefully today to try to hear both sides of the story. Although I'm not a business owner in Womack, I do, I am the finance director of a nonprofit, so I know what it's like to essentially run a business, and wages are the very largest part of our budget, as it is most, most places. Two arguments I heard tonight were less government. It's just I have to, we have to agree to disagree. I just, that's just not the way I come down on that one. The second one is small businesses can't make a living. I want small businesses in Womack to to make a living, and I think if we opt in, we should, we really should do what everyone here has talked about, about encouraging people to do it. But we can't do it on the backs of people who aren't making a living wage. The disparity between the rich and the poor has gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, and if not now when, like Senator Bis said. If we don't do it in Womack, in this community, who's going to do it for those people not making a living wage? So I encourage you to opt in.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Beth Theley, resident of Womack, and I have just a few comments. This type of one-size-fits-all mandate that Cook County put forward, they are rarely a good idea. Not all businesses will weather this mandate in the same way. The small Womack businesses who will be truly caught in the crosshairs of this mandate employ workers in competitive or price-sensitive businesses like restaurants and retails, some of whom you've heard from tonight. But many of these businesses also fear speaking up publicly for fear of reprisals. Because when someone shows up at your business saying, I'm from the Womack Justice Team, and I want to know whether you support raising the minimum wage, and I'm creating an honor roll for those who publicly opt in, this amounts to intimidation. It's also deceptive to have a business represent itself as a Womack business who supports the mandate but doesn't have any employees, as is the case with some of the businesses who spoke in support of opting in a couple weeks ago. This mandate won't affect them. My hope is that you've heard the perspectives of the business owners who will bear the consequences of your decision, and I know that many of you have devoted a lot of time and energy to doing so these past weeks, and so I thank you for doing that. So I looked up the term justice and just out of curiosity to see what the internet said, and I found a definition this. The quality of being fair and just, moral soundness, and conformity to truth. Between the misleading wording in its petition, the threats its members made to businesses last year, and more recently outright lies told by invasive text messages, the Womack Justice Team's ends justify the means approach seems more like injustice to me than justice. Please consider the real-world stories and perspectives of small Womack business owners who are our local job creators, and many of whom have run businesses in Womack for years, and please opt out of the Cook County mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Whoa. Hi, my name is Gary Glenn, and I've been a Womack resident for over 27 years, and I'm also a small business owner. I urge the board to continue to opt out of this anti-business ordinance brought to us by those wonderful folks who gave us the beverage tax, and we know how well that worked out. And the beverage tax had some consequences that really weren't publicized that I saw with clients, like people went to Lake County and other counties to buy. But one of the other things was soft drink sales in quick-service restaurants went down because people weren't going to pay a 37, 30% tax on that. So it had consequences. The ordinance will do the same for entry-level jobs in Womack. They're entry-level jobs. This is what the minimum wage was intended for. College students, high school students, people that depend on these jobs, they're going to go away, and you've heard people talking about it tonight. And I was going to talk about the benchmarking, but somebody else did it very eloquently with real numbers. It's not just the minimum wage. You have to raise everybody else's wage after that. And as a small business owner who has gone two months without taking a salary while working 12 hours a day, I can tell you that when the expenses go up, the suffering goes down. One of the things that I would worry about is just four miles west of here, in Glenview, they opted out, and it's not that hard to move the business there. So can we afford that? Can we afford to lose businesses that can just go four miles? Now, the other thing we've heard is that consumers have said, well, I'll support the businesses if they raise their their rates to compensate for this. Well, survey has shown time after time that that doesn't happen. It might happen in the short time, but again, we heard the retail consultant say, consumers will go by economics where the prices are lower.
You have one minute.
So we'll lose sales in that sense. When I worked on the B-Dag, our mission was to make Womack a business-friendly town. We succeeded by eliminating many of the anti-business ordinances that were keeping businesses away. Don't be the board of trustees that reverses that trend and returns Womack back to the old days when businesses would avoid this town like the plague, and it was like that.
30 seconds.
Be the board of trustees that keeps Womack vibrant, growing, and business-friendly. Make the right decision. Be business-friendly and opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Can I, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're definitely going to have to speak up a touch.
Okay, I'm sorry. Maybe if I lean in a little bit.
Much better.
I'm not tall, but I can pretend to be. My name is Gina Kennedy. I'm a 32-year resident of Kennelworth Gardens. Yes. Over the past six months, I've attended working group and village board meetings and read thousands of pages of material, including correspondence from business owners and residents. I now know that what people think should be done tonight, and in many cases, I know what they took into account in reaching their decision and what they thought was most important in their thinking. But I have no idea what you in front of me, who will be making the decision tonight, have been thinking about, may still have questions about, and what is most important to you. Like everyone else, I just have to read the tea leaves. Some tea leaf readers have predicted that a majority of the board is likely to vote against adopting the Cook County ordinances on the grounds that it would be beyond the legal authority of Cook County in Womack. I hope they are mistaken. First, because I, like many others, disagree with the conclusion reached in those legal opinions, and second, because such a decision would reflect badly on the board's process. Three of the opinions in the packet were written 20 to 23 months ago, another was written 12 months ago. While there have been two more recent opinions from Corporation Council, these merely confirm the original position and add nothing new to the analysis. Thus, any decision tonight based on the legal opinions could and should have been made many months ago. If the board did not believe that it had authority to opt in, then it should not have convened the working group, which did an exemplary job. Some of its members devoted hundreds of hours to reading and sorting through data, studies, testimony, survey results, and other information. They listened to public comment. They spent many more hours writing a thoughtful and well-organized readable report. Community members and representative businesses and employees also participated in those hearings. I hope that work was for not for nothing. It should not also have commissioned and paid for a professionally conducted survey of village residents if it were going to make a decision tonight based on the legal opinions. People don't like being asked questions and an opinion of their opinion only to be later told that it doesn't matter. It should not have put in these business, those in the business community who are opposed to opting in through the uncertainty and anxiety of the past six months. While I believe their fears are unfounded, I know that they are genuinely held. It should not have introduced the ordinances to be voted on this evening if it didn't think it had the legal authority.
You have 30 seconds.
Many village residents have attended board meetings, written emails, letters, prepared and delivered public comments, all in the belief that their efforts mattered and that opting in was a possibility. If the board does not believe they have authority to opt in, then their time and yours has been wasted, and some are likely to leave tonight disillusioned and cynical. Good government should not waste the time and squander the efforts of its most conscientious and well-intended citizens. So I sincerely hope the tea leaf readers are mistaken and that this is not how the evening ends. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Hi, I'm John Powers, live in Womack. I want to shift gears for one second. I wanted to thank the Village of Womack. We had a tree fall on our house. They did an efficient and very good job on cleaning up that tree during a thunderstorm. It was very much appreciated by our family. Now, back to minimum wage. Like many people living here in Womack, I've lived and worked in the city of Chicago and Evanston before moving to Womack. Number one reason I moved to Womack was to avoid the aggressive overreach of government, which has plagued Chicago for generations, now is on the verge of bankrupting Evanston. I've been responsible for the hiring of thousands of employees over the last 20 years. I just looked it up when I wrote this, and no one gets paid anything close to the minimum wage. The starting salary is $37,000 a year. We were able to do this without once referring to the Cook County Board, never had to refer to them once. Cook County Government's a financial and operational disaster. The county's $140 billion in debt. That's $27,000 for every man, woman, and child in the county. The county board has not established much credibility as business operators and advisors. I'm perfectly capable of making my own decisions on how much to pay people, negotiate with the employees as a group or as individuals, do a give-and-take and come to an agreement. I don't call Cook County Commissioners and ask their advice, and I don't look to the state of Illinois for advice either. They've got more than enough to do without trying to run a private business. Business environment's tough enough. Without answering to political pressure, being passed off as business advice, no thanks. If someone were to tell from my company were to put it, wanted to put a call center at the Carson's property, I'd tell them no. You'll be dealing with the Cook County Board and a bunch of community activists for the entire time the business is located there, demanding to be involved in your business and your day-to-day decisions. We have a huge amount of customers, vendors, bankers, investors. They've got a serious stake in our business, and they don't want the Cook County Board being involved in the operation. We here at the Village have the opportunity to tell the county board, no thanks. We can run our village better than you can. We respect the decisions of our businesses to put and that they've put forth and don't see any need to interfere with these business decisions. Other areas, even some in Cook County, are standing up for independence and not being pushed around by the Cook County Board. Womack should do the same thing. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you, guys. My name is Ted Dubrowski. I live at 901 Oakwood Avenue, and I'm here to support the opt-out. I've worked in public policy for nearly a decade now, and I've looked at the state and local finances, and anybody who opens the the paper can see what a destruction Illinois and Cook County have done of jobs. We're losing people, we're bleeding people, and Illinois and Cook County are are really good at it, sadly. So for those of us who are So for those of us who are looking to support workers, I think we really have to be, we really have to talk about the big elephant in the room, and that's Illinois. So the board has a big decision to make, and the question is, will these trustees add more mandates and more costs onto Willmet businesses on top of those already put on by Illinois and Cook County? Or will the trustees protect the Willmet businesses and their workers from one of the most dysfunctional states and sadly, one of the most corrupt counties? I argue that your most important job, or one of your most important jobs as trustees, is to protect the village from overreach from Cook County and Illinois and to help the village flourish, even in times like now. And right now, of course, we're having a great economic situation, but not in Illinois. So let me remind the board under which conditions Willmet businesses and their workers currently live under. Illinoisans, and that includes Willmet, people in Willmet, pay the highest property taxes in the nation. We pay three times more than the people in Indiana, and they will, those taxes will only go up as the pension crisis in this state gets worse, just like it will in Willmet. Cook County residents, of which we are, already pay the highest cell taxes in the nation, and it will only go up as Cook County and Chicago get worse. Illinois is already one notch away from a junk bond rating. No state has ever been rated junk, and when we get rated junk, companies will leave the state or they won't come in. People are leaving Illinois in droves. Illinois has shrunk its population four years in a row. Only one other state has done that, and that is West Virginia. So I could go on, but I think the list is illustrative, that I don't believe that this board should be joining Illinois and Cook County in putting even more mandates and costs on businesses, especially when most communities in Cook County have opted out of the mandates. I think instead, what this board should be doing is working on tax relief, property tax relief, and more flexibility for these companies to thrive.
You have thirty seconds.
And that's how we create jobs in Illinois. So I urge the board to reject the mandates and protect its businesses and, in the end, its workers, because it's the workers we care about. They need jobs, and we should, we should create more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Diana Heckarth, and I live in Willmet, and I am the, in the past was the Chair of the Willmet Board of Health. I want to speak to this as simply as a public health issue because I support opting into the ordinance to assure paid sick leave for low-wage workers in our community. I was very fortunate to be able to attend most of the Willmet Working Group meetings, which analyzed a large amount of evidence on the costs and benefits of paid sick leave for workers, for employers, and for the community. I believe that a unbiased look at that evidence on paid sick leave clearly supports the benefits of paid sick leave for everybody involved. I think all of us here would say that we think it's, we support the ability to stay home when you are ill, or to take time off to care for a sick child, or to accompany an elderly relative to the doctor without the risk of losing a day's pay. This is extremely important to all of us as family members, as members of the community, and it's also important for families of low-wage workers. It's a valuable, good for workers to have paid sick time. It's a positive way for employers to attract and retain workers. And as speaking again as a public health person, a healthy workforce is good for the economy, and it's good for public health. I'm a university professor who teaches courses in public health and infection prevention, and I do run a clinic where we have very strict rules about keeping our patients safe. Workers such as nursing assistants, or healthcare workers, or restaurant workers, or childcare workers who have symptoms of upper respiratory infections, flu, or gastrointestinal diseases need to know that they will not lose a day's pay if they follow public health regulations and stay home until systems, until symptoms subside. Essentially, having the ability to have a paid sick day is an incentive for people to follow public health regulations. I know there's a lot of restaurant people here. I just, I can't not say that there's plenty of evidence. The CDC did a study in 2013 where they interviewed 491 food service workers. Of these, 60% recalled working while ill, and 20% reported that they worked while ill with vomiting and diarrhea at least one shift in the previous year.
Thirty seconds.
The reasons they did it is they said they didn't want to leave their restaurants understaffed because they're loyal workers and they care, but they also said they were afraid of loss of pay and they were afraid of losing their job if they stayed home and followed public health regulations. I think research confirms that workers don't abuse this. They often don't take the whole seven days. They just take four or five days off when ill. So I just have to say, I just think it's a public health issue. We should follow public health and give workers the same benefits that we all have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Marshall. I've been a Willmet resident for 24 years, and my parents also owned and ran a small business for several decades when I was growing up, so I have a sense of what that's like. There's been a lot of fear and name-calling about this issue, but I want to stick with the facts, as I've learned from attending 13 of the 14 meetings that President Belinsky mentioned at the start of the meeting, as well as my own.
I'm curious which one you missed.
One of the working group meetings.
You must have been sick.
I was.
Okay.
As well as my own FOIA research. We know from the professional survey paid for by the village that 2/3 of Willmet residents support the higher minimum wage and paid sick leave. That's consistent with the previous referendum results. We know from the working group report that none of the commercial brokers interviewed by village staff thought that the ordinances would discourage new tenants from coming to Willmet. We know from the report that after Chicago passed similar ordinances, its economy didn't suffer compared to neighboring suburbs without those ordinances. In fact, it did better. Many of us are concerned about Carson's closing, but we know from our North Shore neighbors, Winnetka, Glencoe, Canalworth, Skokie, and Evanston, that they gained 168 new businesses in the first nine months after the ordinances went into effect in their communities, including a new Target in Evanston. We know from the report that the experiences of Chicago and our North Shore neighbors are consistent with the most comprehensive economic studies have found, that a higher minimum wage has a negligible effect on employment. We know that a higher minimum wage saves taxpayers money because workers don't need to rely on public assistance to support their families. Research shows that the additional money flows right back into the economy, creating sales tax revenue to help all of us. We know from the report that parents with paid sick days were more than 20% less likely to send a child with a contagious disease to school. We know from the report that flu rates drop after employees are allowed to take paid sick leave. We know that the minimum wage in Illinois has remained at $8.25 an hour since 2010 despite a growing economy and inflation. We know from the report that there are many workers in Willmet, including village residents, who make less than $18,000 a year at their primary job. We know from the report that the average age of minimum-wage workers is 35, and many support families. And we know that a living wage in Cook County starts at $13.30 an hour. With these facts in mind, I'll end with these questions. How many people here can honestly say they could support themselves, much less a family, at $8.25 an hour? Or even $11? Or $13? If we don't think we could avoid living in poverty at $8.25 an hour ourselves, how can we continue to ask some Willmet workers to do the same? Thank you very much for providing the chance for all of us to speak and for all of your volunteer work to the village.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Benjamin Mead. I'm a Willmet resident. Some Willmet workers, I think that really describes who we're talking about here in regards to employee loyalty to the company that they're working with. And this is especially pertinent, actually, at this moment because in July, we're having our annual raises and whatnot. And we look at our budget, and that's how the employees are now compensated for the next year. And I want to ask, like, who should be getting this bonus? You know, should it be the ones that have been working there three, four, five, six, seven, eight years? Or should it be these new trainees? I know three months, and you're exempt from this pay raise, but after three months, you're still basically inexperienced at the job. So you're looking at these two-year employees, you know? Okay, now they're starting to get better. They're starting to take some of the slack off. You know, three years, four years, five years. Now you've got these six-year veterans, and, you know, they're the ones that deserve the pay raise, not the trainees, not the one-years. Definitely, you know what I'm saying? So it's a simple economic choice. You know, who do you want your employees to be rewarded? Do you want them, the more loyal ones, or the fresh or young ones? And it's a clear-cut decision in my book. So you can opt out if you choose. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
My name is Denise Leith, and I've lived in Willmet for 39 years. So probably one of the oldest and longest-living people in Willmet at this meeting this evening. First of all, I want to say that small business owners, I think, know best how their businesses can thrive, and they don't need any more interference from government and government regulations. There's enough that they have to go through. Most new businesses fail within the first year. I think it's like 30%, especially for restaurants. And I think the free market is always the best way to go, you know, supporting what our Russian speaker earlier in this evening said. And I think that most owners of small businesses will do right by their employees, and the good employees will be rewarded and the bad ones will be let go. So I don't think they need to know from a regulation what they have to do. And I also believe that pay should be based on merit, not on automatic increases. I think that's a disservice to government or to business in general, and should definitely be taken into consideration. I worry about attracting new employers to Willmet now that we have that big space where Carson's was. There's still empty spaces in Plaza del Lago and in downtown, and I worry about the impact that's going to have on our tax base and subsequent impact on our housing prices. I worry about the impact on our Park District and our government jobs because they will be paying less than what the retail establishments are going to be paying. Will we have to settle for less qualified employees? I don't understand why the government entities are exempt. I spent quite a bit of today reading over the ordinance. Didn't read all the appendices, but I certainly spent a lot of time on the other stuff. They had all these important things that they said about the positive effects of this increase, but they said one of the effects was being, or having reductions in wages of higher earners, which they called wage compression. How is that a positive? If you're a high-wage earner, you are doing something right, and why should you be penalized? Also, if you look at this ordinances, any entity with a place of business in Cook County with at least four employees, seriously, four employees? You have a business of four employees, and you have to be subject to 80 pages of regulations? Ridiculous. And it says, "One of which is a covered employee." Definition of covered employee: works two hours in any two-week period. That's insanity. It's just insanity.
Time's expired.
And applies to persons under 18?
Time's expired.
Yes, for the paid sick leave. Please opt out.
Thank you, ma'am.
How are you doing? Start the clock. Mark Weiermuller here, Lawndale Street. I've got my own clock here, so, but I appreciate the reminders here. I thought I'd bring some levity to it here. I was driving, and somebody texted me and said, "Tune into the village board meeting." So I thought I'd tune in, and I tuned in immediately, heard Tracy Kearney speaking about the survey, which, to me, is completely flawed. I just can't believe, I'd never even heard of the survey, and I'm not sure if that's even a legitimate source. So hopefully, the village board's not even using that as some kind of source, because it's, hearing her explanation was just tip of the iceberg. So a couple of random thoughts. I was thinking, why not raise the minimum wage like 100 an hour? Why are we just not, why are we fooling around with this? Of course, I'm being sarcastic. We're trying to artificially increase people's wages. And there's some very good explanations today. I like that term, "living wage." We got to help people out, give them more money. The problem is, my parents used to say, "Money doesn't grow on trees." Where's the money going to come from? So a couple of thoughts on Carson's. I'm hoping a Walmart goes in there. People will probably throw me out of Willmet for saying that. But whoever goes in there is going to be thinking about the wages. I'm in a minute and 10 seconds if anyone's following me. I'm thinking, someone's going to be thinking about the minimum wage when they go in and rent that. I think eventually, that whole mall's going to be torn down for housing, probably federal housing or something, because it's just, you guys might laugh at me, but Willmet, the village board, has got to be thinking more about jobs and more about increasing business. I usually come to these board meetings and complain about property taxes because my property taxes are enormous. Something in Chicago, Obama Emanuel just announced a raise in the minimum wage. He announced it today, starting July 1st. I think it's 14 an hour. People I talk to are already talking about not opening businesses in Chicago. Chicago has a major decline in everything. 14,000 less kids in Chicago public schools this year from last year, 12,000 the year before. Nutria, District 39, also small declines. So this is what I'm thinking. We got to be more business-friendly. I want to pay everybody more. What's my time?
No, it's under a minute.
Okay, I got 2:09, so I'll end at that. Thanks for letting me speak. I always enjoy coming to the village board meetings. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Jeff Axelrod. I just wanted to share some data with everybody. Over 7,500 Willmet voters said they want a higher minimum wage. Almost 10,000 Willmet voters said they want paid sick time. That's almost 74%. About 600 people signed our petitions in support of opting in and following Cook County's ordinances. About 200 more signed our electronic petition. The vast majority, over 200 residents, called at random during the telephone survey. About 2/3 said they want Willmet to follow our county's ordinances. Hundreds of letters have been sent to the village by residents saying, "We want Willmet to opt in." On Friday, I was listening to the PBS NewsHour, and conservative commentator David Brooks just said that government is at its most abhorrent when it can't see human beings as human beings, but as data points or something in a bureaucratic game. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, Brian Fabe's, One Night Would Buy. I want to talk a little bit about the divisiveness this issue has caused and suggest a way to move forward. First, I've heard a lot of talk about who is to blame for the divisiveness this has caused. It's the county who's never passed the ordinances. It's the chamber who should never have objected. It's the people who don't think about business who should have just shut up. And I take a slightly different view. I think we're here because really good people on all sides are speaking out about something that they care deeply about. And we should be grateful to everyone who has spoken up respectfully. It is, as someone else said, what makes our form of government strong, even if it is messy at some times. But this is a little messy, and we do need to find a way out of the mess. And I think you created a way out of that mess. When you created a working group of citizens, including business owners and people with different philosophies, and charged them with identifying the data and the information that you should use in making a decision and opting out or in. As a member of that group, I can say that we had, and I'm quite sure we continue to have, different philosophies among the people in the group. But thanks to John Jacoby's leadership and the hard work of Mike Brayman and other village staff, we delivered not just a report, but proof that it is possible to have a process where people who disagree on philosophy can take part, dive deeply into the data, and find common ground on what they believe is the relevant evidence. I won't try to summarize the whole report, either the 600 pages or the front part, but there are three things I think are most important. First, the fraction of people of workers impacted will be small, but it will help them and will also help patrons and residents and teachers and students. Second, there is no credible evidence. If you read what we wrote, if you follow what we wrote, there is no credible evidence that these ordinances will have a negative impact on the economy of the village. It's not there. And third, our fellow residents overwhelmingly support both county ordinances.
One minute.
This is what your working group found a reporter to you. Now, given this has been so divisive, and the rhetoric has remained, how to move forward? Here, I would start with one important point, one trustee made to me, is your job is not just to do what the majority says. It's not what you're elected for. But when there is a clear majority that wants to go in one way, I think you have an obligation to find a compelling argument to go in the other way. And this is where the process you set up is so important. The working group is the one part of the process where citizens, including business owners, came together.
Thirty seconds.
And agreed on what they thought was irrelevant evidence, which you asked them to do, you asked us to do. No matter what our personal philosophies, we did not find a compelling reason to go against the majority. You could dismiss the studies of other cities. You could dismiss the studies of other cities, saying we're different, but in doing that, you'd be left with speculation. You could ignore the group's direction to focus on peer-reviewed studies when they are available, but then everyone would be left to pick and choose whatever data they wanted?
Time's expired.
Or you could ignore it. Could I ask, after four months, I'm down to two paragraphs. Is that?
I'll indulge you, sir, given your service
Thank you very much.
On the working group.
I don't believe any of those is what will bring the community together. And I worry and I suspect it might do the opposite. I'm not naive enough to suggest that people will walk out happy if you vote to opt in because the evidence of the working group provided that basis. People are entitled to and likely remain in their own philosophies. But if you vote to opt in, you can explain to anyone here and other places who is frustrated how you, the trustees, set up a process where people from different sides came together, they decided what the most important evidence is, and that's what moved you. And I believe that's what will move the village forward beyond this issue. Thank you each for your service. Thank my fellow members, whether we agree or not, and thank everyone here who's spoken respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
My name is Kate Jaya and I live at 325 Central Avenue in Wommet. I am co-president of the League of Women Voters of Wommet and I am speaking tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters. We are the local chapter of the National League of Women Voters of the United States and we currently have a hundred and seventy-nine members in Wommet. The League of Women Voters of Wommet has been involved with the process of considering the minimum wage and sick leave ordinances from the beginning. As an organization that believes strongly in unbiased, thorough, and transparent processes when considering issues, we commend the village board and the staff for your work on this issue. The League of Women Voters of Wommet also has a motto that they live by. Democracy is not a spectator sport. It is gratifying to see the involvement of all different members of this community in the consideration of these ordinances. And we thank everyone who has taken the time to become informed and participate at any level. We have respectfully considered the many different views presented in the past year, which has broadened our thinking, and we thank everyone else who has done the same. In the end, the League believes in relying on facts, not anecdotes and speculation. And thanks to the working group report, which represents the work of members from all views on this issue, we have the facts we need to make the decision tonight. The facts point toward a decision to opt in to the county minimum wage and sick leave ordinances, and we urge the village board to follow the facts and vote to opt in tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Good evening. Stacy Worley, Wommet. Just a couple of quick points, actually. I keep hearing two-thirds of Wommet voted in the referendum or the poll.
You may wanna lean into the mic just a little bit.
Oh, so I wanna say that I definitely think the minimum wage should be higher. So I'm one of those that voted. I would be considered, I guess, in that two-thirds. But I do not think that this is the right policy because of the increases. Opting in raises the minimum wage by over fifty percent in the next two years. Why would we commit to that and hope it works out with so many variables at play? Again, I think it's just, I keep hearing two-thirds. I've heard that a few times. I voted for a higher minimum wage. I definitely agree that I think our minimum wage is low, but I don't think this is the right ordinance. So please stay opted out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betsy Hart. I live in Wommet. One point of order, Kennelworth did not opt in to the mandate, and I have a dated letter from the manager of, on June eighteenth, Patrick Brennan, clarifying that Kennelworth did not opt in. As we've already heard this evening, the signatures gathered by the opt-in proponents are not valid as the petition which asked people to sign the petition in favor of a ten-dollar minimum wage was not at all reflective of what is actually being considered. One wonders why the justice team would contend that the village supports them. If they really believed that, why in so many instances have they created a false impression of what they're all about? Why not put the truth out there and actually get people to sign up for it? They did not do that. By the same token, I don't understand why the local governments are not covered by this ordinance. If it's a good idea, why shouldn't it apply to you and to the community center? Under this ordinance, local sixteen-year-olds at a local coffee shop will be able to accrue sick leave after working for two weeks, but not the workers at the village, at the community center. Are we not concerned about their health? I mean, what, I genuinely don't understand why government is being left out or how you can vote to have some, apply an ordinance to someone else that you are exempting local government from. It seems to me that's just a real point of injustice. And finally, I do want to present our online petition that was circulated by those concerned about the opt-out and that do want us to opt out. We clearly stated that those signing were requesting the village and the village board to opt out of the Cook County mandates, and we actually garnered a third more signatures in our online petition than the justice team did in their online petition. I have it here for you, if you'd like to see it. But I'm mainly going to read one of the dozens and dozens of comments that we received from Wommet residents. We were clear that that's the only people we wanted signing the petition. And businesses, and one business owner wrote this, and I think it just sums it up. "I am the manager at," blank, the person is identified, but I won't do it here. "It will be a hardship for us as a small business to go along with the wages and sick pay for all employees. It's already been a struggle with all the internet sales going to Amazon." And this is the part that really jumped out at me. "I don't think the average person knows what it costs to run a business." Bingo. Let's listen to the business owners, please. You've heard so many of their stories tonight. Please, listen to the people who know best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa Schneider Fabs in Wommet. I'm reading a letter from a small business owner who could not be here tonight. It's dated today. Dear Wommet trustees, my name is Patricia Abbey Berg and I own Breastfeeding and Parenting Solutions and Patricia Abbey Berg Craniosacral Therapy. I am a small business owner and a Wommet resident. I have been in business here in Wommet for more than twenty years and I've lived here for more than twenty-five years. I am writing today because I support opt-in. I support raising minimum wage and giving paid sick leave. As an international board-certified lactation consultant, I have had a very special interest in seeing the support of new families. They need support to nurture the generations to come. Raising minimum wage and giving paid sick leave is a small but significant thing that we can do. I am upset that a few noisy business owners are making all of the business owners in our community look bad. The business owners I know in Wommet, including myself, support opt-in. We are ready and willing to raise wages and offer paid sick leave. We support businesses and we support workers. I love being a Wommet business owner and this is disappointing. As a member of this community and business owner, I urge you to do what is right for businesses, workers, and public health by opting in. We must opt in. The chamber is not my voice. They do not, I am embarrassed by their actions because many business owners like me truly support this community and believe in this ordinance. I am happy to support the ordinance as a longtime resident and business owner and I hope you will join me in supporting our community. Thank you, Patricia Berg Drezen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Greg Olssand, I live at 622 Central. I've been a resident of Wommet since two thousand and four and of Illinois since nineteen eighty-eight. So I've kinda waited to the end to listen to everybody. I have a lot of emotions about this. You know, in nineteen eighty-eight, I moved here. I've been in manufacturing. Illinois used to be a thriving environment for manufacturing and I've seen it over the last three years just, you know, implode. People are leaving. You know, more recently, you know, you take a look, companies are just, they're not investing, they're leaving, they're going across the, you know, the border into Wisconsin, into Iowa, into Missouri, every place else except for Illinois. And these jobs are the most important for the middle class. I run a manufacturing business, I have for many years, and, you know, I know all the people that work for me. It's not just professional people. We're not a service business. We have everybody from the janitor cleaning the floor all the way up, and the majority of the people are hardworking. I go into businesses to turn them around. I'm not always successful, but most of the time I am. And it's not on the backs of the people that are there, it's using the resources, it's understanding what they're capable of and driving their passion. Last year, I started running a business based in Birmingham, but we also have a location in Granite City. And we all know what the state of Granite City is. It's right up there with the worst, with the worst cities with liabilities for pensions, et cetera, and they're not able to meet their, you know, their obligations. But, you know, so last year, the economy was bad. We were laying people off. It went from a hundred and eighty-five down to a hundred and sixty-five. It finally started to turn around at the end of the year. One of the things we struggled with was hiring people back. That's a good thing. We went out and we hired a consultant to find out what we needed to do.
Yeah, one minute.
And we found out what was important to the employees. Yes, wages is one, but the second one is job security and the next one is opportunities for advancement. And I listened to the conversations here today and it's vilifying the people that are doing the investment, taking the risk, and keeping these people employed. If the people who, you know, want to do something, then stand up and as somebody else said, "Start a business." There's plenty of empty storefronts, you know.
Thirty seconds.
Start working it and take some risks. That's what everybody else is doing. You know, employees are actually the most important asset of a business. And if you ask any investor, any business owner, you know that they know every single one of their employees and that they care for them. So, you know, in the end, don't take away the option of letting these people run their businesses. We're at a peak time now, but three years from now, when they're expecting to be thirteen dollars an hour, there's a good chance we're gonna be in a recession.
Thank you, sir.
So please opt out.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Gail Schnitzer Eisenberg. I'm from Wommet and I'm a Nutria Township trustee representing both Wommet and Kennelworth among a number of other municipalities. Kennelworth is not a home rural municipality and did not have the option to opt in or opt out, so it is covered by those ordinances to get that legal point straight. Also regarding the sick leave ordinances, though employees will start to accrue their sick leave immediately, the employers may postpone when that sick leave can be used up to a hundred and eighty days. So you're not going to have someone work for you for two hours and then take sick leave. I just wanted to kinda close out this meeting by thanking everyone for their passion and all of you for your efforts and especially the working group. Because I think that's really what this comes down to, to me. It's not about the arguments about whether someone's, whether the Wommet Justice League or the Nutria Neighbors had arguments that were deceptive. It's not about if somebody was aggressive, because someone's aggression is someone else's passion. But really, it's about what did that objective group, looking at the evidence across the different municipalities, how did they look at the impact in real life, in our own neighboring communities? Not across the country, but here. And that working group found that these ordinance would have a benefit to our working community and have a negligible impact on our businesses. None of us wanna see businesses fail. We all appreciate being able to walk through downtown Wommet and take a stroll with our children or go grab a bite to eat, but we all also want to make sure that our fellow neighbors are treated with the dignity that they deserve. And that objective feedback that you received from that commission study shows that that's what these ordinances would do. So I hope that you will follow that commission's report and opt in.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna suggest that people, if you, it is ten oh five and the line is short, but if you wanna talk, replenish the queue here, please, and I don't wanna cut people off. We've got some time still, so there is room. And if you've already spoken in another meeting, that's okay at this point in time, too, I think. And I really do thank everyone here for their courtesy and allowing people who hadn't spoke before to speak, so please continue. Welcome, sir.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Bob. Tom Scanlon, Wommet resident, and wasn't gonna speak, but about fifteen minutes ago, I listened to an audience member who talked about the opting in, and he made some comments that I thought I would reply because I didn't think they were accurate. The two thousand and fourteen ballot, November two thousand and fourteen, the facts are that I've seen what he's written to other Wommet residents, and the quote was, "I wanted to make sure that everyone knows we're the only town along the North Shore that lowered the minimum wage for adults from ten dollars to eight twenty-five, going against almost three-quarters of us voters. Please consider signing the petition at thewometjusticeteam.com and come, if you can, to this Tuesday's meeting at Village Hall." So statements to the Wommet voters aren't accurate. The November two thousand and fourteen ballot title said exactly this. Shall the minimum wage in Illinois for adults over the age of eighteen be raised to ten dollars per hour by January first, two thousand and fifteen? So first of all, the statement to Wommet residents that three-quarters of the community voted to approve the state's, you know, measure to increase minimum wage was not accurate because the November two thousand and fourteen Wommet residents that voted was only about one-third of the registered voters. So, second, the ballot, the November two thousand and fourteen ballot, whoever voted saw, did not ask about paid sick leave. And finally, the ballot did not refer to CPI or the thirteen-dollar minimum wage, which is what we're talking about now. So, you know, my point is, is when you're up here, I think it's wise
You have one minute.
A good community approach would be to thank and support the small Wommet businesses that have decided that they can afford to pay their employees more than the going minimum wage of eight dollars and twenty-five cents per hour without government mandate and intervention. In other words, I don't think it's a good idea for Wommet residents to practice bullying tactics in the village of Wommet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Hazer. I'm a second-generation resident of Wommet, a business owner and employer with employees that are located in Wommet. And I was also on the working groups that put together the study that we presented for the village of, village board of Wommet.
So in fairness, since I offered Mr. Fabs a little bit extra time, I guess I should offer you a little bit extra time, too, since you were on the working group.
Well, thank you.
We'll refer to that as the working group bonus tonight.
Wait. Unfortunately, I don't think I'll need it.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. One was, I was on the working group and we were given instructions. We were presented with thousands of pages of material. It was daunting to go through it. Certain studies were put on that I felt were objectionable, and our instructions were to present enough information to the board so that you can make whatever decision you want. We gave you enough to make a pro decision to opt in or a pro decision to opt out. So although some of my board members feel that it was directed to give you an obvious direction, I have to disagree with them. I feel it was not, and I, we, I can point to certain studies that I feel that can give you a pro or a con. And the second point of order that I constantly was asking Chairman Jacoby was, are we dealing with minimum wage or living wage? Minimum wage or living wage? I was told time and time again, we are dealing with minimum wage, not living wage. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand, from the working group's perspective, that's what we were dealing with. We were not dealing with living wage. So, thank you. I would urge you all to opt out for a combination of reasons. It's bad for business. It's bad for the village of Wommet. It's bad for the citizens of Wommet. It's bad for the employees of Wommet. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary Lyman. I live at Eighth and Central. This past year has been really disheartening for me. There's been so much hatred. I've had so many business owners, like I've had one crying on my shoulder about a month ago about this whole shenanigans. My, from my understanding and talking to many of the business owners, they pay very, very well. In fact, I was at a business today, dropping off dry cleaning. She was sick as a dog, that's why she's not here tonight. Since she's the owner, she couldn't call in sick. She's very, very generous with her employees, but is She's very, very generous with her employees, but is adamantly against this. It's finest-fit cleaners. She doesn't want to be regulated, but she pays sick leave. She pays vacation, and she pays well. I looked around at empty spaces in Wilmet. Five Plaza Delago, I just found out. There were five at Fourth and Linden, but now there's seven. Village Center, four. Westlake Plaza, three. Ridge Road, four. And this is not scientific. I was driving, so, you know, I was trying to be careful. Domino's has sat empty for four years on Lake Street. Green Bay Road has Prather Paint and Kurt Safer Piano has been closed for years. And then the new Green Bay Road building and Jaguar. And one thing, you know, that is really something to think about is Edens Plaza will have four empty spaces. Edens Plaza, the earnings, the tax dollars feed District 37. So, Evoqua Schools, that's where they get a lot of their tax revenue. District 39 does not receive it. They do pay fire, Wilmet Fire and Police, but not school. And that's kind of like.
One minute.
Carson's is two huge, huge spaces, and I'm, you know, I can't imagine what will fill it. It's a two-story property, both of them, actually. Yeah, so, anyway, I think it would be bad for our business owners. Many of them either grew up in Wilmet or live here. So, they pay property taxes. They pay taxes through the real estate, et cetera, et cetera. My daughter was the one that answered the phone call when the survey came. And she said yes to everything because she didn't really know anything about it, and it wasn't very clear. She currently is back in town, working at a business in Wilmet. And, you know, she's like, Mom, they're really good to their employees. I love where I work. You know, she's in and out of town, so she can come back, pick up and work there, and then go, you know. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Lali Watt, and I've lived here since 1994. A couple of things I want to say. First of all, I want to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce for lobbying on behalf of their members as effectively and as well as they have. Their members join them for a reason, and they have really gone to town and done their job and put forward the arguments their members want to put forward, so that's great. The thing I do want to say, though, is that if you truly believe that these ordinances are not legal, I am not a lawyer, I have no opinion on that, it seems a little disappointing that you did not raise those questions of the working group. The working group was asked a series of questions that were meant to help you reach a decision, and I think they very diligently went through and did their work and came up with all kinds of information for you. But nowhere did anyone ask them, what is your opinion of the legality of these ordinances? So, to raise that now and say, well, whatever the working group did or said, positive or negative, we really don't care about that because we don't think that these ordinances are legal, that seems a little disingenuous to me, and I'm very disappointed that that is even being raised. And then, another thing that is really worrying me is that we hear repeatedly at these meetings how the business owners know how to run their businesses, and I have absolutely nothing negative to say about that. They do. But I think we should be given, as residents, an equal amount of credit for knowing how to be residents. And when we are asked questions in referenda, we know what the question means.
You have one minute.
And when we are asked or told you didn't understand what CPI was, I beg to differ. I very much understand what CPI is. So, when I answered those questions, I answered them with a full knowledge and understanding of what I was saying. And I will say that we sort of elected you to this unpaid job of lobbying on our behalf as residents. And I'm sorry it's unpaid, but you are doing a public service. And you are representing us, the residents, so please do as good a job for us as the Chamber of Commerce is doing for their members. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's nobody else in line right now. So, anyone else who would like to speak, please queue up now, and I will make the end of the line, the end of public comment, given that everybody who wanted to speak has had an opportunity to speak. Okay, welcome.
Hello, I'm one of those creepers that you mentioned before, that I didn't raise my hand when you counted, but then I had something to say.
Okay.
My name is Lolita, and I'm not Wilmet resident. I work for a business in Wilmet. My aunt and my uncle runs a restaurant, a pizza restaurant, JP's Pizza and Grill, and I've been working there for several years. I myself live in Glenview for the past 13 years. And from my perspective, first as an immigrant to this country, as a Wilmet employee, and as a member of the family that owns a business in Wilmet, I want you all to keep in mind that most Wilmet employees, they're working for an entry-level wage at a lower-skill job, aren't in a situation where they have to support their families. Some portion of these part-time employees are part-time employees who are high schoolers or college students, working at the job until they're done with college and get a real job. And the rest are those who work at the entry-level jobs for decades and just expecting to be paid more for a low-skill entry-level job. Not raising that entry-level or minimum wage pay will be a great motivation for the second portion of employees that I mentioned. To get out of that comfort zone and go to college, get or get more educated, college is affordable. If not in university, then a community college offers a lot of courses where they can get a certain skill for a certain job to get paid more. Or also, they should learn the language of this country that they live in, and again, step out of that comfort zone and get out of that entry-level job that they worked for for decades and complain, keep complaining about low wage. It is obvious that opting in equals raising prices for goods and services in Wilmet. It is obvious that the majority of Wilmet residents can afford to pay more for food or services, but it makes sense that almost all of them would choose not to, because that's what we humans, it makes sense for us. But it lasts for something that, why pay more? So, dear Wilmet residents and the board, please don't support opting in and raising prices in community. Please support opting out, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joan Lassand. I live at 622 Central Avenue. I'm a Wilmet resident and a small business owner, and I ask that you opt out. I recently started a new business and looked at three different office spaces in Wilmet. The first was above Starbucks on Lake Avenue. The second was the old Runner's Edge on Ridge Avenue, and the third was the old Pie Shop at Fourth and Linden. The rent is high in Wilmet. We chose not to have our office in Wilmet, even though Wilmet is my home, and I would prefer that. I have to make payroll every two weeks. I have to pay the rent. I have to pay the electricity. I have to pay all my employees. When there is not enough money, I don't pay myself. I have a treasurer, and I'm always asking her, what's our cash on hand? How much do we have? Can I make payroll? Can I pay the rent? And when times are tough, and they are, I just put things on my personal credit card. And I hope that one day, when there's enough money in our account, I will pay myself back. So, it's nice, of course, we want to help people, and we want everyone to earn as much money as possible. But I would just encourage those people who want the village to opt in to start a business. We have many, many empty storefronts. It's a hard job. So, I encourage them to put their big toe in the water and to go rent one of the vacant storefronts in Wilmet. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, members of the Village Board and our neighbors here in Wilmet. My name is Michael Kabenarchi. I'm a Wilmet resident. I'm a parent of two children in Wilmet Public Schools. Actually, now they're at Gilson Beach Camp through the Park District this summer. I'm also a board member of the D-39 Education Foundation, and I'm the chairman of the Cook County Board of Review. I want to start again by thanking you for taking the time to discuss Cook County's living wage and paid sick leave ordinances. As you know, this is a matter of great concern to many residents. Whenever it's asked of the residents of Wilmet, whether it's the referendum or the phone survey, the overwhelming majority of residents support paid sick leave and a move to a living wage. I also want to commend the Wilmet Village Board for forming the Wilmet Working Group, and I want to applaud again Chairman John Jacoby, the other working group volunteers, and the staff members, including Michael Bremen, for their efforts. After you took the decision last year to opt out, you tasked them with the job of doing the deep dive and doing the research. The working group and its staff did a deep and thorough dive into the subject. They analyzed volumes of scientific studies, engaged in open and lively discussion, and delivered the sourced working group report. I attended four of the seven meetings, and I read the final report and participated in the final meeting when it was edited, and I reviewed the studies at sites. And I concur that the Wilmets' working group should serve as a model for other municipalities that are working through complex and challenging issues. Now, from the Wilmet Working Group report, we know that there are 1,347 low-wage workers in Wilmet, and 250 of them are our neighbors. 250 Wilmet residents are low-wage, and an estimated 78% are supporting families. As has been discussed, opting back into the ordinances would mean a significant improvement in the lives of these workers and their families. The increases in the minimum wage provided by the ordinance would get us closer to the current living wage of $13.30 for a single adult by 2020. Now, within the mountains of information in the working group's final report, I hope the last two pages of the report, way back in Appendix Number 19, aren't lost, and you review those in particular. Now, the working group concluded there was no effective way to survey Wilmet employees, which is why they included these testimonials in Appendix 19. These testimonials from low-wage workers in Wilmet show that paid sick leave can make a profound difference in the lives of them and their families.
Thirty seconds.
As one of these folks said, "As a worker and as a mother, one of the hardest things I experienced was not being able to be with my kids when they were sick because I didn't have paid sick leave." Those of us who work in offices know how important paid sick leave is, and I would ask, if it's good enough for the suits, it better be good enough for the boots. I understand you're balancing your concern for workers with concern for our local businesses. As a regular customer at Valley Lodge, Nix, Rock House Chalet, the Bike Shop, Depot Nuevo and others, I share your concern. And I just want to end by saying that the working group report contains the data and the studies to ease the concerns of these business owners. The two meta-studies on the employment impact of higher minimum wages that have been peer reviewed, meaning they've undergone the highest levels of scrutiny by other scholars, show little or no impact on employment levels. And very important, the working group could find no study that was against paid sick leave, and it looked. So, once again, I want to thank all of you for the hard work you're doing here today, and thank you for what you're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to close public comment at this point in time, since there's no one at the podium. We're going to take a 10-minute break, and, all right, anybody else who's interested in talking, get up out of your chair right now and get in line, okay? Because you're the last guy if nobody comes in behind you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I'm Paul Dower. I've lived in Wilmet all but five years of my life. I've been running a family business since '76, which started in 1882. I am very much against more government. It's difficult enough to run something in Wilmet with government, and I think from vacant storefronts and the lack of competitiveness, if you open up a business or try to stay in business, that you're making a huge mistake. It's unfortunate that everybody doesn't get a better job, but if you want a better job, you work harder, you look for other jobs, you get a better education, you do something to make yourself a more valuable employee. And I, like other business owners, don't get paid when there isn't money in the account. Some of my accounts, I'd like to get paid, but it's 2003, my last bill, and we just haven't made enough money to do that, so that I'm not threatening to go out of business, but you are going to put people out of business if you raise their costs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now I'm closing public comment. It is 10:26. So, let's just round to 10:40. We'll reconvene at 10:40.
Oh, I meant to throw this stuff away, so I'm going to just get some of this stuff off my desk. Oh. Can I just...
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order now, please. So it is, it's 10:40 right now, and it's 10:40 right now. I'd ask the village manager to watch the clock, because we have to vote to continue the meeting at 11:30, but sometimes we can just get going and not pay attention. All right, so to kick off the board's discussion here, I'd like to have Mr. Stein, quick overview, basically what we are legally empowered to do tonight. You drafted a memo for us regarding this topic, and if trustees want to look at it, it is on page 348 of the agenda packet is where it starts. It's a memo from May 30th. So first off, just clarifying, we still, the Willmet Village Board still does not have, we still do not have the legal authority to enact our own minimum wage or our own sick leave ordinance. So we can't say we want to make it a different number or, you know, change the policies.
That is correct. So the, my opinion, which was provided well over a year ago, has not changed. There's been no change in the law since that time the opinion has been provided, that there could be a challenge to the Home Rule Authority of the village to enact its own ordinance. That same challenge could apply to the Cook County ordinance. However, the Cook County ordinance is passed. It is presumed valid until challenged. So as such, under our constitutional authority, the villages, we can do what every other municipality has done thus far, and that is opt in or opt out. Choose from A or choose from B, but not create C. And that has been my consistent opinion for the last year.
Okay, and but the board asked you some questions, which you answered in this memo, so we can do other stuff.
So as far as opting in and out, you can determine a delayed enforcement or a delayed effective date. You can sunset the ordinance to have it automatically repeal the repeal, for lack of better words. There are other things that we can condition the ordinance, but it's still, it's important to know that that's still opting in either bucket A or opting out into bucket B.
Right, so there isn't an in-between.
Right.
We're in or we're out. We can put conditions on whether we're in or out.
Right.
But we're in or we're out.
That's correct. All right.
So does anybody have questions about that for Mr. Stein? We all saw his memo, obviously. All right, so, I mean, the board asked Mr. Stein to draft this memo. Presumably, people had something on their mind. So at this point, I guess I'll ask you if you've got something on your mind in terms of a way you'd like to modify the ordinance.
I'm sorry, I thought you were just asking about, there was a question about opt in or opt out. I do have another question.
Okay, well, yeah, actually, that's fine. Let's ask Mr. Stein any other questions, not just on opt in, opt out.
I mean, are there any conditions that you would tell us would not be legal? I, you know, you know, we, this is not what I'd be proposing, but, you know, we can opt in for only certain parts of the village, or, you know, are there any conditions that you think we should be, that you say for sure we cannot do, or...
Well, I think an important condition, I mean, I can't answer that question. There are going to be conditions that you can't do. I probably couldn't think of every one of them off the top of my head right now. But an important one is to say you can't opt out at $12 and then hold the minimum wage at $12 going forward.
Got it.
So if you opt out at the $12 or the $13, then it would revert back to the state or whatever the state level is. And I know that has come up. As far as when, you know, opting out on a certain date is legally permissible, opting out upon an event, you know, the state acts or something, these are all in my memo, or the county does amendment, are all legally permissible. Or not, or having the repeal take effect a month from now, two months from now, five years from now, is all permissible, it's all legal.
Okay. And then, does the county have any conditions in their ordinance? Does it have any expiration dates or any other conditions, like the state, you know, enacting anything? Is there anything in the county ordinance that we should be aware of?
There are two conditions in the county ordinance that say it won't necessarily repeal the ordinances, but it does say that if the federal government or the state enacts a higher minimum wage, that would be the minimum wage that would control. And to be honest with you, I don't think you need that in the ordinance, because it's obviously, that's, that would be the floor.
Okay. Wasn't there something about not, once we get to the CPI escalator, if unemployment, is that a certain...
Yeah, it's 8.5%, I believe, as determined by the Illinois Department of Employment Security, but that doesn't necessarily negate the ordinance.
You don't do a CPI.
You don't get an extra CPI for that year.
Right, okay, okay. Other questions for Mr. Stein?
Yep.
Wait. Trustee Pierce, go ahead.
Just to confirm, because there's been some questions tonight from residents about the exemption for public employees that's in the county ordinance. If we opted in, we can't change that exemption as part of our...
You are correct. That's, it's, we're in the ordinance for 100% or out of the ordinance for 100%.
Okay, all right.
On the legality and difference of opinions, but if this ordinance is challenged and found to be not legal, is there any risk, what's the risk to the village?
If the village, if it's not a village ordinance, the risk is very minimal to the village. In fact, I don't think there would be any. The risk is really on the county and the fines they collected, their enforcement actions. The village, if the village were to have its own ordinance, that's why my concern is that there would be a risk to the village with liability.
And by own ordinance, you don't mean opt in or opt out?
No, I mean a village...
By minimum wage in Willmet is X dollars.
By opting in or out, we have, the village has essentially insulated itself from liability because we are either in the county or out of the county, and it's the county's burden then.
And even if we modify and make amendments, we're not tying ourselves more to the county and possible liability with it?
Well, the amendments that I explained were, we're opting in or out at certain times or based upon certain events. If we had an amendment, again, holding the minimum wage to $13 in 2025, then we would be creating our own ordinance and be subject to liability and would be challenged, could be challenged.
Now, enforcing this ordinance, where do we, do we play a role?
No, the county has its own enforcement arm. It's the county's prerogative and their own department. There's also the private enforcement action on it, which would be a private citizen going to the circuit court. The village would have no role in the county ordinance enforcement, in fact, would have no jurisdiction to do so.
So similar to, when we find out people put additions on without going through our zoning process against our code, we bring them in and there's penalty potentially.
Correct.
If we find out a business is elected on their own to not follow the county ordinance and the state, they're going to continue following what they're doing. Do we have a responsibility to inform the county?
The village has no responsibility to inform the county. There is nothing mandated in the ordinance that requires a municipality to say anything about any other action, but the county could enforce its own ordinance.
If the county discovered a business somewhere in Cook County to be not in compliance, what sort of enforcement might they do?
So they have, they have two separate types of enforcement. The first one is the internal types of enforcement through the Cook County administrative process, very similar to our administrative hearings that we started here recently. And there is a potential for damages of back wages, any kind of other losses, and three times the amount, up to three times the amount in damages of the payment not paid. So there are, not only to make the person whole again, but there's also punitive damages. On top of that, if a person wishes to go to circuit court and circumvent the county ordinance, that person, if they're, if that employee files a lawsuit and the employer is found to be guilty or liable, then the, not only are those same damages there, but
In the year since, excuse me, these ordinances have been in effect, do you know what the county has done in terms of enforcement?
So as of, I believe I sent the memo to the board a few months ago, and I don't believe this has changed, the department responsible for the enforcement had only one enforcement action under minimum wage and zero under the sick leave ordinances. That's an enforcement action. I don't know about letters, I don't know about investigations, but the actual filing of a lawsuit or an administrative complaint, and that was resolved in favor of the employee by agreement. It was essentially the employer saying, oops, I'm sorry, and I will pay.
Other questions for Mr. Stein? He's sort of on a roll. Okay, so, back to, back to the question that I was raising, which was, so we asked him to, you know, these, we've asked him these questions, and I guess the question is, for the trustees, you know, is there a reason you ask these questions? Are there things you'd like to propose tonight relating to these ordinances? Trustee Pierce?
So, one of the, Mr. Stein mentioned that there are certain conditions that could be part of the ordinance. One of the conditions I'm interested in is a sunset provision with respect to the minimum wage ordinance, that in the event the state enacts a, well, a new minimum wage ordinance, from what's in effect now, that our ordinance would sunset.
Okay. You know, I'm, my thought is, let's, let's put ideas out on the table, and then we'll go back, I'll go back to Trustee Pierce, and we'll discuss them, and, you know, he can decide, or someone else can decide if they want to make a motion to amend, so, but I think it might be helpful just to sort of toss ideas out, and sort of have a list of what people think are sort of on the table here for ideas.
Can we talk about the formal process, the parliamentary procedure now, or you want to wait?
We'll wait until, well, no, you may as well, go ahead, while people are thinking, go ahead.
Okay, so, while the discussion we can have about any amendment at any time, eventually the ordinance, these ordinances, if you wish to amend them, they'll have to be amended by a motion and a second, and then we would discuss each of those amendments. Now, if it also relates to a previous discussion that this group just had right now, that's acceptable as well. But there will have to be a formal motion and a formal second, and then a roll-call vote on each amendment into the ordinance.
I'd be in favor of, if we were to vote in favor of opting in for the minimum wage, I'd be in favor of a delayed start date of some sort.
Okay, I'm just, at this point, I'm just going to take things down, and then I'll go back to people to ask them additional thoughts. Trustee Plunkett.
I don't know what form this would take, but I'd like to have a discussion about CPI.
Okay. Anybody else? I mean, I'm not going to close it out, we can start talking about these three first.
I'd like, you know, talk about if there's some significant change in the financial health of Willmet, meaning, and what I've come up with, you know, and hard to do on sales tax decline or anything, so I just focus on our bond rating. If our bond rating weakens, or is downgraded, as a potential option to- Sorry, a bond rating, so if our bond rating is declined, is reduced, as an option to potentially opt-out, just because it could provide us more flexibility in why that is.
Okay, so that was bond rating. Anything else?
I'd just like to follow up on Trustee Sullivan's comment about, or are there any other things we could be thinking about that could be, you know, triggers we might see that has an impact on the businesses?
The one, the one that I'd like to propose is just if the county amends its ordinance, because I don't think, if we, if we, if we opt-in tonight, I don't think the message is that we're outsourcing our village government to the county, I think it's we're opting into something specific, so, I'd like to also toss that out there on the table, which is if the county changes its ordinance, I think this was one of the ones you had in your memo, actually.
That's correct.
The county changes its ordinance, you know, we then, you know, would opt-out. Now, one clarification here, though, so, any action that we take tonight, whether it's opting in or opting out, or whether it's adding amendments and the like, we can revisit this, basically at any board meeting. Like, you know, we could make a decision at this board meeting, and on July 10th, well, you know, with notice and all the rest, yeah. None of the trustees are interested in that, but, but from a, from a practical point of view, if we said, for example, that if our bond rating got downgraded, and then we repeal our repeal, so we were now opted out, at the next board meeting, we could notice an ordinance at the following board meeting, we could change that and go back in, in essence.
You are correct, yes.
Okay.
Can we just clarify what "we" means? I mean-
We the board, I think, is what we mean.
Would be a consensus of the board, can you kind of explain?
It's like, I think you'd have to, would you have to basically either pass a new ordinance or amend the old ordinance?
It's the same, it's the same way that any other introduction of an ordinance is made, is through the village manager, through the village president, a department head, or a majority of the board.
And a committee of the board.
Or a committee chair, yeah, a committee of the board, that's what I meant by majority, I'm sorry, committee of the board.
So to put something on the agenda, I can do it, Mr. Frenzer can do it, any of the department heads, any committee of the board, and a majority of the board. So four members of the board could say, Mr. President, this needs to be on the agenda.
Right, and you would do it at a, you would do it at one meeting?
Sorry, no, I'm actually not talking quite, I'm sorry, I'm usually, I'm, that's not, I'm not the problem.
So, help me understand, so if, are we saying some of these potential amendments, we would have to come back to the board to potentially-
No.
-change our decision, or would they be automatics?
I think the thought was, they have to be automatic, or else they're not in.
Right.
Okay.
So the conditions you guys are discussing, there would be, if approved, would be automatic sunsets. I believe what the village president is trying to say is, we didn't really want, two years from now, like, oh, that's not a good sunset, maybe we should re-discuss, we should discuss it again, and maybe remove that sunset and keep the ordinance. So it, it's an option that the board has.
Right. Okay.
I think it's important for the public to note that, one, the reason we have that option is because we are a home rule municipality, and those who are not, don't always have that option.
That's a little bit more complicated discussion, but in my previous employment of representing a non-home rule community, I came to a different conclusion.
Okay.
I think a non-home rule community could opt-out as well.
But, but, but council in, County Worth and Glencoe-
Council-
-instructed them that they did not or might not have the authority.
Yes.
Okay, okay, was I, I think I was still talking to the mic.
So I just want to make sure I understand, President Blinsky, what you're suggesting, because I think whatever we decide tonight, I think we want to have some, whatever is decided, have to some time to see the impact, whatever it is, and so I just want to, if we're gonna, I don't, you're talking about proposing, that, we're saying that at any time we could be, it could be reevaluated, so can we put anything in the ordinance then that says, you know, the board won't reevaluate this, at least until June of next year?
Well, you, you could, you can limit yourself to saying you either have to review something or you cannot. If you say the board will not review this for another year, you can always amend that, too.
Right, but can we bind the future legis-
You can bind for a review, you can, you can bind the ordinance to review, would that entiles, would be something as simple as, I looked at this ordinance and I agree with it, or it could be a study. I would suggest not handcuffing yourself or the village board, or future village boards, to those actions when you have the ability to do it at your own option.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? This is all very complicated, because we typically don't go through any of this process.
I just have one more thing, I'm sorry, which is, if the Cook County ordinance is, for whatever reason, deemed to be somebody, you know, there is a suit against someone and is deemed to be illegal, does that automatically repeal our ordinance?
Well, it doesn't automatically repeal our ordinance, what it is, it repeals the Cook County ordinance, leaving the, the operating law to be the state law.
Okay.
So, it's, it's in my memo essentially about a repeal by operation of law.
But from, from a practical point of view, how would that, how would that work? I mean, does that mean, you know, if someone sued and the circuit court said this, and then they, and one party appealed and went, I mean, does it eventually have to go to the Supreme Court before it's sort of final, or if it's, if it's challenged successfully at the circuit court level, is it now inoperable?
So if, if there's a challenge at the circuit court level, and the circuit court judge determines that it's invalidated, and there is an appeal done within 30 days, usually a judge will determine whether or not there's going to be a stay of his judgment, so, for the higher courts to review it. Sometimes that happens, most of the times it happens, sometimes it does not, so it would depend on what that actual specific court order says. So if that court order said that this is not stayed, and the county ordinance is invalidated, then it no longer applies anywhere in Cook County. If the circuit court judge says, I believe it's invalidated, but, you know, we're going to have the higher court look at it, I'm going to stay it, then it's still valid until the appellate court reviews it.
So, so let's take the flip side for a second, and I know this isn't your legal opinion, but let's say that the ordinance is challenged, and it goes through the appeals process, and the state Supreme Court, the Illinois State Supreme Court says, yes, actually, county could do this.
Yep.
In that judgment, they could also say that we could do it, so then we could come back and rewrite our own labor laws if we wanted to.
Absolutely.
And, in essence, opt-out, but opt-in to our own version of whatever it is.
Well, you could, you could essentially repeal the repeal, and then have your own ordinances, which would be either something of a conflict with the county ordinances, or something similar, but it would be the village's ability to do that, if the Supreme Court reversed its decision that it made in 1988.
Right, which presumably would truly lead to mayhem, because you might have every single municipality in the state passing their own laws.
It could.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'd make no opinion on that.
Yeah, okay, no, right, I mean, none of us would know, okay. But we could, if, if, if the courts gave the county, if the court gave home rule units the power to led to-
We are a home rule unit, we would have that same authority.
Okay.
Just to jump in on that, I mean, a lawsuit is one thing, but who's going to enforce something like that?
Right, no, there's, there are practical limitations, that's correct, yeah, right, because we would, if we pass a law, we have to enforce it.
Well, let's not go down that road.
Yeah, I don't intend to, but I just think that's a big portion of that.
Okay, all right, so is there anything anybody would like to add to the list at this point in time?
Five things.
I got-
Yeah, what do we have?
I got six things. I've got, Trustee Pierce had said, sunsetting if the state enacts a new minimum wage, Trustee Wolf had said, a delayed effective date, Trustee Plunkett said she wants to talk about CPI, Trustee Sullivan said, can we consider something that reflects the village's financials, like a bond rating downgrade? Trustee Dodd, sort of, I guess I had her as a separate one, but she basically said, triggers in general, and then I said, if the county amends its ordinance. Okay, so, I'm actually going to start with Trustee Wolf, because hers is like the most straightforward here. So, Trustee Wolf, I'll give you the floor, what are your thoughts on a delayed effective-
Well, my first, I guess my way of thinking about it is, a year ago, we were looking at this, and one of our considerations was, wow, if we pass this, this is going to take effect in just a few days. Now here it is, a year later, and there are many reasons why it took this long to study it. The working group had to be convened, the staff was busy with some other budget things, so the working group didn't get a chance to get started until January. So here we are, a year later, and if we were to opt-in, it would take effect in just a few days, and I think to give the businesses time to get used to things, if we were to opt-in, delaying it by a little bit, I think would be good. I'd be flexible as to what date would be suitable, I'd be looking for input from other people on what they think would be suitable, but it just seems-
Do you want to toss a date out there?
Um, maybe October 1st, maybe January 1st.
So which would be like three months, or, you know, beginning of next year?
Yeah.
Six months, I guess, yeah, okay. Anybody have thoughts on that?
Um-
Go ahead, Trustee Pierce.
January 1st would be, was the date I was interested in.
Trustee Dodd?
Yeah, I think I'd lean more toward October 1st, just because I agree with what Trustee Wolf is saying, that when we were here a year ago, we were really like, oh my gosh, if this is effective, it's going to go effective in the next couple days. But I think we've, my perspective of why I'd be more comfortable with October 1st is, I think we've shown that the business community, to some degree, is aware of what's going on. I think the chamber has done an amazing job bringing the business community up to date, so I think if we give, you know, there is clearly going to need some time for the businesses to, if we do something, to change their payroll systems, or whatever, look at their employees and understand, so, but, I just feel like, once we do it, I'd prefer that we just give them about two to three months, because I think that's enough time.
One thought, one thought on that that I had was, if you did do a 10-1 date on minimum wage, 1-1 might be better for sick leave, because that's sort of like a benefit plan, and people tend to, like, redo their plans every year? I know, just a thought, just a thought.
I hear you on that, that's a good perspective.
Any other thoughts on a date? And every, by the way, everybody doesn't have to speak every time we go through it, but if you have thoughts, please feel free to share.
I think three months is good, I wouldn't rule out six months, I like three months, I think it's sufficient time. I think it is important, though, I think, you know, if we are discussing this at all, I think a delay would, would help compliance. I think having businesses finding themselves immediately out of compliance is, is not good for anybody, so I think a delayed start date is important for, for everybody, and it's important for compliance with this.
Okay. All right, so, Trustee Wolf, and we'll, we'll go slowly through this, because this is the first time, I think I've done it even, what we're doing here. So, I guess I would ask you if you would be interested in making an emotion, and, Mr. Stein, listen carefully to what I say, make sure I say it right, so, would you like to make a motion to amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-045, that's the minimum wage opt-out repeal ordinance?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to reflect, I guess we'll say, an October 1st start date.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, we sort of talked already, but if there's anything else anybody wants to say?
I have, I have a question about the process.
Yes.
Okay, so we've never done this before, where we are voting on amendments before we voted on an ordinance, what are we in power to do? Can, can trustees vote yes on an amendment, no on an ordinance, no on an amendment, yes later? Can you kind of explain how this process works?
The answer to your question is yes. So you can, you can vote no on every amendment, and yes on the ultimate ordinance, you can vote yes on every amendment, and no on the ultimate ordinance, and both ordinances, and anything in between, you have every right to do that, you do not restrict your own votes by accepting amendment or not accepting amendment.
Okay. Does that make sense for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Was the motion for both ordinance, both minimum wage-
No, we're, I think we have to do them separately, so, because they may be different.
What is, what was, what was proposed at that?
That was the minimum wage.
Minimum wage, so let me just clarify, Trustee Wolf, that's the, that is for the minimum wage ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay. Did you get, that, that motion works for you?
Yeah, that's sufficient.
All right, so any other discussion? Trustee Wolf's motion is for an effective date of October 1st, 2018, on the minimum wage repeal ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I, well, okay, so if I vote no on this, can I then make a motion to amend, so it's January 1? I suppose I can.
Yeah. No, I think so, right?
Yeah, so if, if this amendment fails, then you would be able to, obviously then bring January 1, even if it passes, you'd be able to bring that, but it would be an amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I know it's silly, but, it's the way we're going to do it.
I mean, so if, if this passes, he can still amend?
Yeah, yeah, you can amend 20 times if you really, really wanted to. I really hope you don't.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Okay, so, Barb, you're going to get a lot of exercise here tonight. Madam Clerk, please call the role on the motion to amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
No.
President Blinsky?
No. Okay, so the motion carries, the, the motion, the original motion has been amended. Now, Trustee Pierce, did you want to propose January 1st instead?
Yes, so-
Okay, so would you make a motion, would you make a motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45?
So it would actually be a motion to further amend the amendment-
Amendment, okay.
-to the motion, to create, to have a delayed effective date to January 1st, 2019?
Right.
If that's, if that's correct.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, so is there a second to that one? Am I allowed to second?
Second.
Okay.
Now you discuss the two.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the role on the motion to adopt, I'm sorry, the motion to amend the amendment to the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Just so, just so we're clear- Just so, just so we're clear, a no vote would have a delayed effective date of October 1. A yes vote would have a delayed effective date of January 1, 2019.
Got it, okay.
So yeah, the 10-1 is already in there now, it's on the books.
Trustee Wolf?
No.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Plunkett?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
President Blinsky?
Yes.
So what's the? I think it's 4-3, it failed, right?
Failed.
Okay, so the motion fails. All right, so now trustee Wolf, would you like to make, would you like to make a motion on the sick leave as well for a delayed effective date?
Oh, sure. I really don't know what would, date would be better, but your bit about benefit plan sounded good. I would move to amend that motion to reflect an effective date of January 1, 2019.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, madam clerk, please call the role on the motion to amend the motion to adopt the ordinance, which is ordinance 2018-0-46, the sick leave repeal.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Plunkett?
Yes.
Trustee Dodd?
Yes.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
Yes.
President Blinsky?
Aye, okay. So that motion carried, so the motion on paid sick leave has been amended for a January 1 effective, is somebody, Mr. Berman, you're keeping track of all this stuff, right? Okay, okay, all right. All right, so trustee Wolf, I think that covers your effective date stuff.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. Let's go to trustee Pierce's sunset. So trustee Pierce, you said you were interested in a sunset provision if the state enacts a new minimum wage law. You want to let us know what you're thinking?
Yeah, so in the event the state, which has not changed the minimum wage law since 2010, in the event they enact a new minimum wage, then our ordinance would sunset.
Okay, discussion on that? Trustee Kersman? Trustee Pierce, can you give me one or two examples of how you could envision that playing out?
The state enacts a new minimum wage law, and I mean, I'm not trying to be.
Go ahead and give a number, I mean, if, just make it, just paint a picture. But let me clarify, trustee Pierce, you mean if the state increases?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so the state increases the state minimum wage to the same numbers that, that the county has now. Or higher numbers or lower numbers, whatever they are. Then our, it would be a state minimum wage that is governing the Willmett employees.
So if the state were to raise the minimum wage, but it would not match the Cook County ordinance, we would effectively see a reduction in the minimum wage of employees in, in Willmett?
That's correct.
Okay.
Based on this proposed, yes.
Okay, others? Trustee Plunkett?
Well, I just wanted to, are we discussing that?
Yeah, we're discussing.
Or proposing?
Yeah, we're discussing.
So in just terms of.
Discussing, proposing, whatever.
Discussing that, Larry Sufferton from the Cook County Board came up here a year ago when we were discussing this, and he said that the purpose of the Cook County ordinances was to get the state to raise the minimum wage, and when the state raised the minimum wage, that the county would repeal its ordinance. Now, I have no control over what the county does, but I think the goal that everyone has been talking about is for the minimum rate, excuse me, the minimum wage to be increased across the board. And I think the intention of the county was a noble one, even though this has been a crazy year. I think the intention is there, and I, I don't know that it's going to be equal to what the county has. It might be higher, it might be lower, it might be on a delayed, but I, I think that that would benefit far more people than the county ordinance. And I, I think the intention of the county was to encourage the state to act, and I, I think that was the intention that we should follow.
And I'm actually going to agree with trustee Plunkett, because Senator Biss came in here and all but asked us to do this, to send a message and said, we need to send a message so the state makes a change. So in effect, if they make a change, I think he was asking us to follow the state, is the way I took his comments. So if Willmett does the right thing and we adopt this and send the right message and the state acts, we should follow the state. And that's what I heard from our senator.
I agree.
I was going to say, yep, I agree, exactly what trustee Sullivan said, is we had a senator today come in front of us and say that the value in us doing this is to really make a statement to the state, and that's what this would do.
Okay, so.
I do have a question, though, just for our legal counsel. Is, if the state does enact a minimum wage, would it automatically repeal the Cook County wage in, in its enactment of the state wage? Does it have the right or the authority to repeal the, the whatever county or city ordinances are in place across the state?
Yes, so the state, will it automatically? That depends on what's in the ordinance, in the statute. The state legislature has the authority to preempt home rule by expressly saying, you can't do anything home rule unit of government. And there's specific language that's found in the Constitution, and if the state government puts that, if the General Assembly puts that in the statute and says, all, you know, all county or all, you know, home rule unit government minimum wage laws are hereby superseded by this and it's a limitation on your home rule power, then absolutely those will be superseded.
But you need a bigger vote.
You need a three-fifths vote for that, for that preemption language.
Okay. So it, so it could happen, but it's not necessarily.
It, well, it doesn't have to happen in every area.
Okay, so any, any further discussion? All right, so trustee Pierce, would you craft a motion here? So this is a motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think I already did, or when we started, in terms of.
Okay, so.
For the statewide?
You want to?
This is the statewide one, so.
Did he even?
Well, why don't you articulate, make the mo, I don't think we made a motion, we didn't make a motion and second, so make.
Oh, nobody seconded it.
Did we make a motion, though?
I thought trustee Pierce made a motion.
I think he made a motion. I had a motion on the 1-1.
All right, so.
While we were drawing motions and making.
Would you give us the motion again, trustee Pierce?
Sure. I move that the minimum, minimum wage ordinance be amended so that it will sunset in the event the state minimum wage law changes.
Or increase, increases the minimum wage?
Increases.
Increases the minimum wage, yes.
Second?
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Counsel, that work for you?
It works.
Okay. All right, madam clerk, please call the role on the motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries, the motion has, the, the original motion has been amended. Now trustee Pierce, there's a little bit different question with paid sick leave. Would you, would you like to make a similar motion that if the state enacts a paid sick leave mandate, that we will live by those rules?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I really hadn't, someone else want to? I mean, I hadn't really given it thought. I guess it makes sense.
Well, yeah, if there were two sets of standards, it would make sense.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to make that amendment on our sick leave ordinance, that in the event the state enacts a paid sick leave law, that our ordinance would sunset.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so, and that's, your motion's good?
Motion's good.
Okay. Question? Yes. Could we have a more generous, when, I understand with minimum wage, but when it comes to earned sick leave, could we potentially have a more generous policy than the state? I mean, is that a legal question, or is that?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah. I'm right. You mean, can the village enact its own?
Yes. Well, if, well, in this context.
Depends on how the state enacts its.
Well, if the state.
Talking hypotheticals, but.
Right.
I want to see it through. So the nature of the case law right now is that labor types of benefits are a statewide concern, and home rule communities cannot enter that field. That is the, the nature of my memos. The, if the state legislature enacts a paid sick leave statute that applies across the state and says you get two days instead of five, but doesn't automatically repeal the county ordinances, the county ordinance, as long as it's not been challenged in court, would still apply. So I think that's the nature of your question?
So I think what you're saying is yes. We could have a, we could have a different standard if the county ordinance had a different.
But again, if the, if the county has a different standard, again, we would be. We're still not the county. My advice is still not to have our own sick leave ordinance.
So this is a little bit nuanced, different than minimum wage, this question that, on sick leave, then we could potentially offer a more generous, Cook County could be more generous in its earned sick leave policy than state legislation.
Well, yes, it's similar to the minimum wage, though, it's the higher, the higher wage or the better, the more benefit would apply in Cook County. But again, I'm cautioning, I'm not sure that you're saying that, when you say we, the village should not have its own ordinance.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I don't think trustee Kersman's saying that. I think what he's saying is.
I'm just wondering, am I evaluating this the same way as the preceding question on the minimum wage?
Yeah. Well, I guess, I guess I would ask you if you evaluated the minimum wage question the same, because I believe what we just amended it to was, if the state goes to $11 and we're at 13.
Then we're at 11.
Correct. And so I'm, I'm asking if that all applies the same way to earned sick leave as was.
Well, I think that comes down to the nature of what the motion is and what the discussion turns out. So if the motion right now says that if the state enacts a sick leave policy, if it's two days, it's going to, it's going to automatically repeal the sick leave, the opt-out here, or the repeal, the repeal of the, of the opt-out.
Okay. Okay, so I, I believe, trustee Pierce, that was the motion you made. Did we get a second on that one?
Stand.
Okay, okay, all right. So any further?
Wait, can I ask, yeah, I have a question. So I think, I understand what trustee Kersman's saying, and I'm, I think it's, it is a more complicated, I think, on the sick leave side. Is there any sick leave policy in place today on the state side? Because it's a little bit easier to be talking about minimum wage, just because we know it's 825 and, you know, but I'm just trying to understand, I think, what trustee Kersman's question is, which is.
Right.
Is it an increase, I mean, it's, is it an enactment of any sick leave policy that the state of Illinois would enact, would put in place? Because there is not one today.
Again, I, I can't tell you what the nature or what the intent of the motion is that that comes to mind.
No, but I think trustee, trustee Dodd is asking you, is there, is there paid sick leave?
There is, the, the only sick leave statute is if an employer gives sick leave to somebody, that they have to be allowed to use that sick leave to, to care for another, not just their own personal illness. It does not mandate that you get a certain amount of sick leave time.
So should we?
So there is a state statute about sick leave, but it's not anywhere near the benefits that are given to the county.
But there's not a state statute on mandated paid.
Paid sick leave, there is not.
Well, that, that's what should be within my motion.
Yeah, that's what his motion is.
That if there is mandated paid sick leave.
Okay, all right, he's way ahead of us.
That is where I was at.
No, but that's a good, trustee Dodd, that was a really good question, because there, that is a clarifying point here, is minimum wage, we know what it is, it, it's right there, right, eight and a quarter. Okay, any further discussion on this one? Okay, madam clerk, please call the role on the motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-46, the paid sick leave opt-out repeal.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Yes.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye.
So motion carries, the original motion has been amended. Okay. So let's talk about CPI first, and, and then we'll sort of talk about trustee Sullivan and trustee Dodd's trigger idea together, because they're, they're related. Trustee Plunkett, CPI, what's your thinking?
I don't have an ordinance, I don't have an amendment to propose, I just want to have a discussion. I know that I've heard a lot of concern over the CPI increasing in perpetuity, and I know that Mr. Stein has said that, you know, if we, we can't just say it stops at this number because then it goes back to the, you know, original, original number. I, I can't, in my mind, and maybe other people feel differently, by the time it gets to CPI, we, you know, we get to, you know, the years that we get to that point, I can't imagine that the state would not have increased the minimum wage. We will have been at, what, 11 years by then, since they increased the minimum wage? So, you know, I'm hopeful that we don't have to have that discussion, but, you know, I, I kind of, I, I know the uncertainty is difficult for businesses, and so I think we need to talk about, you know, how we feel about that and, and what we want to do.
So, but going back, Mr. Stein, the, if, if we, if CPI kicks in, what, July 1 of?
2021.
2021, right, because 2020 is 13.
Yep.
If we said, we're not taking CPI, what you said earlier still applies, it's not like we, we freeze at 13.
Right.
We would go back to what the state, and presumably because we just voted that if the state increases the minimum wage, this is all moot and we've, we've thrown it out, that means we would go from 13 to 8 and 1/4.
If the state.
If the state, because if the state's changed, then we're out unless we've gone back in and, and reassessed.
Right.
But I want to.
It's almost 11:30.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, all right, so can I have a, I, I would ask for a motion to extend the meeting by an hour to 12:30 AM. Can I get that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great, I was worried it wasn't going to fail for lack of a second.
Could we amend it to like 12 AM or 12:30?
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it again. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so the meeting, okay, so it was a 6-1, 6-1 vote there, Barb, you can note trustee Sullivan's objection. Okay, so the meeting will be extended till 12:30. Thank you, sir, for pointing that out. Where were we?
So, are they opt out on a, on a specific date? Does it revert back to the state wage? And the answer to that question is yes. So if you were to have, say, I don't want CPI, that would be effective opt-out of July 1st, 2021. Once you opt out of this ordinance, right, you go back to what the state wage is. And the state wage would have to be 825 at that time.
We say our ordinance expires June 30th, 2021?
Yeah, that's essentially what I'm saying.
I mean, that's what we're doing.
That's essentially what I'm saying.
Well, but we could, we could also tie it, though, if, if the county, well, we get to mine, I'm going to ask if we can, if the county amends the ordinance, but, but if the CPI didn't exist, people might not be as concerned. Like, if that was amended out of the county's ordinance.
But if we say it's going to expire by a date, this is trustee Plunkett's idea, but all the future board could do in 2021 is say, we're going to extend it for an additional year, or whatever.
Right, whatever they want to do.
Whatever the law is at that time.
And that is actually commonplace throughout state statutes. They often have a sunset provision, and then the general assembly meets a couple months ahead of time and extends that sunset provision.
And, and so I think that's what I wanted to clarify, because I believe you and I have had a discussion about this a little bit, just, so it's not uncommon that a particular local community might have a sunset clause in anything they do, which, and then it's just, it's reevaluated by the board prior to the expiration date.
Yeah, a, a great example of that is the medical marijuana statute. It's supposed to sunset on January 1st, 2020, or July 1st, 2020. And to have that law still in place, the general assembly's going to have to reconvene that, that discussion, and then extend that sunset, or remove it, or let it sunset.
And so, state or local communities do that just as an opportunity to have an opportunity to revisit what was adopted?
Correct.
Okay, I just think that was important for the residents here in the community to understand this, that we're not just coming up with something that's just so outrageous or is not typical of what's done within local businesses, that just give us some opportunity to look at these kinds of things.
But we could pick, we could pick any date. It doesn't have to, I mean, we're talking about it because of trustee Plunkett's comment on CPI, but, you know, if, I've, I've heard from a lot of people that are really frightened about 13. I don't know why 12 isn't as frightening as 13, but 13's frightening. So if we, if we wanted to, we could sunset it.
Any date you want, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So trustee Plunkett, are you, are you interested in making a motion, or?
Well, let's, let's discuss, so there's, you know, you could sunset it at a certain day. How would that compare to saying, let's take a look at it on a certain day? I mean, let's just, can we kind of compare, or I guess we could take a look at it anytime, right?
Right, we could take a look at it, but a sunset will force the board to take a look at it, in essence.
Right, or, or let it essentially die. If you put in the ordinance, let's take a look at it, then you go through this, you automatically have to go through this process again, even if you didn't want to go through this process. So you would be putting a condition upon your, this board and future boards, and I believe it would be an unnecessary condition. Because if you had a sunset date in there, 2021, you can take it up tomorrow, or in the next village board meeting if you want to, or five village board meetings down the road, or-
Just, trustee Plunkett already nodded her head that she wasn't interested in talking about this.
Well, but my point is, you have options if you don't put it, if you don't build that mandate into the ordinance.
And I don't know that we can have the discussion about the CPI in a vacuum, kind of like we did the, the start date, because I think what some other trustees have talked about triggers, I think all of those things are, are sort of related, and I think we maybe should flush out some of those other options.
Okay, so let's, let's defer, let's defer the CPI for now. Let, let, I'm going to skip the triggers and go to the one that I suggested, because this one seems a lot easier to me. So my thought is, and I'm going to have to, I will ask someone to make this motion for me, but my thought is that should the county amend either of their ordinances, then we're, we've sunset, and we'll have to reevaluate at that point in time, because in essence, I feel like-
It's not the same.
It's not what we've decided we're going to opt in tonight or opt out of, right? That's, that's the thing. So, so would someone make a motion to further amend the motion to adopt 2018-0-45 such that in the event that the county amends its ordinance, wait?
I have something to add to that before we-
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Actually, because I think we need to define amend. And are we saying amend? Are we saying materially amend? I mean, like, if they make some clarifications, if they make some minor changes, if they change a couple words, are we out, or?
What do you, what do you think, Mr. Stein?
What is the definition of amend?
Very difficult. Obviously, the easy one is, any amendment would be any amendment. That's the easy, to put in there substantial amendment, or, you know, something that, that, you know, materially changes, then leaves it to the opinion of whom to determine that there was an amendment. Probably my opinion and/or the village manager's opinion, and at that point, I think it would be counterintuitive, when the board has to determine whether or not they would want, they, they consider this amendment material. So I would think that you would have any amendment, or any, again, modification to the countywide minimum wage law, and knowing, again, that you can always bring that back. You can always say, okay, well, you know, Mr. Stein, they changed the word "the" to, you know, "a," and we don't believe that's an amendment, and we want to continue, we want to remove that, or, or, you know, modify this condition.
And that would, but that would take, oh, wait, I'm sorry, go ahead, trustee.
How would we know when they have changed it?
I, I would continue to monitor what the laws are, but they, everything is in a public forum, just like our laws are. So I would probably also ask Commissioner Soffert in to make sure that we get any notice, as well as, as well as Ms. Stewart from the county administrative arm. She would know as well.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to be constantly looking. We could be notified. You do anyway, because that's where you are.
Because it's kind of what you pay me, so.
Changes that are so minor that the county board wouldn't have to, you know, they're administrative changes, or like, just clarification so minor that the board wouldn't have to vote on it, would it really be a county?
I understand what you're saying, but the problem is the slippery slope of what is a minor change and what's not a minor change. And my opinion to that may be different than what the board's collective opinion is of that.
And, and we're not talking about the regulations.
We're talking about the ordinance.
We're talking about the ordinance itself.
Not the rules that are attached to the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, some of those rules might change probably like every week or something, as people are amending them and clarifying them and all the rest of the stuff. We're talking about the ordinance action by the county board.
Which is where the-
President, are you, do you envision this motion to be, that we revisit in the case of an ordinance change, or that we absolutely, we throw it all out at that point?
Well, I, I mean, I mean, I thought your, I thought council's advice has been that, in essence, the sunset is, is basically being forced to revisit. Either, either, either go, either it sunset, either we revisit, or it sunsets, and whichever the board that sits here at that point in time would get to make that decision, you know?
That's absolutely correct.
So, because-
It would be an evaluative process by this board.
There can be. That's, I think that's the way to say, is that there can be.
I mean, because arguably, the sunset on the state increase, we could have done the same thing, and just said, well, we'll wait and see what happens. So.
But, so I just want to say that, I mean, we went through a whole working group study. We, we spent the time to do that, and that was all based on a certain ordinance that was in place, right? So I think what you're trying, what you're recommending, President Blinsky, is if, for whatever reason, that ordinance changes, based on what we did our working group study for, so if they, that we, that would mean that the working group study that we did wasn't based on the, on the same information, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, that's in essence, it's like, if, if, if the county, the county decides 13 isn't the number, it's 15.
Right, right, exactly. I mean, if they decided that they want, right, instead of it going, you know, to, from 11 to 12 to 13, if they take it from 11 to 13 to 15, I think that's actually very different. That would be, and, would be a very different study, potentially, as well. The results of the study could have shown something differently.
Trustee Plunkett?
Not to nitpick this, but, I mean, we're opting in or opting out of a specific ordinance. If that ordinance changes, we haven't opted into that. I mean, isn't it automatically, I mean-
No, I, I think because, because we're-
Well, because we haven't opted out.
Right.
Okay.
We're subject to whatever it is.
Okay. Okay.
And that's, I think that's the concern, that we're subject to whatever it is or will be. Okay, so I'm going to ask someone to make this motion on my behalf, but a motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45, that's the minimum wage opt-out repeal ordinance, such that if the county amends the underlying ordinance, then our ordinance will sunset. Is that okay?
That's okay.
All right, so would someone make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So motion carries, the motion has been amended, and I will, I'll make the same motion, or ask someone to make the same motion on the paid sick leave ordinance, a motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-46, which is the paid sick leave opt-out repeal ordinance, such that if the county amends the underlying ordinance, then our ordinance sunsets. Is that okay?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Okay, so that motion carries as well. Motion's been amended. All right, so let's talk about triggers. Trustee Sullivan and trustee Dodd, you want to talk about what you were thinking?
Well, you know, as, serving on the finance committee, and, you know, based on conversations we've had recently regarding some other projects we have going on, you know, I think it's pretty clear that my concern is the financial health of Womack, as we embark on potentially a $50 million sewer project, as we face loss and confirmed losses of sales tax revenue with the, with the closing of Carson's. We need to, I'm concerned that, you know, whatever we do, and we're about to consider an ordinance that may or may not have an impact, as the working group found out, we won't know until this is enacted and see how some of the businesses react to this. So knowing that the village and where our rating is, we have a negative rating, or we have a very good rating right now, but a negative outlook, and it's going to be further, you know, mitigated, or where we could see further downgrade is if we have a weakened socioeconomic profile. That's right from Moody's. So I would argue that if we see a decline in our rating, that's where I would say that should be a trigger for us to reconsider. I try to think of sales tax or some financials, but I don't think that's fair, because there's ups and downs, and you can't tie that right to the law. But I think, you know, what we have right now to get the best deals that we can have for Womack is our rating when we go to go and put things out for financing. And I would just like, at least the flexibility that we revisit and say, how do we control our own destiny?
When is the rating, when is, when are you likely to get an update on the rating?
Well, we'll get an update on the rate. The last rating that we got from Moody's, we get rated every time we issue debt.
Right.
Yeah.
We can also get interim rating changes to the past issued debt, depending on things, external events. So, for example, when the recession was on, there was a negative outlook attached that was lifted. As trustee Sullivan pointed out, our, we're currently AAA. We do have a negative outlook, but that negative outlook attaches because of the state mandated police and fire pension obligations, and not because of the underlying economy of the village. There's multiple, I've had Moody's, our last rating from October of, of last year, in front of me, just to, to go through it. And it's important to realize that I can change your pension rating by picking another rating agency. We can change our pension rating by spending out of reserves. We can change our bond rating wholly through our own actions that have almost nothing to do with the overall economy or financial. We're basically in a position to largely control it.
But I, and I agree that, you know, that negative outlook is based on the looming pension funding that we need to have. But they also said that why we got the AAA, and it was the fact that we have operating flexibility. So my, that's my question, is, and it's just coming back for discussion. It might be we get a downgrade because of pensions, and they clearly state that. But if they also say that we're not driving new businesses, or we're, we have a sales tax issue, because they're going to start to see the decline, that's where I, I think it's worth the discussion on the board.
So I'm going to ask trustee Dodd, what other thoughts did you have? Let's put whatever other trigger thought we have here.
Well, so I agree a little bit with trustee Sullivan is saying, and this is something I've just really struggled with over the last couple weeks, looking at this. And, you know, I've looked at, I've thought, you know, about things like vacancy rates, if in the, within our village, you know, but that's just, that's very difficult, because that's not necessarily tied to this. I've thought about what trustee Sullivan mentioned, which is sales tax decline, but there's so many other factors, and it's, so those were some of the things that were in my mind, none of them, which I think what's hard is, I think we're, we're, we're all trying to just protect really property taxes to some degree, right? And what it costs to live in this community. And so, but I don't know that, but I don't know that I feel any of these is easy enough to tie to this particular ordinance. And that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling.
Right, because I think the thought is, because I had the same, a similar thought, but staff has dissuaded me of anything that might work.
Staff's dissuaded me, too.
You know, the thought was, well, what if we saw some sort of material decline in a business indicator in the village? And the question is really measurement. You know, how do you measure, sales tax, there's lots of things going on around sales tax that might not be really connected to this, including, you know, how do you deal with a recession, you know? And vacancy rates was an idea I asked him about, but it's like, okay, so who's going to count, and what's the count going to be, and what's the threshold? How do you figure that out? And it's really hard to do. I think trustee Sullivan's is interesting, at least from the point of view that it's, that it's a, it's sort of a known thing, you know? You know, did, did, if you ask the question, did six restaurants close, you know, and for what period of time? I mean, you know, you could have a debate about whether that was, you know, that one closed, or, oh, there's a new one coming in, so should you count it? But the bond rating is sort of a outside concrete factor. I'm not sure it makes sense either, but at least it's, it's one of those outside concrete things.
I guess I'll-
Can't, can't we opt out any time?
Yes.
We can, that's true.
I mean, if you discern conditions that are troubling trustee Sullivan, I'd welcome to hear it. You know what I mean? You can bring it.
True.
So I'm, I'm not sure why we need to legislate on that and create something that's potentially arbitrary. But that's me.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, again, any, any sunsets we create, you could make that same argument. So it's more a question of sort of, in essence, defining our state of mind today as we sit here. You know, what, what is this body signing up to? And what, for example, we're signing up to, if the county changes it, we're out. And somebody, you know, the, the board who's sitting at that point in time can do that. So your point is well taken, trustee Kersman. I would argue, everything we're talking about here also applies to that. So, and again, I'm not suggesting that trustee Sullivan's suggestion is necessarily something we should do, but it is-
Well, you know, I think one other argument in favor of it, and I'm, I don't know really which, whether I'm in favor myself or not, but one argument in favor of it is, this board here is the one that has looked at the working group study in depth. In a few years, in three years, it could be a different board that wouldn't have that same knowledge and wouldn't have voted with that knowledge in mind. So setting it up so that if such as such thing happened, it would sunset, is something that makes sense.
That's actually a very, that's an excellent point, trustee Wolf. Thank you.
I'm just a little concerned about, you know, muddying the waters between the Womack, the bond rating, which deals with, you know, how, the revenue we collect, you know, how we run Womack. You know, we are not involved at all in the businesses. We are not enforcing this. This is not our ordinance. We are not, I mean, there's sales tax revenue, yes, but, I mean, it's a separate entity. And I'm a little worried about muddying the waters between Womack and the businesses and tying Womack's bond rating to businesses. I just, I don't know, I mean, if we get specific information from a rating agency, that, that is something. But the bond rating in general, I mean, we, we've got a sewer project coming down the pike, and we don't know what an extra $50 million is going to do to our bond rating, on top of the pensions. I just, I worry about tying our village government to the businesses too much.
Got it.
First of all, I haven't made a motion.
Right, no, I understand.
And I would, you know, so this is just discussion, because as we said, you know, the, the working group said the data proves that it doesn't have an effect, so is there a way that we can confirm that, as people have said? And I would argue that we do, whether, you know, this is our ordinance or not, we do have influence over the business, because half of our sales tax, or a majority of our sales tax, is the home row sales tax, which we enact. So that does, that does influence our bond rating.
Right, okay. Trustee Dodd?
Well, and the reason why I was suggesting some of these triggers is if you look at the working study, it does indicate that there's limited effect. But most of those studies, I believe, were based on when it is a nominal increase to minimum wage. And I would argue that this is not necessarily a nominal increase to minimum wage. I mean, regardless of what the businesses are doing, but from a very practicality standpoint, changing it from 825 to 11, or 825 to $13 over three years is much more than a nominal improvement. So we don't really know the impact of this entirely.
No, that, I, I agree with that. But again, I think-
And the working group report confirms that, because if you look at the language that's in there, it does indicate when these are nominal increases to minimum wage.
So, but I think the struggle here is whether, you know, what's, what's a trigger that works? And, you know, again, sales tax, it, it's probably not as directly related. And vacancies and, you know, number of restaurants in the Village Center and stuff like that is harder to, you know, really connect to it. So I don't know if there is a trigger. I guess I'm asking if people have other ideas about a trigger.
Because there's a great trigger.
So trustee Sullivan, you want to make a motion, or?
No.
Okay, all right. And trustee Dodd, is there any motion that you want to make?
No, I don't, I agree, I mean, unfortunately, I don't think that there is a great trigger. And I think what trustee Kersman said is very valid, which is, you know, we can always reevaluate this. And any board, any board has the opportunity to bring this up.
Right, which is true, but, but to trustee Wolf's point of view, you know, that future board may not have gone through a year's worth of, and a thousand pages of reading, you know?
Hopefully, they won't have to.
Yeah, hopefully they're lucky. All right, so I guess trustee Plunkett, we're back to CPI. That's the only thing I've got left on my list.
Well, it's concrete. It's not a, it's not a trigger. It's, it's not, you know, there's nothing, you know, such as a bond rating, or store vacancies, or sales tax. It's a solid, it's a solid thing. And if, if you were- it's a solid thing. And if, if you are concerned that the minimum wage is going to go up in perpetuity, then that's something to think about. If you think the state is going to raise the minimum wage within three years anyway, then, you know, maybe that's going to be a moot point. But I, I do think there's a lot of concern over, you know, not having it be a solid number. And I, I know it's capped at 2.5%. And, you know, I, I understand that, that it's, but I, I think that we should discuss that as, as a possibility.
So, so from a practical point of view, what that would be though is just a sunset on a date, on July 1st of 2021. If none of these other things have happened, that's when CPI is due to kick in and that's when we're sunsetting it. And again, the board at the time can consider, consider it.
That's absolutely correct. I mean, that is the simple and most practical way to cap it at CPI.
What do people think?
Make sure that CPI is in effect.
I would be in favor of that.
I'm talking enough.
So I think this is a really interesting idea, trustee Plunkett. And, and I was, I was looking at something quickly while you were bringing this up. So I hope this is accurate. But, you know, I think in, in the discussions I've had with some of the businesses, this has been raised as a concern from many of the businesses regarding just the, this, this increase in CPI and what it would bring to them and, and things like that. The other thing, the reason why I was looking at it is, and I, I don't believe any of the peer reviewed working group studies that we got, actually, they looked at an increase in minimum wage, but none of them looked at the impact of CPI. So we don't have a peer reviewed study that actually would explain the impact to the businesses. And so I think that's why I kind of see this as an interesting idea, given that the, we don't have any true data to go against. And the business community has raised some concern about it. We heard that today in the, you know, from some of the, from several of the businesses.
So trustee Kersman, you were leaning in?
No. I support the CPI. We're looking at this because our state minimum wage is deficient. And even people who don't like the Cook County ordinances tonight have spoken about the need to raise the minimum wage. And so the CPI is an effective tool to keep a minimum wage somewhat close to current. And so I think it's a good mechanism. And I would not want to shirk that part of our policymaking.
I agree with everything you just said, trustee Kersman. I'm looking at this now on a, a playing field. We, if, if the state decides to raise the minimum wage and do it by CPI, I can see where that makes sense. I do worry, you know, do we need to make some compromises because we are not all on the same playing field? And I, I can see that as a compromise.
Now, let me just, let me just raise the question. Is there any interest at all in picking an earlier sunset date to avoid, say, the $13? Or is this just pure CPI right now? Because I, I mean, what I heard from people is they're really worried about 13. And again, I don't know why 13 is that much worse, but that's what I heard from people. So is there any support for that going even back further? Doesn't sound like it. Okay.
Well, can you give us more, can you give us more background on that a little bit? I mean, I was kind of explaining why, where I was on the CPI a little bit and just, just in terms of looking at this working group, but.
Yeah. I mean, I guess my, my question is, if we, if we pick, if we pick 2021, you could just as easily pick 2020 if you wanted to. You could use the rationale of one, you know, again, trying to be a little bit more in the compromise world. You could also suggest that, you know, what we're really hoping for is for the state to take action and clear this all up. And ideally, you know, even to preempt home rule, while we normally don't like it when they preempt home rule.
It would preempted.
It would level the, the field once and for all. But what it would do then is, it basically gives them two legislative sessions to get their act together. And if they don't get their act together, then we, you know, then it's the, the opinion of this board that that future board should be forced to revisit it.
That's interesting.
I throw it out there. I, I mean, it doesn't sound like I'm getting a whole lot of, a lot of people chiming in on that. So let's go back just to CPI then. We heard from you guys, trustee Plunkett, you brought it up, trustee Sullivan, trustee Wolf, any thoughts on sunsetting it before the CPI hits?
Oh, yeah. I feel like it's getting late. It's hard to.
I'm sorry?
It's getting late. You know, I could possibly support either one of those. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other.
Either one being either with the CPI or without the CPI?
Either at CPI, the date that the CPI would kick in, whenever it is, 2021, or a year earlier, if, if other people were in favor. But I could perhaps be interested in supporting it.
I could support sunsetting this in June of, June 30th of 2021 or June 30th of 2020. That would give the new board.
It is, it is July 1st though, right?
It would be July 1st.
It's like 12:01 on, or midnight July 1st.
2020.
The ordinance will say $13.
Before it gets to $13 plus CPI or before it gets to $13?
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we amend adoption of ordinance 2018-045 so that it would sunset July 1st, 2020. So it, and I'm assuming that means it's capped, capped at 12.
That would be, so that would be exactly. There would be, the minimum wage would not exceed $12. However, if it, if that sunset did kick in, the minimum wage would revert back to the state, which would be at that time $8.
I understand. Yeah.
Okay. So it's $12. You're correct. It's 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Do we want to discuss more or do we just want to vote and see where people are? All right. Madam.
So can I ask?
Go ahead.
So I could, like what trustee Pierce did before, I could make a second emotion. I could make a second motion after this, which is to do it to CPI.
Well, you're, you're backwards. It's automatically going to be, if this motion passes, it's going to be at $12 and obviously not the CPI.
It's going to be, it's going to be July 1st of 2020.
20, right. So you would eventually have to make it July 1st, 2021. Your amendment would be of no effect because it's already going to, if this amendment passes, it's 2020.
Wait a second. So I'll clarify this because.
Got it.
Couldn't you make a motion to amend the amendment?
Yes, but it would be of no effect because you took the more restrictive amendment first.
Oh, so you're saying.
The more restrictive amendment of 2020.
Restrictive first.
Right. Would, would, would sunset the ordinance at 2020, right? And then your next amendment would be, if that passes, it's going to sunset at 2020. Therefore, your vote on, well, if it sunsets at 2021 would be of no effect because it's already sunsetted a year before that.
So by the other way, you'd say it sunsets on 2020 and it sunsets at 2021. But the 2021 wouldn't matter because it had already sunsetted.
If it was the other way, if it was 2021 first, then you can have the amendment on, amendment on top of that amendment to make it 2020. You could still have it.
I mean, I mean, not, I know the motion is out there, but I just want to throw this out. To be fair, shouldn't we do, shouldn't we reverse the order then to give everybody? I, I'm not.
It's not a legal question.
I know the motion's not there.
Trustee Pierce, would you withdraw your motion?
I'd have to withdraw the motion.
Okay. So the motion's been withdrawn.
Yeah.
Trustee Plunkett, would you like to make the 2021 motion?
Can I say so moved or do I have to say?
Okay. So I'll, so make a motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45 such that it sunsets on 7/1/2021.
Correct.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I think we talked about it. Let's, let's go around the horn. Madam clerk, please call the roll on the motion to further amend the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Okay. So, so that one passed. That was 2021. And I think trustee Plunkett, what you were suggesting is now trustee Pierce can make his motion and see if we make it more restrictive or not.
Right.
Okay. So trustee Pierce, not going to make your motion?
Not going to make a motion.
Okay. Anybody else want to make that motion?
Okay.
And, well, now there's, but I, but now on sick leave, there isn't CPI on sick leave.
I don't, I don't see a similar motion on sick leave.
Right. Okay.
I don't, I don't see how that would.
Because this wasn't just a sunset due to a date. It was a sunset due to a level. Whereas the, it's not changing. Sick leave is what it is.
Right.
Okay. So there's no motion, there's no motion for paid sick leave that's comparable to that. All right. That was sort of the original list. Are there any other ideas that anybody wants to discuss? No? Okay. So I will, I will ask the question formally. Are there any additional amendments for ordinance 2018-0-45, which is the minimum wage opt-out repeal ordinance? Okay. Amendments are closed. Are there any additional amendments for ordinance 2018-0-46, the paid sick leave opt-out repeal ordinance? Okay. Amendments are closed. Now, you guys, you guys have something to put on the board? Okay. So let's just.
What is this? Another presentation?
Okay. So the staff is saying that for the minimum wage amendments, we delayed effective date to October 1st.
And president Blinsky, if I can just jump in, I typed this as we went along.
Yes.
And had corporation counsel review it right before this. So if it's not right, that's why.
It's corporation counsel's fault, is what you're saying?
Yeah. I say that a lot. No, I'll take the blame this time.
Not what we said.
Let's just make sure this makes sense. First one is delayed effective date to October 1. The opt-in would sunset in the event the state of Illinois increases the minimum wage. The opt-in would sunset in the event Cook County makes any amendment to its ordinance. And the opt-in would sunset on July 1st, 2021, when the, when the Cook County minimum wage ordinance is indexed to CPI. And it would revert back if.
And those are correct as to the general topic. Obviously, the language in the ordinance would be a little different, but would have the same exact effect as to what's on there. That won't be cut and paste into the ordinance. It'd be a little different.
Does that make sense?
But it'll have the same exact effect. It's just more.
That's what I believe we just did.
More legalese.
Okay.
Number three. So it's not just Willmet would revert to the state minimum wage. It also would affect the sick leave ordinance?
No, I was going to say, let's go to the sick leave.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Minimum wage.
Do you have the mouse?
Okay.
All right. Yes.
It's late.
So sick leave, the effective date is delayed till January 1 of 2019. The opt-in would sunset in the event the state enacts a mandated paid sick leave law. And the opt-in would sunset in the event that Cook County makes any amendments to its ordinance, the parenthetical still applies that we would, we would revert to.
Well, there is no state law, so.
So, so there's nothing to revert to.
Okay. All right. Amendments are closed. Those are the ordinances that we're going to be voting on. So I guess I'll move to discussion as we normally do. So I'm not going to go around the horn and put trustee Wolf on, on the spot like I sometimes do. I just, I'll just ask people who's ready to speak. And I'd ask you to address your point of view on both ordinances in your comments. Because after our discussion concludes, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll on each motion separately. So it will be two separate votes on the minimum wage opt-in and on the, well, the repeal of our opt-out on minimum wage and the repeal of our, of our opt-out on sick leave. So who's brave?
Who's tired?
Happy to go.
Trustee Sullivan?
Sure.
Fire him.
Well, first, you know, I want to get started. And I think Kate from the League of Women Voters and Brian, and I know a few other people said, you know, saw the appreciation of what we're doing here in Willmet, which is fun to see democracy in action and really appreciate the collaborative nature that this is, that this was brought to us, especially tonight in the comments on both sides. And I, I think that this was one of Willmet's finest hours as we go through this, no matter what the decision is in outcome. But I do want to thank also everybody who contributed to better understanding this issue and the impact this would have on our village.
I especially want to thank this board for supporting the working group, which provided more data and research for all of us to use as part of this important overall decision. It has even been said that, or I've heard through a number of other municipalities and counties, that this research was so well done that they are using it to assess their own ordinances. Once again, as we have consistently done in the past, Willmet has demonstrated a good collaborative research process to understand impacts on potential policies before making a decision. But to this point, my concern is we are voting on an ordinance that was written prior to doing any specific research on its impact to Willmet. These two ordinances were hastily put together by the county using research from the city of Chicago that the city of Chicago did regarding their own minimum wage and sick leave. We have it backwards here. We should take the working group's report and have an ordinance written that, from that research, and one that is legal, enforceable, and can be supported by all groups, residents and business owners. I can't think of any other ordinance that we have adopted where we wrote the law first and then did the research. The working group's results, though, were only one part of this overall decision, as it is important, as just as important was the time we all spent with the residents and business owners. Overall, over the last year, I, like many of my fellow trustees, have spent time talking with a number of residents and business owners, as well as reading a number of emails on both sides of the issue, listening to their concerns. I can honestly say, I am much more informed on minimum wage, sick leave, the federal, state, and county laws, thanks to the time we have taken to understand what we have been asked to support. And the good news is, everybody I met has the best interests of our community and employees at hand. That was a consistent theme. Everybody wants the best for this village and the employees. But what was also most noticeable, though, was our thriving business community, which we as a village have worked so hard to rebuild, reinvigorate over the last 15 years. 15 years ago, if you think back to Willmet, we had few options. There wasn't much to shop for. There weren't many dining options. There wasn't much going on. And the good news is, the board at that time formed the Business Development Advisory Group, which we heard from one resident today, to research, discuss, and provide recommendations on business development initiatives. And the good news is, today, we have a parking problem. We, Willmet is so busy that we have a parking issue because we're, we've become a destination. And that's something we should be really proud of, of what we've accomplished. We have more than 460 registered businesses and our sales tax revenues increased nearly, by nearly 20% since 2012. We've taken the, Willmet is open for business approach over the last few years and done very well. And by the way, when you think of the city of Chicago, we have done this not on the backs of large Fortune 500 companies like McDonald's, Google, supporting Amazon, but rather we've done it on the likes of people that own Yellowbird, Rock House, Alchemy Coffee, and restaurants, not chains and hotels, but restaurants like Nyx, Valley Lodge, Napolita, Ridgeview. So all these small businesses are the core of what Willmet has been since 1872. That's who we are, is a small business community that we've supported, and we've done especially well. And the good news is, a majority of these employers have stated that they're paying, today, they're paying much more than the minimum wage and happily training new employees in their workforce. So where I continue to come down and challenge myself is, what are we trying to solve here? What is the major problem and issue that we have in Willmet? And by the way, our decision tonight to put additional government regulation on these privately run businesses will have an impact. And by the way, also, a majority of us, whatever we come out with, this isn't going to impact us. I can say for myself, I don't own a small business. So whatever the decision, I'm going to wake up tomorrow and go to my job and not have the stress of, now what do I do to, to follow this new ordinance? As I said a year ago, I'm supportive of a higher minimum wage. That's no question for me. I believe in that. I want people to earn a higher wage. But I do believe this remains a federal or state issue. As one resident wrote me this morning, actually, no, it was yesterday morning at 1:00 AM, asking to, to set a level playing field, and they cited the airline industry, when smoking was banned on airlines and there was concern that the competitors, not all competitors, would comply. Therefore, the industry followed the federal law, which prohibited smoking on all commercial carriers. They made the level playing field. And that's what we have to make sure, and that's what the statewide mandate does. What is right for Chicago may not be right for Chicago. What is right for Chicago may not be right for Willmett. Not all municipalities within Cook County are the same. Therefore, a county-wide ordinance may not be right. And that's probably why a majority of the municipalities within the county have elected to opt out and follow the state laws. My own, my two main overall concerns, though, remain the legality of the county ordinance and, most importantly, the protection of our home rule status. Regarding the legal concern, and we talked about it with our council tonight, but I have to respect, I do respect that there's two sets of opinions, and we're never going to know until it's challenged. But our legal counsel on staff here, as well as the state's attorney, have both said that the ordinance could be challenged and found not legal. And I have trouble supporting an ordinance that we consider illegal, as well as a law we don't enforce. Saying it's the county's issue to enforce and demand it is not the right answer for me either in this case. We should put forward ordinances that we understand and provide guidance on what is required and expected, and hold our folks accountable to it. Regarding home rule, this is a status worth protecting. As a village, we have overwhelmingly supported our home rule status, as this preserves our right to legislate for what is right in Willmett. Simply, home rule law says that ordinances are better made, some ordinances are better made by the local community rather than larger outside governing bodies. I do not support another government body writing laws for us without taking into consideration the impact. And as I said earlier, this ordinance was written based off of the city of Chicago research, and we, Willmett, had no ability to opine or influence on the writing of this law. That is why we have our own form of government, and we've elected to be a home rule community. So what I heard tonight, and what I do respect, I do respect the dialogue this evening and making some modifications to these ordinances to better align them for what we could, for, so that we could possibly reduce any negative impact. For me, this effort further confirms in my mind that this ordinance is not drafted in the best interest of Willmett. But I do appreciate all of the work, all of the work of the trustees and comments have done to modify this in a way to potentially reduce any negative long-term effect. So I will not be supporting the minimum wage or sick leave.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. I took the lead, guys. And I'm not, I'm not voting to extend past 12:30. All right. Trustee Pierce.
So I, too, would like to thank the working group, all the members that spent countless hours on this issue. Also, thank you to staff, I think Jeff Stein kind of gave me a CLE class over the past couple of couple of weeks on home rule authority. I have received, all of us have received countless emails. I want to assure residents, even though I didn't reply to you, I did read every one. I recognize my obligation to represent the citizens of Willmett, I take it very seriously. What's interesting about this issue, and actually, we saw it tonight, where it was like '81 and '81, or '85 and '85. I've spoken to many people on this issue and people with whom I have a great deal of respect, and they have very different views on the topic. I've also given a lot of thought to the opinion we've received from the Corporation Council. It's his opinion that the ordinances adopted by Cook County of challenge would be unenforceable. That really bothers me. Yet, deciding not to take a position also troubles me, as it seems as if I would not be fulfilling my role as a trustee. In addition, there are attorneys who feel the Cook County ordinance could be viewed as enforceable. Cook County's ordinance has been on the books for a while, and it has not been challenged. If it is challenged, hopefully, it'll be Cook County's battle and not ours. In my view, setting minimum wage is a state issue. I don't feel the village should adopt ordinances that are generally within the purview of the state, such as wages, health insurance, workers' compensation, telecommunications issues. But it bothers me that the state has not addressed the minimum wage for almost 10 years. That is what we heard before, is why Cook County chose to enact this ordinance for its 5 million residents and why we're being asked whether or not we should include our residents. I'm very impressed by the fact that over 1,300 employees in our village would be affected by a raise in the minimum wage, especially since 20% of these individuals reside in Willmett. And I'm also impressed by the fact that, in my opinion, the majority of the citizens in Willmett favor an increase in the minimum wage. I recall when the village instituted, which someone mentioned earlier tonight, the smoking ban in public places many years ago. This was very controversial and was done in part because the state did not address the issue, and it was a large concern to many businesses. Eventually, this was adopted at a state level. My feeling is the state actually soon will address the minimum wage issue. I think the amendments that we've discussed show my concern for the businesses of the town, which I love. But I will vote in favor of the Cook County minimum wage increase ordinance. My preference was that the increase be effective January 1st, but that did not pass. I will not support the paid sick leave ordinance, as in my view, this ordinance is not appropriate for adoption by our village. And we already talked about the sunset provisions. So those are my feelings.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Trustee Dodd, you were ready, so are you still ready?
Sure, I'm ready. First, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and for staying here so late. I, clearly, this has been an emotional issue for so many of you in the room and for so many of us here on the board, just in terms of really working through this for the last year or so. But I'm just impressed that, by the civility that we had tonight. I'm incredibly impressed by the way all of you were very respectful and listened to each other's perspectives and shared it. And I feel lucky that we live in a community like this, where people are willing to listen and willing to respect the differences that we have in this community. I really want to say thank you to John Jacoby and Mike Bremen for leading this effort for us and providing such an incredibly thorough and wonderful working group study that has really helped the board be able to readdress this particular issue. I've had an opportunity to meet with dozens of businesses over the last two to three weeks, and I've had an opportunity to meet with many of you who are in this room. And so thank you for sharing your perspective, for teaching me the things that are important to you. And thank you to the businesses who were willing to share just the difficulties that this could have on them and to open up just what this could mean. I know it's tough, I know it's hard to share your, the details of your business, and I appreciate that you were willing to sit down with me and many of the other trustees to do that. One thing that was clear to me in all of this is, we all care about this village. And we should remember that regardless of what's decided tonight. We are one community that consists of the residents, the workers in this community, as well as the business owners. And we all might see a different path to get to success, but we all want success. And what I want to say is, all of us in this room can make the biggest difference in paying workers more. And we can do that by patronizing our businesses. The more we go and patronize our businesses, the more that our businesses will pay the employees. And so what I hope, more than anything, is all of us learn from this experience, and all of us who spoke tonight are committed to doing that. And for those of you who spoke, either way, opting in or opting out, if you don't recognize the business owners who are sitting in this room or the business owners who spoke or sent us a letter, I ask you to make it your goal to recognize them. These are business owners, many of them who have been in business for 10, 20, or 30 years. If we patronize this community the way we all talked about doing, we would know these business owners. And so I encourage us to do that, because it's important to the success and what I believe is the most important to all of us. So now, let me talk about how I feel about minimum wage and sick leave. I want to start by just saying that in my discussions with the business owners, I've heard how much they do care and treat their employees well. As you heard from many of the comments tonight, many of them are already paying well above minimum wage, and many of them are already providing sick leave. The study that we got from the working group shows that 80% of employees in Willmett have worked with their current employer for over three years. 80%. That, to me, is the best indicator of how businesses are treating their employees. The best indicator for here in Willmett. Many people, many residents, as I've met with them, have said to me that we should go with the will of the people. The majority of the residents have spoken. But I believe that the business owners also have a voice. And while I recognize that a strong majority, 66% of our residents are in favor of minimum wage, 67% support minimum leave, support sick leave, excuse me. 70% of our restaurants and retail owners oppose minimum wage. And 68% of the retail business owners oppose sick leave, and 75% of owners oppose, excuse me, I might have said that wrong. So I believe it's 70% of the restaurants and business owners oppose minimum wage, and 68% of retail businesses oppose sick leave, and 75% of restaurant owners oppose sick leave. So it's why today, when we were here, we had an 81 to 81, or 81 to 81. It's not clear, it's very black and white. It's not, it's not very black and white. With that said, I can support minimum wage for these three reasons, actually four. The first is, I do believe minimum wage is too low. It's 825 and hasn't been increased in eight years. So I do believe that our workers in this community deserve more. They deserve more than 825 an hour. The exclusions that are in the Cook County ordinance are important to me. Those exclusions are based on age, based on a nine-month training period, and based on tip employees not being included in this. Those are important things for me to consider and why I would support minimum, will support the minimum wage ordinance. In addition, the working group's report shows that 89% of full-time employees make over $12 an hour. And over 78% of part-time make over $11 an hour. So that is another factor. It shows that, for the most part, as many of the businesses said, they are already paying well above the minimum wage. I do believe that markets drive salaries. And given that many of our neighboring communities have opted into this, is why I'm also in support of this. However, I am cautious. I hear what the business community says. I am concerned that this is a significant increase, and I want to make sure the business community knows that. And it's for that reason why I support the recommendation by trustee Plunkett to look at this before it gets adjusted by CPI. I heard that loud and clear from many of the businesses that I spoke to, and given that none of the working group study, the peer-reviewed working group studies had not looked at a CPI adjustment, they just hadn't. And so for that reason, it's why I support this. Regarding sick leave, I'm not supportive of sick leave, and I'm not supportive for a number of reasons. One, the same exclusions that we talked about for minimum wage are not in the sick leave ordinance, and I'm concerned about that. Many resident emails, also, that I spoke to, many residents talked about that, yes, we should support, they want to see, sick leave for full-time employees. But that's not what's in front of us. This is sick leave for part-time and full-time employees. And that's where, that's where I get concerned. An employee that works two hours in a two-week period becomes eligible for sick leave. Two hours in two weeks. I went on the county Q&amp;A website today in preparation for this, and they used an example of an eligible employee as a babysitter. So a babysitter, your dog walker, your nanny, your cleaning lady, potentially would qualify for this sick leave ordinance, and that concerns me. Finally, sick leave is new. I think it's why we didn't, weren't able to find the working group studies that support this. There's five states in the, there's five states in the country that have a sick leave ordinance. And given the uncertainty of all the other things that we've talked about with our financial market, with losing some of our key businesses, that's concerning me. I don't want to put a somewhat newer ordinance on our, the small community. Overall, I believe that a better regulation from the state would help us all. Most of us want the state to adopt a paid sick leave and a minimum wage. And so I hope, from what our senator said to us tonight, I hope that by what we're going to do tonight, we'll at least encourage the state to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dodd.
Do we need to extend the meeting, yeah?
What time is it?
12:20.
12:20, okay, I got 12:25. All right, I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting to 1:00 a.m. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Sullivan, you're looking at me with 1:30?
I would go to 1:30, just to be safe, because the way we just went. And I will support 1:30.
Okay, trustee Plunkett, would you withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
All right, now I will entertain a motion to extend the meeting to 1:30 a.m.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, please note for the record, okay, trustee Wolf is opposed. Please note for the record that trustee Wolf was opposed.
It's my role. I didn't want to be rude.
All right, so three down, three to go, plus me. You never know how long that's going to take. Trustee Kersman, the floor is yours.
When the minimum wage and sick leave issue was sprung on the board last year, I hustled, and I prepared, and I was ready. I read the copious materials that were provided to the board. I was ready because I had a public engagement strategy. And I was ready because I knew that, as I took the oath of office, I should be ready to engage any and all issues in their moral dimensions. I was also aware that 70% of Willmett residents supported the advisory referenda. However, I tried to keep this in its proper perspective, acknowledging that from a policy standpoint, the referenda and the Cook County ordinances were not one in the same. And after all, who is more prone than me to taking an unpopular vote? But I will speak to the 70% again in a moment. But I want to say again that I was ready for the vote. And I was also ready to stand up for my vote. Why? Because my public engagement strategy brought just as many people to that microphone against my position than in agreement with it. And so I had to explain myself. And I did so, because I do believe that leadership entails explaining things to your constituency. I also issued a rebuttal to the village communicator, detailing in a policy perspective why I disagreed with the level playing field argument made within it. And to continue the saga from last year, I also had to stand up to my father-in-law. Thank God he's still my father-in-law. Thank God he's still not a resident. We're a family of kitters, so he'll get over it. But even those who didn't agree with me appreciated my process, if not my principled, non-ideological position. I also stood up to the Chamber of Commerce. Not because I have malice in my heart or any ill will towards the Chamber. In fact, in my day job, I intersect with chambers from all over the Midwest, and I respect what they do. Chambers advocate for their members, just as I, as a village trustee, advocate for all residents of Willmett, including our most vulnerable. The Chamber brought the concern to the village just weeks before the ordinances were to take effect. And I wasn't going to be pushed around like that. But while I stood up to the Chamber, I want to be clear, I also reached out. I attended the annual dinner. Where the food was hot, but perhaps I was served an extra helping of cold shoulder. I also attended the holiday party. And while the weather outside may have been frightful, my reception was less than delightful. Who writes this stuff? But the question I want to point out is, why? Why did I go? Why did I attend? Why did I reach out two extra nights away from my family? This I did for the 70%. The 70% or more of Willmett residents who believe that here in the village... The 70% or more of Willmet residents who believe that here in the village of Willmet, we can be for business and we can be for livable wages. And who believe that in Willmet, we can be our best selves. We can be the kind of village we want to be. We can be more than a community of neighbors. We can be a neighborly community. Last spring, I was ready because I felt we, as a community, were ready. The twist is, we had some great discussion tonight. Some amendments going in directions I had not anticipated, and I was making some decisions on the fly. And so when push comes to shove, you know, for me, this represents a half a loaf. And for the values I believe our village feels, I do believe this is a compromise. But I also believe in compromise. So despite, while I do not appreciate all of the amendments that have been offered, I will be supporting, you know, our ordinance with these amendments for both minimum wage and earned sick leave.
Thank you, trustee Kersman. Trustee Plunkett?
I as well. I want to thank everybody that has put their heart and soul into this over the last year. And I've met a lot of you in this room and probably watching on TV. And I have to say, and I'm not trying to be political saying this, I honestly agree with most everything that everybody has told me. Because you're telling me your stories and they are true and they are real. And I, I understand when businesses tell me that it's very difficult to run a business. I, I don't know that myself, but I believe you and I understand that. And as trustee Dodd said, it got me thinking too. Am I out there enough in Willmet as I should be? You know, am I on my iPhone buying something on Amazon because I need it right away? This has gotten me to think about that, and I hope this has gotten a lot of people in Willmet to think about what it takes to run a business and how do we support our businesses? And I appreciate those too that have told me stories about making a minimum wage, trying to move up the ladder, trying to help those that are not making enough. And I, I get it. I understand that too. I understand that on the sick leave and I understand that in the minimum wage. I don't see this as much as a philosophical debate. I'm not setting a minimum wage. I'm not setting a sick leave policy. I'm helping decide whether or not we should abide by the county ordinances. In terms of the minimum wage, I'm torn in two ways. But Willmet is not an island. We are a suburb of Chicago. Chicago has the minimum wage. We gain a lot of our affluence from Chicago. We have Evanston, we have Skokie, we have all along the line there. And we are all dependent on each other. And I am heartened by the fact that even since in the last year, since the minimum wage was enacted on the North Shore, many new businesses have opened. And I hope that that will continue to happen. I don't have a crystal ball, but I think that Illinois is going to raise the minimum wage soon. It has been a, what, nine years now? I can't believe, or maybe seven to eight years. If you look at the graph, it's been stagnant for a long time. On January 1 of this year, 18 states raised their minimum wages. And in 2017, 19 states began their year with higher minimum wages. So it's time for Illinois. And if this helps push Illinois in the right direction, then I hope that does it because my goal is an even playing field. I'm heartened by the fact that most businesses are paying their employees above minimum wage, and I think that's in part because, because that's what the market dictates. The sick leave for me is more difficult. I completely understand the arguments in favor of sick leave. And I know that a lot of employers don't even realize that they might even be complying with that when they didn't know it. They probably are, maybe they're, they're paying paid holiday time, paid time off, and they don't even know that they're complying with the sick leave ordinance. But we still have to take into account that 82% of businesses in Cook County opted out of sick leave. And I feel like that is my, my compromise on, on leveling the playing field. And so I also think that it's, it's a new ordinance and I, I wish the state, I think this is in the realm of the state. So I would not be supporting the sick leave, but I would be supporting an increase to the minimum wage with the amendments that we discussed.
Thank you, trustee Plunkett. Trustee Wolf?
Okay, that leaves me, I'll be somewhat brief. I think my trustee, fellow trustees have been very eloquent in, in expressing their thoughts, and I feel the same way. I think that the working group has done an amazing job. John Jacoby was a great leader, everyone who participated, and Mike Bremen did an amazing job, and all of you have done an amazing job of coming out, letting your opinions be known, really showing that we are more than a community of neighbors. We're a community of friends, coworkers, people who want this to be the best community it can. And I think we're taking some good steps, excuse me, in that direction. Some of the things I heard tonight, it just kind of resonated with me. The fact that Willmet can lead the way with supporting our businesses as much as we can and making it a good place for people to work, for people to, to start a business and continue a business. The fact that stores are the character of the town. Walking through Willmet and seeing, especially with the flowering baskets and everyone out now that the weather is finally nice and all the vitality, it really is an amazing place. And I think we should all continue to support it. Another thing I heard is the bit about this is Willmet's opportunity to act, to encourage the state to act, to make it a more level playing field, to do what I think a lot of us think needs to be done with the minimum wage. At the same time, I think that the amendments that we voted on will give us some protection so that it's reined in a little bit, so that if it starts to be detrimental to businesses, there are some controls to keep, to keep that in place. Because everyone has worked very hard to have the business community be as strong as it is. I also feel, especially after talking to some of the business owners, that at this point, I really would not support the sick pay. I think the record-keeping and all that are just two honors at this point, and I feel that there are some inconsistencies statewide. I think the minimum wage is a big step forward, but I would not support the sick pay.
Thank you, trustee Wolf. I apologize in advance for my typical lengthy comments to close. First, I also want to thank everyone who joined us here tonight, everyone who participated in the process of examining these ordinance over the past year. I think I'm the seventh person to thank former village president John Jacoby for his work as chair of the working group, and also thank all the members of the working group. Because I know you put a lot of time into this and your volunteering your time to the community is appreciated. You know, Willmet residents, we may not always agree with one another on every single issue, but it's been said before, we all do truly care about our community. It's really one of the best things about our village. It's a thing that people don't realize when they move here. You know, you move here from the city, like most people do nowadays, and you figure out that your neighborhood and your neighbors are the best part of Willmet, even though you probably moved here for the schools and the parks. You know, in Willmet, I'd like to think that we look for balanced, practical, common-sense solutions which serve the best interests of the entire community. And, and last June, when this board opted out of Cook County's ordinances, it took the prudent and mainstream approach to these issues. And I say prudent because we didn't act hastily. We were faced with a big decision to allow a significant change in our community, but we felt we didn't have adequate information to make an informed decision. So instead, our decision was to stay with the status quo and study the issue further. It was the appropriate and reasonable approach. I say mainstream because Willmet was not alone in taking action, as 111 suburban Cook County municipalities enacted similar ordinances, and only 10 home rule communities did not act to opt out of the ordinances. Now, some have said that Willmet was the only North Shore community to opt out of the county's ordinances, but let me provide some context, and some of this was said tonight already. Glenco and Kennelworth are not home rule municipalities, and they were advised by their council that they do not have the legal authority to opt out of the county's ordinances. With regards to Winnetka, they sent us a letter explaining that they did not consider opting out because they have been, quote, "engaged in ongoing and sensitive negotiations with Cook County related to our stormwater management program." And for those of you who don't know, Winnetka is currently negotiating with Cook County to store significant amounts of stormwater on Cook County forest preserve property. So as a result of that, the village leadership wrote in their letter that, quote, "The time is not ripe for us to evaluate opting out." So if you limit the definition of North Shore to only those communities on Lake Michigan, then really only Evanston and Willmet had the ability to freely consider the issue, and Evanston did not take action and Willmet opted out, as we all know. Now, if you expand your review to include nearby suburbs in northeast Cook County, Glenview opted out of both of the ordinances, as did Northbrook, Lincolnwood, and Morton Grove. Northfield has opted out of paid sick leave, and Skokie did not opt out of either ordinance. But I think it's worth noting that they did vote on an opt-out. It was a 3-3 tie, and longtime mayor George Van Duzen was counted among those who voted to opt out. So on the evening when we voted to opt out, we also committed to reconsidering our decision at some point in the future. That's obviously what we're doing here tonight. I've already discussed the timeline that we went through and the process that we undertook as a community. But one thing, and others have said this, we really should be proud of this process. It's very Willmet. It's very thorough. It was very comprehensive. It included transparency. It included the community engagement. And to my members, to my colleagues on the board, the hundreds of pages that you read, the numerous meetings, I mean, the, the number of meetings that, that my colleagues on the board had truly surprised me. Meeting with residents, meeting with business owners. So I commend all of you for your conscientiousness and your thoroughness considering these issues. I'm proud to serve with you on this board. So why should the village continue to opt out? The first reason is state law. It is clear that the county board did not have the legal authority, and I'm not going to repeat all the details, but I will say this. You know, when elected officials at any level of government exceed their legal authority, it undermines a public's trust in all government. And this troubles me greatly. Second reason for opting out is the unfair, uneven playing field created by the county's approach. And I think everyone understands how different laws in different places create this unfair playing field. But the question is, well, isn't Willmet's business community strong enough to handle this unfair, uneven playing field? And I would say it's not. And the reason it's not is that we're a very small business community, 7,000 jobs. Evanston has 47,000, Skokie has 37,000. And our local businesses are primarily small, family-owned businesses. 70% are micro businesses with less than 10 employees. Many of the rest, the businesses are restaurants and retail shops, storefront service businesses. And I will tell you, small-town retail businesses have never felt more competitive pressure than they do today. Everybody knows about Amazon and online shopping, but, you know, people compete with Costco. They compete with Walmart. Yes, people from Willmet shop at Walmart. They do. And these issues have made even survival difficult for our small retailers. You know, a small retailer in Willmet's not getting rich, okay? When you look at Eden's Plaza, the liquidation of Carson's is clear evidence of this retail environment that we live in. And restaurants have also struggled with traffic declines for the past several years. The increases to delivery also hurts profits. Now, no one wants business districts with empty storefronts. No one in this room wants business districts with empty storefronts, no matter what your view on this is, issue is. Empty storefronts make Willmet a less attractive place for residents, for businesses, for visitors, as well as for the young family that's going to buy your house someday when they move up from the city. So while Willmet is in general, an affluent community, not everyone who lives there is well-off, and it's certainly not our shopkeepers who are wealthy. It's our doctors, and our lawyers, and our executives, and our other professionals. But don't count among them our local retail merchants. So in this environment, our community is facing real risks, and I believe they'd be made worse by the approach taken by the county's ordinances. I'm going to be brief, but I am going to hit a couple of the items in the working group report because I thought the working group's report provided a lot of great information. Appendix 9 concludes that restaurants located in cities in the San Francisco Bay Area were more likely to close following minimum wage increases. And for those of you who understand the Bay Area, lots of different cities had adopted different ordinances, so there was a way to test this. Appendix 5 and 6 confirm that when businesses are faced with a minimum wage increase, they cut costs, they rate prices, and they accept reduced profits. But we don't really know how all this works in the context of the unfair, uneven playing field. So but most importantly, and I think trustee Dodd mentioned it, there's really no research that studied what the county's proposed, because we're in uncharted territory. It's not a modest increase in the minimum wage. It's a 58% increase, and as the board has already indicated and its amendments reflect, it is a minimum wage that goes up forever with annual CPI. So with regards to paid sick leave, appendix 17 and 18 related to paid sick leave, these were studies that were not peer-refueled, and the, there were several issues that caused me to question their conclusions. So in appendix 17, the headline is that workers without paid sick leave were three times more likely to forego medical care for themselves. But the actual percentages were 0.3% and 0.9%, albeit three times, but both extremely small numbers. And if you looked at the data tables in the study, they clearly show that whether someone had health insurance was a much, much more significant factor associated with delaying medical treatment than whether they had paid sick leave. In appendix 18, the study listed several significant, statistically significant variables which relate to cancer screening and also which relate to whether you visit a physician. Now, paid sick leave was one of those variables, but also age and marital status and whether you have a usual source of medical care were also statistically significant variables. So you could certainly conclude that young people that are single and don't have a doctor might not be as diligent in doing what they should do for medical treatment. I do want to talk about the resident survey because people talk about it a lot. As you know, because of practical limitations of a telephone survey, they couldn't do an introductory statement summarizing the issues. And that's fine. That's just the way it is. But we need to understand that no background information, including the fact that other communities that opted out, could be provided prior to asking the questions. And as many have said, the headline is, of course, that 66% of residents that were surveyed thought Willmet should follow the minimum wage ordinance, and 67% thought we should follow the paid sick leave ordinance. But if you really dig into the survey, what the survey really also shows is that one of the most significant challenges of village government, which is effective communication with residents. We try really hard to communicate with residents. We've got our communicator newsletter, we've got our e-news, we're on social media, we've got a website. For certain specific topics, you'll be, there's like group email lists, you know, on stormwater or the like. But even with all that, even with all the headlines and the communicator stories and all that stuff, 54% of survey respondents were unaware that the village had opted out of the county's ordinances. And only 18% of respondents said they had heard or read a lot about the minimum wage issue, and only 12% said they had heard or read a lot about the paid sick leave issue. Now, our residents are busy people. They're working, they're raising families, and it's hard to stay current on everything that's going on in town. I understand that. But, but the reality is, that's what they elect us to do. We're the ones who are supposed to understand the issues in depth and make well-informed decisions. I'm going to say one more thing about the survey. If you look at the cross tabs, it's very interesting that support for following the county's ordinances declines in a material way as people report that they have more information on the issues. So if you remember, the survey said, you have a lot of information, some information, or nothing. So if you move from nothing to a lot of information on the minimum wage issue, opposition to the county's ordinance doubles, more than doubles. If you, on the sick leave one, if you move from people who knew nothing to people who had a lot of information, opposition tripled. So just some facts on the survey. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to wrap up, and again, the, my colleagues on the board know I have a habit of doing this, of talking too long, so I apologize for that. But like all small businesses, Willmet's small businesses are operating in a very challenging environment, and I don't believe subjecting our businesses to the uneven, unfair playing field is appropriate. We're not a big city. We don't have a diverse economy. We're not Chicago, Seattle, New York, or San Francisco. Our shops and restaurants do not benefit from millions of visitors each year. Our shops and restaurants do not benefit from millions of visitors each year. The uneven playing field risks the future of our community. It risks reversing the progress we've made downtown and in all of our business districts. And look, everybody knows that our village center has grown quite nicely over the past five years. But Fortin Linden? Fortin Linden continues to struggle, as it has for years. And I'm concerned the challenges are just beginning for Eden's Plaza with Carson's closing. I believe these risks are made worse by the county's approach. So I ask you, shouldn't we choose the alternative approach? We can still accomplish this policy objective without creating the unfair, uneven playing field. How do we do this? There's a better way, a statewide increase in the minimum wage. And a statewide paid sick leave mandate would have all communities and all businesses governed by the same laws, instead of the patchwork approach that's been created by the county's ordinances. So I am in favor, as I believe all of my colleagues have said, of a statewide increase in the minimum wage. But I don't like the approach taken by the county's ordinances. I don't like the unfair, uneven playing field. Now, I believe, again, as Trustee Dodd pointed out, the county's minimum wage ordinance does include some common-sense provisions, including not applying to workers under the age of 18, it has a training wage, and it doesn't apply to the smallest of businesses. Without these provisions, I doubt there'd be much support at all on the board, because those are really important. With regards to the county's paid sick leave ordinance, I don't believe the paid, the public policy case has really been established yet. And I also believe that the county's paid sick leave ordinance is too broad in scope. So if, my final statement here is, if the board does not repeal the opt-out ordinances, then we're continuing to be aligned with the collective wisdom of almost every other suburb in Cook County. Opting out was, and still is, the mainstream point of view. And there is a better way, a way without the unfair, uneven playing field. Of course, that's state action. And for these reasons, I believe that opting out of the county's ordinance remains the reasonable and appropriate course of action. All right. So each motion's been moved, seconded, and amended. We'll start with the minimum wage opt-out repeal ordinance. For clarification, an affirmative vote is a vote for the repeal of the original opt-out ordinance. So that is, an affirmative vote is an opt-in vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-45, repealing ordinance 2017-0-36, identifying home rule conflicts with a certain county ordinance regarding minimum hourly wage, as amended.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
I'm sorry, hang on, hang on one second.
I just, can you, can you repeat what you're, what we're voting on?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand.
So this is, this is the minimum wage-
I got nervous for a moment.
Yeah. This is the minimum wage opt-out repeal ordinance, an affirmative-
That was up here before.
Right, as amended. You want to put that back up there?
amended, so, okay.
With the four amendments.
With the four amendments.
Right, so those are the amendments. Thank you, Trustee Dodd. That's actually excellent suggestion.
If we're voting yes, we're agreeing with these. If we're voting no, we're not.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. And a yes vote means we are repealing our opt-out.
Yes.
Which means we're opting in with these amendments.
Got it.
Okay, everybody? All right. So I don't need to repeat the motion again. I can just ask her to call the roll, right?
No, that's right. We're good.
So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion being cleared.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Nay.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Nay.
Motion carries. The ordinance has been adopted. We'll move on to the paid sick leave opt-out repeal ordinance. Again, let's put the amendments up there if we can.
We don't need them.
An affirmative vote is a vote for the repeal of the original opt-out ordinance. Again, that means it's a vote to opt in, and opting in, opting in subject to the amendments up on the board. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt ordinance 2018-0-46, repealing ordinance 2017-0-40, identifying home rule conflicts with a certain county ordinance regarding paid sick leave, as amended.
Trustee Wolf?
Nay.
Trustee Sullivan?
Nay.
Trustee Plunkett?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
Yes.
Trustee Pierce?
No.
President Blinsky?
Nay.
Motion fails. The ordinance has not been adopted. Okay, that concludes our business on items 6.22 and 6.23. I will move back to Trustee Sullivan. In my defense, I didn't put the 60-minute time limit on that one. Whoever's doing that on the agenda needs some work on that. All other items were approved on consent. All right, Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd.
All items covered on consent.
Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Wolf.
All items covered on consent.
Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman.
All items covered on consent.
Judiciary Committee, Trustee Plunkett.
All items covered on consent.
There are no reports from our special committees. Item 7 is new business, and there is no new business to discuss. Item 8 is pending actions, is, I'm sorry, matters related to standing committees, and there's no actions to take with regards to pending matters referred to standing committees. I deferred item 2, public comment, at the beginning of the meeting. So during public comment, we ask if any member of the audience would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. Is there any member who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item 9, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn? Go moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned at 12:56 a.m., which I believe is the under.